Thank you. So we're calling the City Council meeting in November 2013, November 13th, 2017 to order. Could the clerk call the roll?
Councilmember DuBois.
Here.
Councilmember Phil Seth. Councilmember Fine. Councilmember Holman. Vice Mayor Niss. Councilmember Koo. Mayor Scharf.
Here.
Councilmember Tanaka. Councilmember Wobak. Nine present.
All right, great. And now we have some special orders of the day. I understand that we have some ballots up here to vote. So we'll be doing that as we go through the special orders of the day. So go ahead and vote. Yes?
Point of procedure here. We did not follow our regular procedure when it came to the ARB and the Planning, Transportation Commission because there was an incumbent in each of those bodies that did not reapply. So our typical procedure is that we extend the application period, and that did not happen on this particular occasion for those two bodies. And so what we have done in the past, whether that was a situation or not, we have had a motion to go out again for new applicants. I just wanted to know that that is one of the options.
Okay. All right. Do we note it?
So I would move that we vote for one on Architectural Review Board and go out again.
So why vote for one? Why not?
Because there's one incumbent.
Okay. That's your motion. I'm happy to entertain that. Do we have a second? Seeing notes?
I'll second.
Okay. See a second. Let's vote on the board.
Do you want to speak to it?
Oh, if you guys want to speak to it, I'm not going to say you can't. I just, we've been around a lot. Do you want to speak to it? But I just want to avoid a whole debate over the whole issue. And people are going to vote yes, or they're going to vote no. I thought you made your point.
I understand. Just really quickly is, I think the incumbent, Wynne Firth, has proven herself as being a very outstanding applicant on the, excuse me, applicant and participant and member of the Architectural Review Board and would encourage her reappointment. The other applicants, I do not find as experienced in the realm of public participation and would therefore encourage going out again. And still considering these two applicants as well.
So I am going to let anyone speak since I've let it now since I've lost control of this.
Yeah, I just agree with what Councilmember Holman said. I thought for the ARB, it'd be worth seeing a few more candidates.
Okay, does anyone else want to speak or not? Okay, seeing no one, let's vote. And that fails on a five to four vote. With Councilmembers DuBois, Koo, Phil Seth, and Holman voting yes. All right. All right. So moving along while we vote, we now have a special recognition for police and fire personnel who responded to the wildfires in Napa, Sonoma Lake, and Mendocino Counties in October 2017. And Chief Nichols, take it away.
Well, good evening. Eric Nichol, Fire Chief, and I'm really excited to share some great people that served the communities up in the North Bay incredibly admirably. You know, as you recall, and really to give the council credit, I really appreciate you wanting to recognize the firefighters and police officers and animal control officers in person. And it just took us some time to get everybody organized and here between all the different shift schedules. What you'll be seeing up here on the PowerPoint here when we get it going is just a small sample of the thank you letters that have been coming in by the ones and twos and dozens, in some cases, from residents, community members, high school kids. I mean, what high school kid writes a letter, for goodness sake? Not a text message, but a legitimate letter addressed to the Palo Alto Fire Department and Palo Alto Police Department. You're seeing some of the hard copies of the letters that have shown up in the Fire Chief and Police Chief's office. I would ask that I get these letters back at the end so I can make sure that they get in the employee's personnel files, just so they have a record of this. But as you recall, on October 8th and 9th, the North Bay communities were hit with a wildland urban interface fires, really not seen in the modern history of California. In the middle of the night, that night, Sunday into Monday, while most residents were asleep, our crews were up and moving up into Sonoma, Napa, Mendocino Counties. And then on subsequent days, many Palo Alto Fire Police Animal Services crews responded to the city of Santa Rosa and Mendocino County. Crews worked for days supporting our neighbors in need. In fact, some of our crews worked 36 hours straight and literally didn't come up for air or real food until that following Wednesday. Tonight, we recognize our city staff that dropped everything and traveled to the North Bay. And before our chiefs introduce their staff, I just want to thank you and to thank them on behalf of an appreciative council and community. I'd ask that Chief Ron Watson join me down here at the podium while we introduce our fire, police, and animal services personnel, personnel that responded to this. So as Chief Watson is making his way down, I'd like to, and our fire folks who are here tonight, not all of them are able to attend tonight, as I read your name, would you please come down so we can give you a certificate and acknowledge you in front of this lovely group that I'm sure you're all here tonight to recognize the firefighters and police officers? So, thank you. Apparatus operator Carlos Gracia. Apparatus operator Sheila Donovan. Stay down here. It's okay. Soak in the love. Firefighter paramedic Chris Pombo. So this was the crew that was up on the Tubbs Fire in Santa Rosa. And we're actually courting the call gods right now by not having calls while we're trying to recognize them for their fantastic work. Apparatus operator Anthony Sozio. Firefighter Manny Macias. And firefighter paramedic Evan Johnson. So Chief Watson, come on down.
Unfortunately, your folks get to get tortured while I say a few things. Mayor Scharf, councilmembers Ron Watson, on behalf of the Police Department. We'd like to recognize some of the men and women of the Palo Alto Police Department that also responded to the major fires in Northern California. During the week of October 10th, we sent 12 police officers, two dispatchers, and one animal control officer up to the North Bay. The officers deployed into neighborhoods preventing looting at evacuated homes. They provided security at regional evacuation center. They assisted with emergency evacuations as the fire continued to be unpredictable and quickly spreading through the region. They provided traffic control at road closures, and they responded to calls for service in the city of Santa Rosa. Our dispatchers provided relief assistance to the dispatch centers in the counties for fellow dispatchers who had been at work for days without any time off. Our animal control officer worked numerous days hauling much-needed supplies as well as donations into the region. While he was there, he also helped with numerous animal rescue calls as well as providing food for stranded and stray animals that were now in the area. All of our personnel worked 12-hour shifts with hours of travel on either end, making their days 17 to 18 hours each day. Some of the staff that assisted in the fire are here today. We'd like to recognize them and the ones that aren't here. But here tonight is Sergeant Alex Affanasi. Agent Michael Foley, I think he made it in. He's still out in the field. Reserve Officer Eric Jensen. Dispatch manager Mark Chase. And did animal control officer Ken Cunningham make it in yet? And we will be providing the recognition at a later time for the folks who couldn't make it here. Lieutenant April Wagner, Sergeant Tony Becker, Agent Chris Korea, Agent Anginette Haller, Officer Cole Giller Ducci, Officer Cameron Wright, Officer Kevin Malarkey, and Officer
You can go sit down now. You know, it's really hard for people in public safety to stand up and get this type of public recognition, but it's very, very important. The work that our folks do, day in and day out, and this just highlights an example of one of the fortunate things of living in California. We have the most robust mutual aid system. It's the envy of the world. And to think that we could muster literally thousands of public safety personnel from all across the state within 12 hours to put them into multiple communities, this just doesn't happen. So we've been fortunate, you know, the fireside, we do it quite often. What was unique and interesting and really speaks to the severity of this, these sets of fires is having law enforcement, you know, mobilize and public safety dispatchers that quickly. But they did it just as if they'd been doing it every single summer, just like the fire service. So thank you for the opportunity to share that and share the work of our crews. I want to shift gears and move on to item number three, I think, in the special order, and share with you an instance of citizen rescuer and a city's ranger rescuer that occurred last month at the Moonlight Run. So before I get into that, this is another opportunity for those of us in public safety to thank you on the council for your financial support of the AED program, Automatic External Defibrillator. I want there to come a time where we come in front of you, and this is not a big deal because it happens all the time. We're getting more and more cases where we've had citizens and city employees who are not paramedics or emergency medical technicians deploy these automatic external defibrillators and literally save someone's life. So there's a few people that I want to thank as well besides the council. We've got Stephanie Martinson here from Racing Hearts. And although I didn't see him, this, Bill Johnson from the Palo Alto Weekly, this was their big sort of fall event. And in talking with Stephanie, she was able to make sure that an AED was present at the running event. So, you know, certainly Bill deserves some recognition. I don't know if he's in here or not, but we'll give him a hand anyway. So here's how this works. There's four links in the chain of survival, okay? So the first link is early access to 911. If something, an event has occurred, call 911 immediately. The next, and really what's turning out to be one of the more important ones, is early citizen CPR. No mouth-to-mouth, just press on the chest. Early CPR. We also have a pulse point system here that on your smartphone, the app that alerts you that, hey, CPR and AED is needed if you're nearby where this event takes place. So there were pulse point notifications there that evening because people had it downloaded. Early defibrillation. We're trying to get hundreds and hundreds of defibrillators placed out in the community. They're easy to use. And really, you know, a lot of credit goes to you, council, with the funds and to Stephanie for her tenacity to get these defibrillators out into the community. And then the last link is where the professional rescuers come in, and that is early advanced life support with paramedics. So next, I'd like to introduce Captain Bill Dale, who will brief you on the event and present Fire Department Meritorious Awards, recognizing one city employee and one citizen rescuer who saved a person's life. Captain Dale.
My name is William Dale. I'm a captain here in the Palo Alto Fire Department, and I'm here on behalf of the Meritorious Awards Program. This program was established in 2011 to recognize department members and citizens who performed distinct acts of bravery, heroism, and who provide devoted service to the department and to the overall public safety to our community. Tonight, we are honored to recognize two citizen heroes. A citizen hero award is made to a person outside the Fire Department who has been involved in a life-saving effort at an emergency scene before the arrival of the Fire Department, or who has provided extraordinary assistance to the Fire Department members in a life-saving effort. On October 10th, 2017, at the city of Palo Alto's Moonlight Run, Park Ranger Robbie Perry and volunteer Kate Peters were notified that a man had fallen at the finish line and needed help. Ranger Perry and Kate quickly responded to the location and found a 30-year-old male, pulseless and not breathing. They immediately began CPR and applied an AED that ultimately defibrulated the patient. Ranger Perry notified dispatch and a full 911 response was activated. Ranger Perry and Kate continued CPR and treatment until the arrival of the Palo Alto Fire Department paramedics. As our paramedics were arriving, the patient's heart had just started, and he began breathing on his own. The Palo Alto Fire Department paramedic stabilized the patient and transported him to the Stanford Emergency Room for further evaluation. If it were not for Ranger Perry and Kate's quick and selfless response, this story would certainly had a different ending. So please join me in welcoming Ranger Robbie Perry, Kate Peters, to accept the Palo Alto As you saw, joining them in the front was Fire Chief Eric Nichol, Deputy Fire Chief Katherine Kapris, and the man's life they certainly changed forever, Mr. Carlo Rotis. Thank you.
Does that conclude the, is there more?
I want some more.
All right, sure. Bring it on.
No, that concludes. Thank you so much.
All right. So Vice Mayor Niss has something she'd like to add.
Eric, could you stay back at the mic? So in the midst of good news, even though this is about bad news that happened before that, a couple, oh, I think now, maybe a month ago, Councilmember Holman mentioned that we have a fund for this kind of occurrence. And Greg put a committee together that included Lydia Koo, him, and I was included as well. So I went to Santa Rosa about 10 days ago and met with Shirley Zane, who is the supervisor from that region, and we discussed where this $25,000 would go from our city. It's going to go to an organization called the Redwood Credit Union, which has raised, at that point, 10 days ago, had raised $7 million. And it will go for the very most rudiment of needs for the people who are there. It will go for food, clothing, shelter, and then long-term, the credit union hopes to begin to make loans so that people can rebuild homes or buy a mobile home, whatever it may be. So I know you were all up there. I was up there, of course, long after the fact, but I would say it's probably the most devastating thing I have seen. It was just astonishing. And the hardest part was watching people still kind of searching through the ruins for, you know, we don't know what, but certainly things that were of great value to them. So I don't think it's an enormous amount of money, but I think it certainly indicates that Palo Alto is very concerned and certainly wants to do what we can to make a difference. So that check will be sent off to the Redwood Credit Union.
Thank you. Very kind. Thank you, council.
Thanks. Again, thanks for all you guys.
So I think we should just clarify some procedural housekeeping. What Councilmember Holman suggested is that we take $25,000 out of the council contingency fund to support a, how best we could support the people that have suffered in the fires. Vice Mayor Niss, as she said, went up there and determined that seemed to be the best cause of action, but we can't just say, write a check. So what has to happen next is the city manager needs to bring it forward if council's fine on consent, and then we need to vote for it at the next council meeting. If that's acceptable to everyone, I think that'll be the approach. Sure. Councilmember Holman.
Just as the mayor indicated, this is the council contingency fund. It's a fund that is, quite frankly, rarely tapped. The last time I can think of that it was used was, last two times I can think of it was used over the last several years, actually, was, one was to support the return of a resident donkey after the passing of, one of the resident donkeys was to help them in fundraising to cover expenses. And the other was a few years ago when we, when there was an earthquake in Oaxaca, one of our sister cities, and we sent $25,000 there as well. So it's rarely tapped, just so the public knows, but it is for occasions such as this where there is kind of an emerging need. So, thank you all.
All right. Thank you. And thank you. And thank you to all of our first responders for everything they do for the city. We really appreciate it, and thanks for coming out tonight to show your support. And thank you to Stephanie Martinson. I thought I saw Stephanie somewhere. But anyway, thank you. And, yeah. All right. And so next, I think we're moving on to a proclamation honoring pickleball in Palo Alto, which I'll read. So, whereas pickleball is one of the fastest-growing sports with more than 2.5 million participants in the United States, and whereas pickleball is an intergenerational, low-impact, competitive sport that is easy to learn, inexpensive to play, and promotes camaraderie, teamwork, kindness, and enjoyment for individuals and the community as a whole, and whereas pickleball volunteers and enthusiasts share their joy of pickleball and build community by providing nets, paddle balls, and a gathering place at Mitchell Park, toast-free drop-in clinics, and whereas the Palo Alto chapter of the nonprofit Silicon Valley Pickleball Club reaches out to Palo Altons of all generations, from youth to super seniors who may be isolated, to give them a welcoming place to play pickleball, which helps improve their physical, social, and emotional health, and whereas records show that the number of people who play pickleball at Mitchell Park totals over 300 participants each week on only three tennis courts, and whereas the Bay Area Senior Games Pickleball Event will be hosted by volunteers at Mitchell Park next May for the third year running, which had 147 competitors last year, some over 80 years old, and whereas the pickleball classes, which have been taught by volunteers and offered in the city of Palo Alto, enjoy catalog, have all been full, and whereas the city of Palo Alto Parks and Recreation Commission has established an ad hoc committee focused specifically on promoting pickleball in Palo Alto, now therefore I, H. Gregory Scharf, Mayor of the city of Palo Alto, on behalf of the city council, do hereby proclaim appreciation for the sport of pickleball and recognize the health and wellness benefits it provides to the Palo Alto community. And I want to say, yes. And I would encourage everyone, if you haven't been down there, to go play pickleball. You could just show up, and they will teach you it in 10 minutes, and it is a fun thing to do. So now. All right. Mike, you want to run it up?
Yes.
Thank you for your service on this line. It's fantastic, and thank you all for showing up.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right. Do we have any?
I do have the results.
Okay.
For the Architectural Review Board, Councilmember DuBois voting for Wynne Firth and Osama Dasani Thompson. Councilmember Phil Seth voting for Wynne Firth and Amy Neff. Councilmember Fine voting for Wynne Firth and Osama Dasani Thompson. Councilmember Holman voting for Wynne Firth. Vice Mayor Niss voting for Wynne Firth and Osama Dasani Thompson. Councilmember Koo voting for Wynne Firth and Osama Dasani Thompson. Mayor Scharf voting for Wynne Firth and Osama Thompson. Councilmember Tanaka voting for Wynne Firth and Osama Thompson. And Councilmember Wobak voting for Wynne Firth and Osama Thompson. Wynne Firth with nine votes, and Osama Thompson with eight votes are both elected to the Architectural Review Board. For the Historic Resources Board, we have Councilmember DuBois voting for Martin Bernstein, Rita French, Gogo Heinrich, and Margaret Wimmer. Councilmember Phil Seth voting for Martin Bernstein, Gogo Heinrich, Michael McKinnon, and Margaret Wimmer. Councilmember Fine voting for Martin Bernstein, Roger Kohler, Michael McKinnon, and Margaret Wimmer. Councilmember Holman voting for Martin Bernstein, Gogo Heinrich, Michael McKinnon, and Margaret Wimmer. Vice Mayor Niss voting for Martin Bernstein, Roger Kohler, Michael McKinnon, and Margaret Wimmer. Councilmember Koo voting for Martin Bernstein, Rita French, Gogo Heinrich, and Margaret Wimmer. Mayor Scharf voting for Martin Bernstein, Roger Kohler, Michael McKinnon, and Margaret Wimmer. Councilmember Tanaka voting for Martin Bernstein, Gogo Heinrich, Michael McKinnon, and Margaret Wimmer. Vice Mayor Niss voting for Martin Bernstein, Roger Kohler, Michael McKinnon, and Margaret Wimmer. Councilmember Koo voting for Martin Bernstein, Rita French, Gogo Heinrich, and Margaret Wimmer. Mayor Scharf voting for Martin Bernstein, Roger Kohler, Michael McKinnon, and Margaret Wimmer. Councilmember Tanaka voting for Martin Bernstein, Carl Darling, Roger Kohler, Michael McKinnon. Councilmember Wobak voting for Martin Bernstein, Roger Kohler, Michael McKinnon, and Margaret Wimmer. Martin Bernstein, Roger Kohler, Michael McKinnon, and Margaret Wimmer have all been selected to serve on the Historic Resources Board. For the Planning and Transportation Commission, we have Councilmember DuBois voting for Rebecca Parker Manke and Rishara Pravahan. Councilmember Phil Seth voting for Lisa Petchke Coe and Rishara Pravahan. Councilmember Fine voting for Michael Alcheck and William Riggs. Councilmember Holman voting for David Hirsch, Rebecca Parkey Manke. Vice Mayor Niss voting for Michael Alcheck and William Riggs. Councilmember Koo voting for David Hirsch and Rebecca Manke. Mayor Scharf voting for Michael Alcheck and William Riggs. Councilmember Tanaka voting for Michael Alcheck and William Riggs. Councilmember Wobak voting for Michael Alcheck and William Riggs. Michael Alcheck and William Riggs have both been selected to serve on the Planning and Transportation Commission. Congratulations to everybody.
All right. Agenda changes, additions, and deletions. I don't believe we have any. And now city manager comments.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. First item that I do want to report is that earlier this afternoon, we announced that Robert Johnson, there's his picture right up here, who currently serves as a Menlo Park Chief of Police, has been selected by me to be our next chief of police for Palo Alto. Following council's confirmation of his appointment on December 11th and finalizing some of the background requirements that are especially applied to folks in public safety, Bob is expected to join the city officially on January 9th. Chief Johnson has been with Menlo Park since 2013, has more than 30 years of experience in public safety. in law enforcement and public safety, is well-regarded by both the community as well as department personnel, and was chosen after a very competitive, very thorough national search process involving a lot of citizen participation, experts from outside organization, and our own executive staff. We really look forward to Chief Johnson joining us in 2018. I want to also express my appreciation to interim Chief Ron Watson and the entire Palo Alto Police Department for the smooth transition in operations in the department over the past year since Chief Burns retired. And lastly, I just want to publicly acknowledge here the class of my friend and colleague, city manager Alex McIntyre from the city of Menlo Park, who is surrendering his beloved and well-respected chief to us and our city, and I appreciate the conversations that Alex and I have had about that change in transition. We'll work to have Chief Johnson here in person on your meeting on December 11th. Next, we have a number of community meetings this current week, starting on Tuesday, November 14th, at the Mitchell Park Community Center from 6:00 p.m., 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. We're holding the first in a series of community roundtables to further help evaluate potential grade separation options at each of Palo Alto's four Caltrain rail crossings. This particular meeting will be to discuss options for the Charleston Road and Meadow Crossings. And then on Thursday, November 16th, again from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m., but at the Palo Alto Unified School District Headquarters at 25 Churchill Avenue, we'll be holding a second roundtable to talk about options for the Churchill Crossing. And more information is on the city's website at citypaloalto.org/connectingpaloalto. There will be two subsequent roundtables before the year is out on the other locations. Secondly, we wanted to share that there is a special sort of series of what are called "on-the-table" housing conversations this week. The city will be participating in this regional effort that will take place on Wednesday, November 15th. Locally, the one-day event is sponsored by the Silicon Valley Community Foundation as a way for communities to come together, round a table, to have conversation about housing issues and challenges. We will be at coffee shops, including Coupa Downtown, Phil's on Middlefield, and Printer's Cafe on California Avenue, and folks from the HRC, Human Relations Commission, will be at Hobie's on El Camino, all between about 8:30 and 10:30 a.m. So we encourage interested folks to stop by, have a cup of coffee, join in the conversation. More information can be found on the city's website. I should point out that this is not a city-sponsored event in itself. We're participants among many, many other entities, and there are other, within Palo Alto groups, I think the League of Women Voters and some others, who are sponsoring other conversations at different times of the day and in the evening. So folks can visit our website for more information. Also, Wednesday evening, November 15th, our Public Works Engineering Services Division is hosting a community meeting room in the, excuse me, a community meeting, in our community meeting room on the first floor at City Hall to gather public input on proposed designs for the downtown parking structure, the downtown parking garage at 375 Hamilton Avenue. That's there at the intersection of Hamilton and Waverly, across from the post office. The proposed garage is five levels above ground and one level below ground located at that existing parking lot. And again, Wednesday in the community meeting room this week, 6:30 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. And then with some genuine pride, it's, we're glad to announce that our mayor was just recently elected to serve as Vice President of the Executive Board of the Association of Bay Area Governments, otherwise known as A-BAG. A-BAG was created by local governments to meet our planning and research needs in the region related to land use, environmental and water resource protection, disaster resilience, energy efficiency, and hazardous waste mitigation, and to provide risk management, financial services, and staff training to local counties, cities, and towns in the nine-county Bay Area. So we'll be well-represented, and again, congratulations to our Mayor Scharf. And then the, with the holiday season approaching, we just wanted to mention that the Downtown Streets Team Life Moves Program is having this year's Thanksgiving Meal on Thanksgiving Day from 12:00 to 2:00 p.m. at All Saints Episcopal Church at 555 Waverly Street, and a leftover meal the following day, Friday, November 24th, from 11:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. Everyone is welcome to attend that event. And then lastly, I just thought that the special recognitions of the day at the council meeting were quite memorable, and even I thought that pickleball, which I knew nothing about before today, I'm just thinking about all the difficult issues that come to us as, you as a council, and yet we still find time to honor things like pickleball. So I think that, I was just sort of thinking, when I find myself in times of trouble, thoughts of pickleball will come to me. Speaking words of wisdom, let it be, let it be. Thank you.
Thank you very much for that. And I actually did want to... No. And I actually just want to say, I really appreciate the support from this council on the vote for A-BAG. I don't know if the community knows, but actually, it's a vote where every city council member in the nine Bay Area county votes, and every supervisor votes. And I was pleased to say that I actually beat my opponents, and there were two of them. I had more votes than all of them combined. So I felt really good about that. So, and thank you all for your support again. All right. Now we move on to all communications, and our first speaker is Herb Bark, to be followed by Dan, is it Chapman?
Mayor Scharf and council members, this week, the Board of the High-Speed Rail Authority will be receiving an update on the authority's application to take over responsibility for the federal government responsibilities under National Environmental Policy Act and other environmental laws. If their application is approved, there will be no separate federal review of the environmental impact report, environmental impact statement for the high-speed rail project. The authority is soliciting comments on its application until December 11th, but it doesn't provide any statement about the way to make comments to the Federal Railroad Administration to influence its decision about whether to approve the application. In view of the fact that the city council is on record as opposed to the high-speed rail project, I believe the council should go on record as opposing the authority's application to become the only agency to review the completeness and adequacy of the environmental review of the project. And I urge the council to take action, to express its opinion to the FRA and the United States Department of Transportation, that the city is against the application that would remove federal environmental oversight of the project, as well as expressing your opinion to the High-Speed Rail Authority by its December 11th deadline, providing the clerk with a copy of the authority's press release on this subject and links to the agenda packet documents related to the subject for this week's meeting of the authority. Thank you.
Thank you. And Dan Sharman, to be followed by Carolyn Schmarzo.
Good evening, Mayor Scharf, Vice Mayor Niss, and honorable council members. My name is Dan Chapman. I'm the Superintendent of Buildings and Grounds at Castelaya and have been there for almost 27 years. There's been a lot of, I would like to speak in support of Castelaya's CUP Master Plan Application. There's been a lot of disheartening talk lately about Castelaya's unwillingness to compromise, but that could not be farther from the truth. We spent three years prior to submitting our application, soliciting feedback in both small and large group settings, and incorporating that feedback into our proposal. The master plan for which we applied is dramatically different than the master plan at the start of the three-year process. Still, we recognize that there is more compromise to go. The city's process is founded on that principle. We cannot be more aligned with recent speakers that we should work together as a community towards a solution. We also have heard some neighbors make a series of comments about how traffic is an overriding concern, rather than the actual number of students. And again, we couldn't agree more. As Superintendent of Buildings and Grounds, I took a lead role in implementing our TDM program, a program that has reduced car trips by nearly 20%. These reductions have been achieved by requiring teachers and staff to commute at least three days a week in non-single occupancy vehicle modes of transportation, providing free bus service to other communities, instituting shuttles to and from Caltrain, and promoting a carpool program. With this demonstrated success in reducing car trips, Castelaya has committed to no net new car trips, and has offered to make the growth of our student body dependent on the success of our TDM program. In fact, 540 students was proposed because that was the enrollment limit at which we could maintain car trips at recent levels. Castelaya has been here for over 110 years and has been an active part of Palo Alto history and the community. We look forward to being part of the community for the next 100 years and serving more families. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Carolyn Schmarzo, to be followed by Al Kenrick.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the City Council. I would like to express my opposition to the Castelaya expansion for the following reasons. Number one, traffic. Traffic threatens the safety of all Palo Altons, schoolchildren en route to school, people bicycling or skateboarding to work, as Greg Tanaka does, and really frustrated drivers in gridlocked routes. Number two, air pollution. The demolition of buildings and heavy construction equipment will introduce vast amounts of unknown and dangerous particulate into the air we breathe. Number three, noise pollution. The destruction of 100 trees with wood chippers and chainsaws will create a deafening war zone-like environment. Number four, diminished property values. This massive construction zone will result in a once-desirable neighborhood transformed into an undesirable neighborhood, one filled with mute noise, traffic, and air pollution. Number five, emotional duress. To witness the physical and financial destruction of one's home, neighborhood, and city is a soul-bludgeoning experience. Number six, lack of public benefit. The school is a private, exclusive school and serves only about 100 girls in Palo Alto, zero boys. It provides zero facilities or services to tax-paying Palo Altons. Number seven, loss of revenue to Palo Alto. The school pays neither property nor income taxes. It plans to remove two homes and thus will lose the income from those property taxes. The damage to the roads from such a Godzilla of a project will be costly as well. As tax-paying residents of Palo Alto, we should not be expected to sacrifice our very expensive quality of life for Castelaya's profit. Number eight, diminished integrity. If this expansion proceeds, it will diminish the integrity of our city and its zoning codes. The project would result in a school/business with 700 students/employees in a neighborhood with an R1 residential code. This is considered a medium-sized business, the same size as Cliff Bar, Cirrus Logic, or Etsy. The City of Palo Alto is not against Castelaya. However, at times it seems Castelaya is against the City of Palo Alto. Evidence of this can be found in its willful violation of COP and its desire to destroy an old, established neighborhood and the financial, emotional health and welfare of its residents. City Council, please protect our city from this ill-conceived and inappropriate expansion project. In the words of President Obama, "If people cannot trust the government to do the job for which it exists, to protect them and to promote their common welfare, all else is lost." Thank you.
Thank you. Al Kenrick, to be followed by C. Ready.
Hi, my name is Al Kenrick. I live at 134 Melville, and I'm very much for women's education. I've got three, four daughters, and I want them well-educated, but I'm very, very much against this project. And I don't get active very often, but I came out tonight because Castelaya is, if it wants to expand, it's just, it can't. There's not room. The traffic is terrible. I appreciate they've worked very hard to reduce commute trips, but, you know, I'm not confident that's going to last, and they have a hard enough time at the current enrollment. They've never met the agreements they've had with the city in the past. And, you know, it makes me think of when the clinic, which was a great Palo Alto institution that had been here for a long time, wanted to expand in its old footprint just south of downtown, and the neighbors fought back, and city council supported that, and, you know, the clinic found a better place. You can imagine how bad south downtown Palo Alto would be and south of downtown would be if the clinic had expanded there. And I remember when Harker Military Academy was in town, and they were in Community Park. Yeah. And, you know, they had a whole block, and it was a fantastic military school for boys. They wanted to expand, and now they have lots of students, but they took a strategic approach and found a facility that allowed them to really grow. You can imagine if they had continued to grow or doubled their, I mean, back at the same time, Castelaya probably had about 130 live-in girls. I remember that. And then it's grown tremendously since then, and at a point, you just have outgrown your footprint. And I ride my bike downtown to work when I commute, and I see near misses all the time with people darting across Churchill to make the left-hand turn, to wait on Bryant, and I do the left, the right-hand turn out of Emerson onto Embarcadero all the time, and that's a dangerous corner. And more traffic is just more trouble, and I have low confidence they're going to continue their carpooling programs. I know they're trying, and that's great, but I don't trust them with this expansion. So I hope you hear the neighbors and you make them really work with the neighbors to slow down this project and right-size it for the neighborhood. We all knew the school was there when we bought our homes, and we're okay with that, but there's a point when it just can't grow on that footprint. Thank you very much.
Thank you. C. Ready, to be followed by Stephanie Munoz.
Good evening, Mayor, and Vice Mayor, and the City Council, and the citizens of Palo Alto and the neighborhoods. Congratulations, Mayor, for the A-BAG leadership. I'm sure you'll represent us well for the communities we know. In regards to the Castelaya, I totally agree with the community that they, the school should expand, but not in where they are. They should do Castelaya 2 somewhere else. I'll propose a site in Concordia University in Irvine, has 3,500 people. I think that, I totally like the privatness of the school, and, you know, young women, you know, we need leaders, but not here. I think there is absolutely no reason to go and add another 100 and keep, you know, making all these things, changes, adjustments with unhappy neighbors. So I also commend the selecting, picking the right police chief. You know, we've had, in the last four, five years, a lot of drama about police chiefs. I think a gentleman, Robert Johnson, from next door. I commend Menlo Park for its diversity, and we ever, we don't ever see their name, anything about them in the newspapers, local or national newspapers. So I think Mr. Johnson will bring more diversity because he has dealt with diversity. You need to have some experience. I think that's a very good choice, and I congratulate the City Hall for doing that. One other thing is that we have, we're at a crisis at college terrace market. It is not, it's not doing well. We need your support. We need your support. We've worked on it for the last four, five years to get that market going, and we need your support. Lastly, I offer my condolences to the community of Iranians and Iraqis that have experienced a huge earthquake, seven-point earthquake. They've lost families and, as well as structures. And I hope we are prepared for our day when we know we had issues with earthquakes. You know, we have seen it, but we need to be more prepared. Thank you all.
Stephanie Munoz to be followed by Chris DeBona.
Good evening, Mayor Scharf and Council members. You know, as you prepare to finalize the comprehensive plan, I'd like you to think back to Mrs. Stanford and her friends and the kind of town that they thought Palo Alto should be. It was not a really richy-rich town, but certainly not a class-divided town. It was a town with everybody's house, pretty, little garden, little nicely painted. You've seen Lucy Stern's house. There are 100 houses in Palo Alto that are as large or as wealthy as that house. It wasn't looking for pretentiousness or conspicuous consumption. And now we are at a situation in which, unfortunately, somewhere along the line, the sensible idea of a town of middle-class people sort of went by the boards, and we went to get more and more and more valuable properties. And guess what? The workers for the businesses that have come to town have been left out of the planning. And I think you have to start planning now and figure out what a worker or retired person could afford, and do what you can with the city's assets to make that possible. One of the assets that I don't think that you're looking at, and it's a big asset, is your power to increase density by going up and to increase the number of people by, with the same amount of construction, having more people fit in the same conspicuous space in a way that's not difficult to live with, in a way that's acceptable and nice-looking. And I think you can do that. May I ask you, please, to talk? Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor Scharf, Vice Mayor Ness, and honorable Council members. My name is Chris DeBona. I live on North California Street near Embarcadero and have been a Palo Alto resident for about three years. I had to speak in support of Castelaya's CUP and master plan application. My daughter's a student at Cassidy, and we actually moved to Palo Alto to be closer to the school. Cassidy's a unique school, a true jewel in Palo Alto's crown, recognized across America as one of the premier girl's schools. My own daughter's experience there has been stellar, and it's helped shape her into the confident, strong, smart, young Palo Altoan that she is today. Since my daughter's a junior, we're not going to see any benefit from the expansion of the campus, and yet I'm very much in favor of the school's plan to modernize and moderately expand enrollment to benefit my daughter's younger classmates and those who would not be able to attend if we were not to expand. First, modernizing Castelaya's buildings is of paramount importance. Most of the buildings on campus are very old, and safely maintaining them is coming at a higher cost each year. To modernize through remodeling would cost more, take longer, and cause more traffic and construction hassle for the neighborhood than would the plan before the council. The plan, which rebuilds many of the buildings on campus, brings them up to date with modern architecture and building practices, incorporates cutting-edge sustainability features, and will redirect traffic out of the neighborhood and towards Embarcadero. The plan wasn't created in a vacuum either. Working with the surrounding neighbors, Cassidy drew up the plan for the underground garage and recently moved one of the accessory garage outlets in the plan to align with Melville directly rather than be in front of one of the neighbor's houses. Cassidy's traffic calming program has dramatically reduced car traffic, increased bicycling, and minimized parent traffic during campus events. Like many Palo Alto residents, I experienced firsthand the issue of traffic in Embarcadero, and there are many days where I cannot even turn left out of my house. And the walls, and the weights and Middlefield and Newell can seem really long, but to blame Cassidy for this is misguided. As the council is aware, we Palo Altons deal with an explosion of population during the day, and Cassidy traffic is barely a blip compared to those heading to businesses and schools and the rest on university and page mail. Given the school was founded in 1907 and has seen the city grown up around it, it's now time for Cassidy to grow and modernize to preserve itself as a great place for young women. Thanks for listening, and I support the plan.
Thank you. Niva Yarkin to be followed by Shawnee Kleinhaus.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. My name is Niva Yarkin, and I live on Churchill Avenue. As I said last week, Castelaya's educating young women has nothing to do with the quality of education that it provides. It has to do with the major expansion plans that Castelaya is pushing forward. This has been said many times before. We have been asking for over a year, what is Castelaya's 10- and 20-year plan? Why can't they answer this question? Shouldn't they know what their vision will be in the future? If they truly have no plan, then they need a plan for the future. If enrollment continues to grow from 415 to 540 to 700 to 1,000, when will it stop? This is only six acres in an R1 neighborhood. Traffic is already over the limit on Embarcadero Road and surrounding streets. Students will be graduating. Administrators and staff will eventually leave. We, the neighbors, don't plan on moving. We love our homes and our friends in this neighborhood. It is time for Castelaya to carry on their legacy of educating young women in another area so they will have room to expand as much as they want. Thank you for your time this evening.
Thank you. Shawnee Kleinhaus to be followed by Rita Verrel.
Good evening, Mayor Scharf, City Council members. I speak tonight as a resident about a couple of things. One is that I want to invite all of you to drive on Ross Road and look at what is happening with the new speed bumps or speed, trying to make things safer for bicycles. I think it's doing the opposite. There's not a lot of room now for a car and a bicycle on some of the areas, especially near Corina Way, to get through, and I think somebody's going to get hurt there, and I would really appreciate you coming to look at it before that happens. That's one thing. The other thing is, for the last six months or so, I've been taking pictures of what is in the composting bins in gas stations. That's part of our policy to have compost bins everywhere, I guess, in gas stations. What you get in there is really contaminating the whole load. And people in gas stations, they go by, they're not really thinking too much if it's either a banana or the can of oil, motor oil that they put in there. So I have really nice pictures for you if you're interested, but please take care of that. Thank you.
Thank you. Rita Verrel.
Good evening. Downtown Streets Team is having their Thanksgiving dinner on Thanksgiving. Donations are still needed. This is a wonderful organization, and you can either volunteer your time, or you can go on, actually, almost all the volunteer time spots are filled up except for the deep clean of the church on the last day. But a lot of donations are still needed. You can go on to Downtown Streets Team Thanksgiving Dinner and sign up for something. Also, they have the food bank right next door, and if you have any extra cans, I go through my cans once a year, and I look to see what I'm not going to be, what I haven't used, what I'm not going to use, and why did I buy that, and what is nearing expiration. And I take it down to the food closet and donate it, and it goes to someone right away where it can be used. So like all volunteer jobs, I think one always gets so much more than one gives, no matter how much one gives. And I would really encourage everyone listening to consider doing something for the Downtown Streets Team Thanksgiving Dinner. Thank you.
Thank you. Now I need a motion to approve the minutes.
So moved.
Second, if you can vote on the board. And that passes unanimously. Now at the consent calendar, we have Bob Moss who wants to speak on item number nine. Bob, you want to come forward? All right, seeing no Bob, we, oh, there you are.
I was just getting the document together. Thank you, Mayor Scharf and Council members. On item nine...
Bob, can you pull the microphone a little closer?
Is that better?
Yeah.
Okay. On item nine, there are a lot of topics that are being reviewed and discussed, and there are some that I think should be given a little more attention than others. I've been very interested in earthquake safety for decades. We had our house tied down to the foundation to make an earthquake proof over 30 years ago, and I've gone to a number of USGS talks on earthquake safety and potential problems. So I've been following this for quite a while. On approval options, one of the ones I'd like to see given a little more attention is option five, to increase the number of building types you're looking at and to require some of the lower-level options be upgraded so that we minimize the amount of damage and the amount of potential hazards. On the types of disclosure, I think the four that are the most important are the mandatory disclosure at time of sale, public listing of affected properties, notify tenants, and have earthquake performance rating system so people know how well the building will stand up. And on types of incentives, I think expedited planning, expedited building permitting, permission to add units, especially in smaller lots, and giving this technical assistance to people who want to upgrade. I think this is an important topic, and I don't think we should just pass it by. I think earthquake safety is something we should be worrying about. El Grande is coming. The USGS now thinks it's a high probability before 1930, before 2030. So I think we should do whatever we can to make the city safer.
Thank you, Bob. All right, can I have a motion on the consent calendar? Oh, Councilmember Tanaka.
Yeah, I want to register a no vote.
On?
Item eight.
On item eight, okay. Fair enough. All right, I'll move the consent calendar.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Walbach. And that passes unanimously with Councilmember Tanaka registering a no vote on item number eight, correct? Item number eight. Do you wish to speak?
I spoke on it before, but basically I don't agree with the fees.
Okay, fair enough. And now we move to item number 10. Do we have a staff presentation? You've spoken before, you can't speak again.
Thank you, Mayor Scharf and Council members. I'm Hillary Gittleman, the Planning Director. I'm joined this evening once again by Elaine Costello and Joanna Jensen to my right and Elena Lee, who's in the audience. This is the third meeting that we've held on the comp plan in recent days, and we wanted to review for you shortly briefly what's available in your packet this evening and talk a little bit about the EIR, which is going to be the subject of your deliberations tonight, and then set the stage for the remaining actions to adopt the comprehensive plan update. So the materials that are available in your packet this evening include Attachment A, which consolidates all of the changes that this council has worked through in the last couple of meetings and would like to make to the text of the comprehensive plan update draft that you have before you. We've also included or sent you today an at-places memo with some additional changes. This includes a response to your request that staff recommend three additional community indicators. We've also included in that at-places memo some recommendations regarding additional text changes in response to comments we received from the SFPUC and the Santa Clara Valley Water District, as well as some additional explanatory text about the city's utilities. We have in Attachment B, C, and D, the three resolutions that you'll be considering this evening. Also not listed here in Attachment E, you have a copy of the SFPUC's letter. There's some additional public comments attached in Attachment F, and in Attachment G, we drafted some responses to comments we heard on the EIR at one of your earlier meetings. So just to look at the subject of community indicators, if you recall, the CAC recommended a whole list of community indicators, and we included that complete list in your staff report. At the last meeting, the City Council decided to include five of these in the comprehensive plan update, those related to greenhouse gas emissions, VMT or vehicle miles traveled per capita, jobs housing balance, below-market rate units, and progress towards housing element goals. You asked us to recommend three more, and we are doing that tonight. We're recommending traffic volumes on city streets, specifically volumes at 10 representative local intersections. We're recommending availability of parks, measured as a percent of residents who live within one-half mile of a city park, and then school enrollment, which is something we've been talking about collectively through this process. So we can talk about those more later on this evening. Tonight's goals are really to continue the public hearing, taking testimony from anyone who has not already addressed you on this subject. Then we're asking you to certify the EIR and then make the required findings and adopt the comprehensive plan update. Just to step back a minute and talk about the role of an EIR generally. I mean, you all know, these get-to-be weighty tomes, by the time they're finished, they're complicated documents. It's important to recognize, however, that they're not decision documents. EIRs don't make a decision or force a decision one way or the other. They're meant to be informative and to help you make a decision that must weigh the contents of the EIR, but also all of the community input and other sources of information that have been available to you throughout the process. There are specific standards of adequacy for an EIR, and I'm not going to read this whole thing, but suffice it to say, there's a whole body of law and case law around EIRs and their adequacy, and we believe as staff and the consultants that we are, what we're presenting to you this evening for certification is an EIR that meets all of these tests. If we had to summarize kind of the big picture and what the EIR is telling us, it's a plan that's been, it's a document that's been developed concurrently with the plan to identify and mitigate environmental impacts. The plan itself includes a number of mitigation measures that grew out of the EIR. We'll talk about that a little more in a minute. We've analyzed cumulative impacts in the year 2030, and the conclusion is really that all of the impacts can be mitigated, save four of them, and we'll talk about those again in a minute as well. In terms of the mitigation measures, it's really Attachment C, where you find the roadmap to how the mitigation measures we've identified in the EIR are being implemented in the plan. And most of them are being implemented through the plan itself. This is very common with projects like adoption of a general plan because general plans are intended to be used. They are intended to inform decision-making for years to come about development projects, about capital investments, and other things that the city does in the course of its business. So it's very typical to have the plan include policies that mitigate potential environmental impacts, and that's what is happening here. In terms of cumulative impacts, we've been asked in a number of comments and over a number of hearings about how the EIR considers the GUP and how can you move forward with an EIR that was started before the GUP was on the table, and how does this all work? The bottom line is that we looked carefully at this issue when it was raised and analyzed it in detail in the final EIR. Basically, what we've done is base the EIR on growth projections rather than on any list of projects. If we'd done it on a list of projects, that list would have been created back in 2014, and it would be out of date. What we did instead is look at regional projections, and we've confirmed in our review in the final EIR that those regional projections are large enough to encompass the growth that is currently planned in Palo Alto and the surrounding communities, including the GUP application. And again, we can talk about that further after receiving your questions, if you like. The significant and unavoidable impacts we've identified... The significant and unavoidable impacts we've identified are all due really to Palo Alto's place in a growing region. They relate to air quality, traffic, and transit, and I'd like to make the point that we're not, you know, throwing our hands up at these and saying, "Oh, nothing can be done." All of these are mitigated, to the extent we can mitigate them with what we think of, what we think are pretty aggressive and far-reaching measures that will improve, to the extent we can, the issues and the impacts that I've identified. There are also a number of issues that cross the line from SEQA issues and EIR issues to more policy concerns and issues that are appropriate for consideration in the comprehensive plan update itself. We wanted to share with you some information about a few of these and talk about how they're addressed in the EIR versus how they're addressed in the plan. This came up in some of the testimony we've heard over the last few meetings. Noise is a good example, airport noise. The EIR looked carefully at the Palo Alto Airport and operations at that airport, and also at land use compatibility, and has mitigation related to controlling the land uses around the airport to make sure that we don't create inadvertently an incompatibility down the line. But the plan is broader than that, and the plan talks about overflights from the regional airports and is much broader, and we think responds to many of the concerns that the council has been hearing over the last year or two. Dewatering, similarly. We have an analysis of mitigation measures in the EIR that are necessarily constrained by the significance threshold that we use for our analysis. They focus on impacts to groundwater resources, but that's not our only concern here in Palo Alto. We're also concerned about impacts on adjacent properties when dewatering happens, and there's a policy in the comprehensive plan to address that impact. Schools in the EIR and the plan is another example. We address schools and school enrollment in the EIR to the extent we can. There's a state law that governs mitigation of school enrollment impacts, so we're constrained in that regard, but at your direction, we've included in the plan a policy that directly addresses this issue. Overall, I think all of us, council, staff, consultants, CAC members, PTC members, have listened carefully to the community concerns, both those that made it into the technical EIR analysis and those that made it into the plan policies. We've analyzed the potential SEQA impacts in depth and presented the data and analysis in the EIR that will support the council's decision, and we recognize that that decision will not be informed only by the EIR, but by all the testimony you've received. We think the updated comprehensive plan tightens the current limit on office development, strengthens the city's commitment to housing, adds new policies to address impacts like the concerns we just talked about, and actually improves on the no-project scenario that was analyzed as scenario one. So, adopting the plan this evening will do more to advance the policy objectives that we've been talking about over these many, many months, actually, many years, than it then would just to stay still and do nothing and take no action. So, this evening, our recommendation is to adopt a motion that effectively will adopt the three resolutions before you tonight, the one adopting or certifying the final EIR, one making required SEQA findings, and one adopting the comprehensive plan update itself. In the course of that, we hope that you'll acknowledge and adopt Attachment A, which includes all the changes that you've asked to make into the plan, as well as the at-places memo with some additional changes we're recommending this evening, and any final changes that this council would like to make to the plan. So, with that, we're available to answer all of your questions.
Thank you very much for that. So... We're now going to have public comment, but I want to remind people that if you've spoken already, you can't speak again. This is the, we said that at the last council meeting, and I think we said at the council meeting before that on this. So, I just want to reiterate that. So, if you've put in a card, but you spoke before, you can't speak again tonight. Do we have any public speakers that have not spoken before? Hold on one second. What'd you say?
Not at this time. Most have been either heard at the 23rd or the 30th.
Okay. Councilmember Holman, you have a concern?
Yeah, just a point of order and clarification. So, this is not a continuation. This was a separately noticed meeting. So, I had not understood that people who'd spoken before couldn't speak again because...
Well, we did announce it both times.
Well, not everybody was here to hear that announcement. So, I guess, could the city attorney clarify?
Well, we had a meeting that was continued, but it doesn't require the continuation function. The item was the same. It was placed on the agenda twice, and the public was notified they'd have a full opportunity to speak to the item, and they could choose which night they wanted to do so.
But that was the two prior meetings. This is a different meeting.
No, it's the same item, and it was announced at the beginning of the opening of the public hearing on the first item that there would be one opportunity to speak. Many people did, and that was their opportunity to speak, and the council should consider what they heard all three of those nights.
Okay. So, Joe Hirsch has not spoken.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll try to make these brief. How much time do I have?
Three minutes.
Three minutes.
Oh, sorry, Joe. Two minutes, because I gave everyone else two minutes in the other hearings, so it's two minutes.
There is language in the current comprehensive plan that states it encourages commercial enterprise, but not at the expense of the city's residential neighborhoods. That language is not included in the draft plan before you tonight. I urge you to put it back in. If I understand it, the comp plan supports the development, if implemented, of roughly 3 million square feet of non-residential development. At the old rate of 250 square feet per employee, that would mean 12,000 new employees. If at the new rate of 150 square feet per employee, that would mean 20,000 additional employees in our area. That seems like absolute craziness. We can't tolerate that. There's no infrastructure to support that. The worst problem we have is traffic, traffic, traffic. I drove over to Oakland the other night. It was supposed to be 50 minutes. It turned out to be 75. Coming here tonight, coming up El Camino in the south direction, we had stop-and-go traffic from Arastodero Road all the way up to Hanson Way, solid blocked cars. The EIR doesn't mitigate that. I believe it said it can't mitigate that. How can you, as responsible leaders of our community, allow this area to be degraded in that particular matter without any mitigations? We want bold leaders. Leaders have to say that we will protect the residential and nature and character of Palo Alto. Why don't you do that? That is what people want. That is what people want throughout the Bay Area. Everyone is talking about it. Every residential area is complaining about it. We are overbuilt. We are taking one of the most beautiful areas in the United States and degrading it. Please don't do that by approving the draft EIR and the comprehensive plan.
All right.
Is that it for speakers?
Yes, so that's it for speakers? Okay. So, as we go through the process, I thought we should talk a little bit about how we'll proceed tonight. So, the first decision we have to make is about certification of the EIR. That's legally required that we take that up first. So, we're going to have to take that up first, and that's item two in the recommendation section of the staff report. So, what we're basically saying with that, as staff said, is that the EIR has been prepared in accordance with the law. I thought maybe, Sandy, you would like to explain a little bit about what people are doing for the audience and for council members so that we have a clear picture of what this means.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Sandy Lee, City Attorney's Office. SEQA requires that prior to approval of a project for which an EIR has been prepared, that the decision-making body has to certify three things, one of which, as you noted, is that the EIR has been completed in compliance with SEQA, and second, that the decision-making body has reviewed and considered the document, and third, that the document reflects the independent judgment and analysis of the lead agency, the City of Palo Alto. So, now, addressing the first of those requirements, that the EIR has been completed in compliance with SEQA, what that essentially means is to confirm that the EIR has been prepared in compliance with the procedural and substantive requirements of SEQA. There are a number of procedural requirements, including the issuance of a notice of preparation to begin the process, providing that notice to responsible agencies and other stakeholders to hold a scoping meeting, to issue a draft EIR with a notice of availability and a public circulation period of 45 days, and then to prepare a final EIR that responds to all comments received during the circulation period and provides any needed clarifications and text changes to the draft EIR. There are also substantive requirements. That includes that the EIR must describe the environmental setting or the baseline, the existing conditions essentially at the time that the notice of preparation is issued. The EIR must describe the project that's proposed, and it must analyze all of the environmental, potential environmental effects of the project, identify mitigation measures that could potentially feasibly mitigate any of those impacts. Another requirement is that a reasonable range of alternatives to the proposed project be evaluated.
All right. Thank you very much for that. Yes, do you all know Sandy Lee? Sandy works in the City Attorney's Office, correct? And?
Sandy's an assistant city attorney in the City Attorney's Office, and she came to us from the City of San Jose, where she was their lead SEQA and environmental lawyer, and we're very happy to have her here in that same capacity in our office.
Okay. I am going to allow it. Shawnee Kleinhaus, you haven't spoken to this. You did just put in a card. I'm going to break and let you speak.
Appreciate it. Thank you. Shawnee Kleinhaus, I was on the CAC for the general plan. I wanted to talk about the EIR because it, I felt that it was pretty much too complicated, too difficult to comment on, and the time for commenting closed more or less at the same time that the plan was published, which means that people who really wanted to get to put comments in didn't have the full information. I feel that the Stanford gap should have been analyzed in the EIR, not as a regional thing, but as a specific thing to Palo Alto, and should have been included in the cumulative impacts in the EIR. I also just want to say that when an EIR has unmitigable impacts to air quality, for you to approve that, there is something that the community should be very concerned with. And I know it's a problem everywhere. Every project has overriding considerations on air quality, but we see this continuously in the entire region, and I know it's not just us, but I would implore you, don't approve anything that has significant and unavoidable impacts to our air quality. Thank you.
Thank you. So, then, we're going to take up, after we do item number two, we would take up items three and four in the recommendations together, which, after that, will basically be done. No, no, wrong. So, basically, we'll take up items three and four, and at which point, that contains the decisions to adopt the SEQA findings based on the EIR, with the resolutions in Attachment C, and the decision to adopt the comp plan itself, with a resolution in Attachment D. Attachment D references all the changes we've already agreed on that are listed in Attachment A, plus staff is asking us to also include the changes recommended in our at-places memo. Now, what I was thinking to kick this off is because council members may have questions that overlap these items, and since we have to take item two first, I thought it'd be a good idea if we basically had a round of questions where council members can ask questions regarding any of these items that they feel they need answered right up front. I think that might be helpful that we do that. I'm going to ask that we sort of limit those questions, if council members can limit their time to roughly five minutes. We need to...
Questions and comments?
No, just questions. I think it's really just questions. And once we've got the questions, we'll take up the certification of the EIR. Then, as I said, we'll turn our attention to the SEQA findings and the comp plan adoption, and we'll consider those two actions together, and that will be the time for any council members to propose final amendments or additions to the list of comp plan changes in Attachment A. Now, in the event that we can get through all of that by, say, 10:30, then we can take up item six, which is the implementation plan and direction to staff on that. If not, we'll defer this discussion to another time. Item six. Just item six. That's correct. Tom?
When are we going to come back to the community indicator discussion?
So, that's as part of number A. So, that would be as part of three and four together. That's when that comes in.
Okay.
Do you have a question about the process? Councilmember Philson?
So, I have a, well, what I want to ask is two things. What exactly does it mean for item two, what falls within the certification of the EIR and what doesn't? And the next question I want to ask is, what exactly happens if either the EIR or the SEQA findings fail to pass? Right? So, I don't know if this is the right time to ask that, or should I ask it later?
Sure. Go ahead.
Thank you, Councilmember Philson. We will not be able to proceed with consideration of the comp plan adoption if we can't certify the EIR and the SEQA findings likewise. It's a kind of part of the decision to move forward with the comp plan, to adopt mitigation measures and a mitigation monitoring program. So, we would really need, we really need to do both of those things before we can consider comp plan adoption.
So, what would then happen if they didn't pass? Say, we need to move forward, but we wouldn't be able to move forward. What would then happen?
I think we would request the council to specify what deficiencies they wanted us to remedy. We'd have to go off and do that additional analysis or create that remedy and come back to you at a later date. And as we mentioned in the staff report, if that exercise would extend past January 1st, there's a new state law, so there's a whole new section of the comp plan itself that we would have to prepare for your consideration at a later date. That law does not apply if the comp plan is adopted before December 31st.
So, essentially, what you're saying, if I understood it, is the adoption of the new comp plan would be dramatically delayed. What are the ramifications associated with that, other than we all obviously spend a lot of time on it?
I think that's the primary ramification. We would spend more time on it.
Would we revert to the old one?
Also...
We default to the existing plan, which we've stated, we think the work we've done, the community and the council and staff has done, is an improvement over the existing plan. So, we'd have a poorer plan, and we would potentially have a whole new round of additional work that we would then need to do in that post-January 1st timeframe.
Do we run afoul of legal problems with the state if that happens?
I don't think we're in greater risk than we are right now. I mean, our plan is outdated. It was intended to sunset in the year 2010, so the longer it takes, you know, the more out-of-date we are. But I don't know, I don't know that it's more than that. I should say that, and this is in direct response to Mr. Hirsch's comments, he implied that there was no mitigation for traffic and that traffic would get worse if the council adopted this plan. The reverse is really true on both things. The plan is full of mitigation measures that attempt to address traffic and related impacts, and we think the traffic ultimately will be better with adoption of this plan than it would be if we just let the current plan bumble along to the year 2030.
But if the EIR or the SEQA findings fail to pass, can we even revert to the old one? Because doesn't it require, doesn't it require an environmental impact review?
No, the old one, the current comp plan is currently in effect, and it would remain in effect until replaced.
Because it has one already that was done many years ago. It's just way out of date.
Back in the day.
So, what we would be in violation of is our city charter or something like that that says we're going to do one every, you know, however many years it's been. Is that right?
Be in the city charter, but I mean, the expectation under state law and direction would be that we would routinely update it on the cycle that we would have met if we had done it initially in 2010.
Well, I think, just to clarify, Councilmember Philson's question, you can't, what you're not saying, though, is we could just say, why don't we just go with the old comp plan? not saying, though, is we could just say, why don't we just go with the old comp plan? And, you know, if we don't certify, we don't, we just give up and we're back to that. We have a duty under state law, don't we, to pass a new comp plan at some point?
I think the state envisions that you will update your comp plan, your general plan on a regular basis, and we do have an obligation to do that at some point. There is no law that says exactly when you have to do it, but I think the longer and more out of date our plan gets, the greater risk we run that we make a decision on a capital improvement or on a project and someone uses the current comp plan and its status as a way to challenge a decision.
Okay. I mean...
Sandra, let Sandra jump in.
Yeah, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. State law does require that every city maintain an updated general plan, and so to the extent that our current general plan's horizon date was 2010, it would behoove the city to move forward with a general plan in the near term if the city believes that the circumstances have changed since 1998 to 2010, which is the timeframe of the existing general plan.
And Sandra, there was some confusion, I think, when Councilmember Phil Seth asked the question about not having to do a new comp plan for the current comp plan. If we were to instead vote to adopt the same existing comp plan for the next 10 years, wouldn't you have to do an EIR for that?
I don't think that the city, we would re-adopt the existing comp plan. It would just continue to exist. Do you mean to reaffirm that or extend the horizon date of the existing comp plan?
No, what actually meant was what Councilmember Phil Seth said. Say we decided we liked the old comp plan, and I would assume we'd have to do a new EIR to see what the effects of adopting basically a new comp plan that's the same as the old comp plan.
I think most likely you would just let the existing comp plan remain in effect.
Okay. Go on. Okay. Okay. I understand. So then the main, the main two downsides of that would be, first of all, we'd be stuck with the old plan instead of the newer one, right? And second, we would be, we would be out of, you know, out of, we have a really old one, and the state says we're not supposed to have a really old one, right, basically? Right? And it's unclear exactly what the ramifications of that are. We would be sort of out of compliance with the state. Did I say that right?
If the circumstances haven't changed, then I would say that we would not be out of compliance with a state mandate, but the state does expect that cities evaluate their general plans and determine whether or not they are out of date periodically. And I think the Office of Planning and Research, the governor's Office of Planning and Research, OPR, advises that the period be, I think, 15 to 20 years or so.
Actually, the OPR says every general, every community should update their general plan every five years, which is completely unbelievable and needs to be changed. But that's their expectation. It's not a law.
I understand.
And I think, I think this council and the councils that have preceded you did identify a number of circumstances that have changed in the community. I mean, climate change wasn't even on the radar screen when the current comp plan was adopted. That's one example, any number of other examples. So there have been some changes in circumstances. I think we feel, given the energy and the attention focused on this project for many, many years now, it is incumbent on the council to move forward with the plan, and I hope we can address any questions or concerns you have on the environmental document and the findings this evening so that you feel free to do that.
I understand that, but I understand, I think we need to understand sort of what the solution space is here. Because if the answer is, well, we just have to do it, right, then why are we bothering to vote on the EIR and the DIR? So, okay, so, okay. Thank you very much.
All right. Continuing on with questions council members may have, I have lights from Councilmember Koo.
So I'm just trying to understand whether the FEIR, so at this point, what you're saying, if I understand correctly, is that if we don't adopt and certify, if we don't certify the FEIR and adopt the comp plan tonight, we have to revert back to the current 1998 comp plan, and we can't move forward in the, we have to adopt it for the next 10 years or 15 years, or we can still go back and review the one, the draft one that we're looking at?
Yes, I mean, you could. If you don't take action this evening, the existing comprehensive plan would remain in effect until we brought back a revised version that you could reconsider and adopt.
So we're not kind of stuck with the current 1998, what you call outdated plan, right?
You'd have to tell us what additional changes or remedies you were looking for, and we would have to bring those back. Thank you.
Can I comment on that? It's a good comment. No. Question is, do we need another FEIR? If the FEIR fails, I'm going to back into the vote again.
All right.
Well, I mean, if that were to happen, if we were to do what Councilmember Koo just said, on the other hand, wouldn't we have to do another EIR? And if we did that, is there any reason to think that it wouldn't be any different coming back this next time around?
You know, I think my colleagues and I think this EIR reaches conclusions that any EIR on a plan of this nature would reach, given the thresholds that have been adopted and that are used here in Palo Alto.
Okay. All right. Thanks.
All right. Councilmember Fine.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, staff, for the presentation and to all the speakers we've had over the past three meetings. Two quick questions, just staying focused on item number two, certifying the final EIR. Does staff believe we've done all of the procedural requirements, the notice of preparation, the scoping, the availability of the draft EIR, and written responses to our questions?
Yes, we do. And just responding to Ms. Kleinhaus's comment, I think she talked about the public review period, and we actually exceeded the requirement in the law by quite a bit. We had 124-day review period on the draft EIR and a 49-day period, maybe more, on the supplement to the draft. So we've been engaging in a lot of review and I think met or exceeded all of the state procedural requirements.
Okay. Thank you. And then, second question, on the substantive requirements, does staff believe we have, you know, met those requirements in terms of describing the existing infrastructure, describing the plan, the proposed plan, significant environmental effects? And the contents of the EIR include things such as commenters, comment letters, text changes, mitigations, and an analysis of those mitigations?
Yes, we've done all of those things.
Okay. Thank you. Those are all my questions, Mr. Mayor.
All right.
I would be ready to certify this.
Vice Mayor Niss.
I'm not sure how to ask a question when I know the answer, so let me explore it. Could you discuss air quality a little and the fact that someone has alluded to the fact that it's pretty terrible and that there's no mitigation planned?
Thank you, Vice Mayor Niss. First to your last point, we do include in the EIR and in the resolution, one of the resolutions before you this evening, mitigation measures to address air quality impacts. So it's not that there's no mitigation there, but we did find a significant and unavoidable impact, and it's really because our region is in non-compliance or non-compliance. I always...
Non-attainment.
Non-attainment for a couple of the pollutants of concern. And so because the region is in non-attainment, we are, and we're doing a plan, the way we interpret the guidelines from the Air District, we have to find that we're contributing to a significant impact, and there's just no way around it. But we are proposing mitigation. We do think this is a responsible plan in the ways that it addresses air pollutants from city activities.
Thanks. And although it gets into the comment phase, I have seldom seen a group work as hard as the Air Board does to maintain that level and has particularly struggled with it over the past year. So thanks for your answer.
All right. Councilmember Holman.
To follow on to that, that's, you know, the regional impacts and, excuse me, Palo Alto does, however, contribute to the regional impact when it comes to air quality. And how do other, how do other entities address in terms of impacts and mitigations their contributions to air quality in this case, and that's what we're talking about? Because it is acknowledged that we're contributing to it, and yet there are things that it seems like we're not doing that we could be doing that could at least lessen that impact. So how do other entities do that?
Well, I think we should make a distinction here between plans and projects. So the Air District disseminates guidelines for how SEQA reviews should be conducted, and there's a way that agencies are required to review projects. And in the case of projects, you apply a whole suite of mitigation measures, and you generally get to the point where you can mitigate all the impacts. But the way the Air District requires that you review plans, this issue of regional attainment comes into effect, and you apply all the same mitigation measures. I mean, we're putting in place policies that will require all of the same measures be implemented, whether it's for a city's capital improvement project or for a development project that comes before the council for review or that any city decision maker for review. But in the case of plans, it's this regional non-attainment status that results in the significant and unavoidable impact. I don't know whether Joanna has anything to add?
Sure. Thank you, Hillary. I'm Joanna Janson from Placeworks, the city's comp plan consultant. We help to prepare both the comp plan and the EIR, and we do a lot of general plan work throughout the Bay Area and California. And I would say the mitigation measures here in the Bay Area tend to be relatively consistent across jurisdictions because of the Air District's work to promulgate an appropriate range of mitigation measures. And on the general plan EIRs that I work on, it is quite common to conclude that any additional growth in this region because of the existing non-attainment would result in a significant and unavoidable impact, despite including the range of mitigation measures that we have here in Palo Alto, which, again, are very much consistent with what we see in a lot of other particularly urbanized, built-out communities that don't have a lot of space to expand into greenfield areas.
If I can just add one more thought, all of the air quality mitigations are available for your review on page 256 through 262. So there are several pages there of mitigation measures related to air quality. They result in adoption or inclusion in the, in the plan itself of any number of policies to address this particular issue.
Trying not to get into comments, there are, even though the measure is by the board, if there are mitigations we would like to add this evening that are absent that could at least lessen our contribution to the regional impact, what would staff respond to that?
I think at the time that there's, we discuss the resolutions in attachment C and D, so the SEQA findings and the plan itself. If council members have suggested amendments to the plan that would implement additional mitigation measures, I think we would be happy to hear those.
And we take that up under recommendation three and four.
I'm talking about mitigations, you know, which, you know, there are things, obviously there are things that are listed as mitigations that are things that are in the plan. So if I wanted to add mitigations, they would obviously have to be reflected in the plan as well as the EIR, or they could be referenced in both of those, but why not as additional mitigations to the FEIR?
Well, I think I'm saying that we would be happy to consider any mitigation measures that the council wishes to add to the documents. Because the EIR is, you know, before us as a document, they would probably be included in one of the resolutions. So either the resolution about the SEQA findings or the plan itself.
That's helpful. I was thinking, I was understanding there for a moment that it meant that we'd have to go back and make changes to the plan in order to get to mitigations in the FEIR. So, okay, thank you.
Councilmember DuBois.
Yes, it's been a long process. I'm just only sure I understand it. So I think the final EIR was available at the end of August, August 30th. And do you know how many, like, paper copies of that were given out?
Off the top of my head, I don't know the answer to that, but I can probably find out. It's been available as a link on our website, and we made hard copies for council members and PTC members, libraries, our public counters.
Do you know how many people accessed it online? Do you know how many people actually accessed it? Okay. And I understand you, there were 49 days to comment on essentially that preferred scenario at that point with the final EIR?
No, the final EIR was available from August 30th. I haven't counted up the days to today, but essentially the law only provides for a 10-day period between dissemination of a final EIR and the decision. So in this case, we far exceeded what the law would require.
Okay. And I saw there was a letter from the Water District with some modifications. Does staff think those are good modifications?
You're asking specifically about the modifications to the EIR itself?
Yeah, there was a letter from Santa Clara Water District.
Yeah. We looked at those earlier today. Let me, let me get back to you in a minute.
Elaine Costello, I've been working on the comp plan with the city staff, and we did go over the letter from, and responded to it, and actually in the at places, we've included some changes to the policies to respond to their comments because, but in terms of the EIR, they just had a question about how we generated the forecasting for, you know, water supply. And we got back to them and answered that, that we used a model that sometimes there was a difference in the numbers because we were responding to the different scenarios, but that they were based on the same numbers. So we've responded to them on that comment. They were not asking for a change, they just had a question.
Right. Okay. So these changes to natural environment are from their...
From their requests for policies, and they were entirely consistent with, there were wording changes that just are entirely consistent with the policies as they came out of the CAC and the Planning Commission, so we just incorporated them.
Okay. Thanks. And then, so again, reading through this cumulative impact report, so how do we think about the Stanford GUP? Like, how much of the 2030 forecast does the Stanford GUP use up? Like, it shows, you know, we're forecasting 460 jobs increase by 2030 at Stanford. Does that match up with the GUP?
Yeah, no, I think, I think the best way to think about this issue is to look at the projections we've used for Palo Alto and surrounding communities that I showed on the slide. So it's hard to, we always find this challenge in EIR. Some people use a list of projects and are vulnerable immediately to challenge because something on their, they forgot something on their list or something changes on their list. So when you're doing an EIR like this EIR, you tend to use regional projections. So you're using what ABAG produces, what you, as an agency, produce, and projecting jobs and households out to the horizon year. And then you hopefully do that big enough that any new projects that come along will fall under that umbrella. And so what we looked at here, and this is drawn, I think, from the final EIR master response, is that we have assumed an amount of growth in Palo Alto and surrounding communities, sufficiently large enough in 2030 to encompass what is proposed in the GUP as well as other projects that are proposed in the region. As you know, the GUP is proposing, you know, 2.3 million square feet of academic space, any number of new housing units, and it, it's just, we got big enough here that we think that that is sufficiently addressed.
So if I read this right, we are already over the housing unit allocation before the comp plan is adopted?
Yeah. I wouldn't look at housing alone. I would look at housing and jobs. I think the one compensates for the other quite a bit here. We overestimated in terms of jobs in the analysis by quite a bit.
And again, though Stanford's kind of in the middle of Palo Alto, it seems like we way underestimated jobs. We were forecasting 460 jobs for Stanford.
Well, we, yeah, I think if you're looking at that table... Yeah. I think if you're looking at that table that was in the master response, that's what was in the original analysis. So we're showing, we're basically being totally transparent. Here's what we had originally assumed. But then we went on to do this analysis of the projections, and we found that they're large enough to encompass what is now proposed by Stanford. I should say that Stanford has an obligation here, too. Their draft EIR is on the street, and we're reviewing that draft EIR to make sure that they included our stuff. Because, you know, they knew about what we were doing when they started their analysis. We didn't know what they were going to propose when we started ours.
And so again, we're already seeing more housing units than the plan assumed in 2030. And we're all talking about trying to increase housing even more beyond that. So doesn't it seem significantly beyond what's in the EIR in terms of housing units?
No. What we're looking at is the regional projections of households and jobs together constitute kind of a level of activity that we expect to be occurring in 2030. And we think that level of activity is sufficiently large enough to encompass what is currently on the table at Stanford and in all the surrounding communities and Palo Alto.
So again, I'm looking at the 22,000 versus the 25, right?
Yes.
So it's 25 proposed as of today.
I understand.
And by 2030, we're saying there's 22.
And I'm suggesting that you look at both columns, housing and jobs together, because combined, that's what creates the level of activity that we analyze in traffic analysis, in air quality analysis, in noise analysis. And so together, combined, jobs and housing are sufficiently large enough to encompass what is currently proposed.
I'm not sure if I understand that conclusion. Maybe you can help me understand it a little bit better.
Yeah. I mean, intensity of use, you know, we could have just translated both of those numbers into an intensity of use measurement of some kind. And I think our, the intensity of use we assumed and analyzed is larger than what we think the intensity of use that's currently proposed. Another thing you should know, and we point this out in the final EIR, is that the GUP horizon year goes to 2035. A lot of the plans and projects we're seeing proposed in adjacent communities right now, we think, may not build out entirely until well after the horizon year of this comp plan.
I understand that. On the transportation impacts, you know, what options were considered to mitigate? You know, I mean, what else could we do? Were there mitigations that were just rejected?
You know, we didn't reject any mitigation measures as infeasible, as far as I recall. We put a lot of effort into crafting that mitigation measure, Trans 1A. It's actually shown on packet page 278. And it basically establishes a quantitative threshold for trip reduction, TDM plans, based on what geographic area of the city you're in, and calls on the city to update its traffic impact fees to, so that developers are paying an impact fee for any trips that they can't eliminate through meeting, through those TDM plans. So we're trying to really emphasize and improve on our TDM plans, their kind of goals, their performance measures, monitoring and penalties, and then update our impact fees for any trips that are not reduced.
Okay. But we don't really stay where those fees go, right? I mean, I guess, is there a point when the impact is so large that you would have to consider building new roads or widening roads?
Impact fees by definition are used for new capital facilities. So we'll be looking at what facilities could be, could aid and address some of the congestion and delay-related impacts that we've identified. So we will do that. And in fact, we've been working on a nexus study that we'll be bringing forward to the Finance Committee and the council as soon as we can.
I guess I'm asking, I mean, was, was kind of redoing the road network considered as a mitigation in any way?
Well, what we did, what we would include is any specific capital improvements at the intersections where we found there would be significant impacts. So if you look at the intersections we analyzed, if there was an intersection there where adding a turn lane or doing something specific could address the impact, that would be, that would be addressed. We don't ever, we haven't proposed historically any massive increases in roadway capacity because there are planned policies that tend to discourage that.
And then I asked this last time, and I kind of wanted a more thorough response. And I understand that the state SEQA discussion around school impacts, but could the city have a policy that plans for school expansion that goes in excess of, you know, the state SEQA requirement? I know, I know we have the one policy that says we'll talk to the school district, but...
Yes. I think the council could add to that policy, either add a supporting program or add another policy that talks about working with the school district on school siting criteria and identifying additional sites when that's necessary. We can definitely talk about those things.
Great. Okay. Thank you.
So now we return to council, and I need a motion to approve, that's how we're going to start it, a motion to approve the, to certify, let me do it right, adopt, and we approve. Adopt a resolution, attachment B. I know, Adrian, you wanted to make that motion.
So moved, Mr. Mayor. So this is number two, adopting resolution, attachment B, certifying that the council has reviewed and considered the comp plan, final environmental impact report. And the final EIR has been completed in compliance with the SEQA Act. And the final EIR reflects the independent judgment and analysis of the city of Palo Alto.
Second.
Would you like to speak to your motion?
So just a reminder, this is not talking about the comp plan yet. This is just saying that we have done the final EIR according to the SEQA guidelines. My questions earlier were completely focused on the substantive and procedural issues there, and I'm convinced that we have done this. I'd like to see us get this issue done and move on to the meat of tonight's discussion.
All right. Vice Mayor, yes?
Instead of commenting on that, I'd like to comment on the work that staff has done, that everyone else has put into this, including the CAC. And I know there are PTC members here tonight. This has been an extraordinarily long process. I very much hope that we will vote on this, on number two, so that we can move forward. Even though we would revert back to the original plan from 1998, that was started in 1990, the new plan, I think, reflects far more comprehensively what this council has espoused over the last two or three years. So I would urge us as a, as a body to vote for this. And I hope we'll vote for it unanimously.
Councilmember Holman.
Yeah, I'm struggling to do this. And I do want to acknowledge the long and diligent efforts of staff and the CAC and everybody who's worked on this. It has been a long project. I have some concerns that there just seem to be some, some things not considered and some, in some areas, actually, some vagaries. One of the phrases that's used, just as an example, one of the phrases that's used in a number of places, and one was just given on packet page 278 for program T1 2.2, is that formalized TDM requirements by ordinance require new developments above a certain size threshold. And I know that that's the component, that's even that the FEIR isn't doing that. But it gives no guidance really as to what a threshold would be. There are other mitigations that talk about, you know, monitoring and reporting plans for construction noise levels of larger development projects. There's, again, there's no guidance on that. There are, one of the mitigations talks about, and I didn't find it here, they've got a lot of stuff marked here, but I didn't find it at this moment, but talks about, you know, diesel vehicles arriving at a project site at the 100-trip level. And I asked about what was the basis for that, and it was using the Stanford Medical Center as the basis for that. But that's a really, really large project. That's what I understood anyway, in terms of, in terms of how that was, how that was considered. It seems like a really hard, high one. Having to do with, and I'll just cherry pick a few things here. Air quality, I don't know if, I mean, people have talked about the air quality and how it's a regional impact, and it is.
So Councilmember Holman, you're talking to items in, item number three, the mitigations, I think. Now, we're looking whether or not we have the legal sufficiency in terms of the process. And I feel like you're going into items in the next section. So I just thought we should bring the discussion back to whether or not we have the legal sufficiency here, too, and whether or not they follow the procedures required by law, not whether or not the mitigations are correct.
Well, but what we have to do in order to do this is to determine the efficacy of the, of the FEIR. And what I'm, what I'm saying is that I'm not sure...
No, I believe that's in number three, the efficacy. In number two, we're just basically looking to see whether or not it is, whether or not we have met the policy. You can say it better than me, Sandy.
Procedural and substantive.
Yes, the procedural and substantive of following the rules of the state law.
Okay. So let me speak to one that has already been brought up and is, I think, by what you're saying there is, is a part of this. We do talk about the Stanford GUP and whether the Stanford GUP should have been considered here. I listened to, and I've asked previously about the Stanford GUP and its consideration as a part of this. And what I think is different is we talk about a regional, the regional growth. I think what is different, though, with the Stanford GUP that maybe isn't known until more recently is that the housing appears to be focused in Palo Alto. The 3,150 units, I think it is, yeah, 3,150 units. I can't say that all of those are focused in Palo Alto, but the presenter for Stanford, the representative for Stanford, has said that rather than what was previously considered was that that housing would be created within a six-mile radius of, of the planned area, now it's focused at transit areas that, transit stations that serves the planned area, which to me seems like Palo Alto. And I think that's different than what has been considered, so...
Through the mayor, I think what Councilmember Holman you're referring to is the county's offer of housing mitigation funds or funds to help with the development of housing off-campus. Now, of course, all of the housing that they're proposing as part of the GUP is in the unincorporated county on the Stanford campus. But they are proposing, just as they did last time, to make funds available for housing construction off-campus. And I think they're actually proposing to draw the limits of where those funds could be used wider than they were the last time, not making it a radius around the campus, but allowing those funds to be used farther afield next to Caltrain stations and other transit-accessible areas. Quite beyond Palo Alto.
That wasn't, maybe we heard that different. I didn't, how I understood it. So I'll stop there for the moment.
Councilmember DuBois.
Yeah, I've said multiple times during this process that, that I wasn't really comfortable with the scenario process. I felt it was very confusing to the public. And so I don't think we really had a clear project and a preferred scenario until very late in the process. You know, through the draft ER, we were continuing to add scenarios and change scenarios. And so my concern is mainly around the definition of the project under SEQA. And I do kind of also have concerns about the Stanford GUP. I mean, the way, the way I look at it, we've all exceeded, you know, what we forecast for them just without one project. But my main concerns around this are really about, again, a clear definition of project.
All right. I'll speak briefly to it. Again, I think we, I think I want to reiterate that what we're doing here is we're doing two things. We are asking whether or not the EIR is sufficient as a matter of law, not as a matter of, do we like this mitigation? Do we like that mitigation? But as a matter of law. And I think if you look on page six of the staff slides, I think that's really helpful. When you look at the California Code of Regulations and the SEQA guidelines, which basically says, "The courts have looked not for perfection, but for adequacy completeness in a good-faith effort of full disclosure." I also think that we should, if you look at the procedural requirements, what you need to meet is, and if I, Sandy, if I say anything wrong, you know, please correct me, because not my area of expertise necessarily. But I think we need to say we have a notice of preparation of the EIR describing the project location and probable environmental effects. I think that goes a little bit to Councilmember DuBois's concern about what is the project. And I guess I want to ensure that we actually did that. So that's a question. Can you answer yes or no?
I was looking at our consultant, and she said, yes, we have.
Okay. And then you need to have a scoping meeting, my understanding, when you do this. Do we have a scoping meeting? And then you need to have the notice of the availability of the draft EIR and public notice and review period. And circulation is a minimum of 30 to 45 days. Did we meet that requirement? We did it twice. So we more than met that requirement. And then we need to prepare written responses to significant environmental issues raised in comments provided to agencies at least 10, at least 10 days before the certification. Did we do that? So that's my understanding of what the procedural requirements are. And so therefore, it's my understanding that we met all the procedural requirements. And then there's some substantive requirements, which basically describe existing local and regional, physical, environmental, describe the existing infrastructure, describe the plan, describe any inconsistencies between the proposed plan and regional plan. Did we do all of that? We did, right? And then the contents of the final EIR, the draft EIR lists of commentators, comment letters, responses, and text changes and clarifications. I know I've seen that in there. And I believe that that, that doing those things is what we're asked to vote on, is whether or not we met the bare requirements of the law. And that's what this vote is, is did we do that? And so with that, I am going to definitely support this, and I would hope we all would. Because if we don't support this, what we're really saying is that our staff did an inadequate job in preparing an EIR. And from a legal perspective, not from a policy perspective. This is not that vote. This is a vote on the, did they do their job correctly? All right. I just saw Councilmember Kuzlight come on.
So I appreciate that, Mayor, explaining. And also, I do want to say that, you know, even if there was a no vote, it's got nothing to do with saying that I don't have confidence in you. I'm sure, I know that, I know about the amount of work that you've put in this, as well as for myself when I first joined the CAC and all my colleagues on the CAC that have spent a lot of time on it. I do have to say that, you know, I do have concerns, similar to what Councilmember DuBois has said. In terms of the scenarios, it was always very difficult to understand that. And when I look at this, I hear a lot of the member of the public and letters written in, and also council colleagues who've said that, you know, we need to push this through, whether, it almost sounds like whether it is the right thing to do or not. And I think, you know, in full consciousness, when I look at this, I, I, I am not comfortable with it. I, I feel that there's the segmentation in terms of, I can't believe that the elements are actually linked, because I don't see that. And also, the segmentation of the implementation element is not handled at the same time, and then it's going to be pushing it out. So I, I do have concerns about that, too. In addition to all of that, all the audience have come forward and said that we have substantial, and also was mentioned tonight by, by staff, I forget who. But it was also mentioned that if we go into a new year and push this out into a new year, it means that we have to take into consideration a whole bunch of housing laws that is, that is going to come effective, I think, January 1st. Isn't that concerning that we're not taking, to push this through and not to take that into consideration? We could be greatly impacted without knowing what the impact, what, without knowing what the mitigations are for us, what the impacts are going to be for us. And then I think we've mentioned already many times, the GUP, it's substantial. It's very significant. And then the ADU law, that ordinance that we have just passed, we really don't know, you know, what is the significance, impact on that as well. And then, you know, last but not least, I mean, I mean, there's a lot more. But last but not least is our Caltrain grade separation that we're going to be discussing very soon. And there's so much impact in that. And I don't see it really addressed in this FEIR. So I do have great concerns about it. And I just wanted to make sure that I do mention that. But I do want... But I do want to say I'm grateful for all the work and thank you is deserved.
Mr. Mayor, if I could just respond on the-
Oh, staff, I think you need to respond.
On the record to a few of those things. First of all, I wanted to clarify for Councilmember Koo that we're not proposing to segment or defer implementation, adoption of the implementation chapter. That's included in the action we've proposed. When you adopt the comprehensive plan, it would be, the only thing that we're suggesting the council could defer to a later date is prioritizing among all of the actions there. Currently, that chapter reflects the CAC's priorities, you know, the order in which they're presented. But I think this council has already signed off on a lot of the, on all of the implementation actions themselves, and we can bring both the planning commission and the council in the new year, the time and space to do the, you know, sort of prioritization of those individual actions. That is not something, or implementation of, adoption of that chapter is not something we're suggesting we defer. Secondly, I didn't mean to suggest that the housing package, the new housing bills, was a reason that we would have to amend this comprehensive plan. This comprehensive plan has and is based on an environmental analysis of a significant projection of additional housing by the year 2030, and that would not change with the housing bills. That projection of housing is sufficiently large enough to encompass the changes to the ADU ordinance this council adopted. So there's nothing about housing that should cause you any concern when reviewing or acting on the EIR or the plan. The law that I was referring to that will become effective January 1 and require changes if this decision is pushed past the end of the year relates to environmental justice. The legislature now believes that every jurisdiction should have a section on environmental justice in their comprehensive plans, and so we would have to do that if this decision was deferred past the end of the year. Finally, on the issue of Caltrain grade separations, this comprehensive plan update, for the first time, prioritizes separation of Caltrain grade crossings, and we've included that in the scenario discussion. And getting to Councilmember DuBois's comment about the preferred scenario and how the scenarios have been built on and changed over time, we included a chapter in the final EIR, Chapter Two, about the preferred scenario, where we spent quite a bit of time talking about how that scenario built on the prior scenarios and the different elements of that scenario that were consistent with the other scenarios, really demonstrating how that scenario, which is now the great outgrowth of this council's action and your direction to us, represents an amalgam of the policies and priorities in some of the other scenarios. And we're confident that that is, this has been an effective process in terms of allowing the council and the community to weigh various priorities and ultimately come up with a plan and a scenario that, a preferred scenario that makes sense, given the council's policy direction over the last six to 12 months.
With the city attorney's office, you don't have to, but do you have any further comments to Councilmember Koo's comments?
Not to Councilmember Koo, but I did want to, if I could briefly comment on Councilmember DuBois's concern about the project description. What's important under CEQA is that the draft EIR have a project description with information that's sufficient to evaluate and review the project's environmental effects. And so as shown in the documents as well, and I know it's a lot of pages there, but there were a number of alternatives. There were the six scenarios, but there was also the no-project alternative that was evaluated, as well as the no-growth alternative that was evaluated as well, and a hybrid alternative. So there were a number of different scenarios looked at to determine the range of impacts depending on the amount of growth and other infrastructure improvements, other policies and parameters that might be included in the ultimate preferred scenario. So there was a range of analysis provided, and I think at the end of the process, when the council identified a preferred scenario, it was important to look at whether that outer box of what was evaluated was sufficiently large to encompass what the preferred scenario was. And the determination was that the impacts were within that outer box. And I would note that even for project level, for projects, you don't have to be a 100% project design in order to prepare an EIR. So there were some, some elements of the plan that hadn't been determined, but the parameters were sufficient to do the required environmental analysis.
Okay, one more question.
So Hillary, in regards to the housing that you were talking about, you know, in the new year, I think I wasn't specifically speaking just to the housing that is going to be built. I'm also speaking to the cumulative impacts that's going to come along with all the building. And furthermore, I really didn't see in this FEIR there was any recommendation as to reducing the numbers of office space, for example, in order to accommodate the housing, since there's going to be-
So that goes to item number three again?
Okay, very good.
The mitigations? That's not, I mean-
Okay, that's fine. So with that said, how does it work with, since I think you're all on board with this FEIR, I mean, obviously, you're confident about it. Would you be comfortable with, in order for me to be able to do my due diligence and to be fully comfortable and confident about that, would it be possible to do a peer review on this? This is a big item. This, we're moving forward with all sorts of development coming at us. We're told to be bold, even with all the building that's going to happen, and we're going to be impacted no matter what, with whatever kind of mitigations we have. As it is, you know, there's significant unavoidable impacts here, which I'm not supposed to speak to right now. It's a big thing for me to say, I am willing to certify this and put my name on it.
So Councilmember Koo, all you're doing, if you certify this, is saying that it meets the legal sufficiency.
Well, that's a problem.
As far as the process-
That's the problem.
You're not precluded from feeling differently about the findings-
Correct.
-or the impacts, the mitigation measures? I would just say one thing, just finally on this. I, and I don't want to turn this into something about the staff, because this isn't just about the staff, it's about the whole process we've gone through, right? Which is, I personally don't see the reason not to vote for this if you agree we basically have followed due process. And to do otherwise, in a sense, says to us, we did not do that. And we have not been striving to do that for years and years. And I don't see what public benefit is provided to us as a city at all at this point to do that. I certainly could understand when you get to the next part of the section, that there could be real difference about whether or not the impacts are sufficiently mitigated in one area or not, and people could weigh in on that. And I would just come back to the last thing is, is that, you know, we love to say, talk about kicking the can down the road in Palo Alto. I mean, failure to ultimately move ahead, forget this piece, even on the other parts, de facto does leave us with what we have right now. And I would just ask that we think about how we close the gap between the exist, just living with the existing comp plan and in a meaningful way being actually to have a new and better comp plan. Because that's the implications that we're being faced with. There's nothing to preclude you from making subsequent modifications or amendments to this new adopted comp plan in the future without having to redo everything if a project or issue comes along and you want to do that. And I would just ask that you think about it. But I think the mayor has clearly identified the difference between recommendation two, which is the only thing before the council right now, as far as your decision, and what it signals to support it or not to support it. And I would just argue that folks who have concerns about the extent of the EIR itself as far as the findings and the impacts and the mitigations will have ample opportunity to raise those issues and even potentially vote no in the next actions after even voting yes on the certification. That could be done. I don't think that's inconsistent. Yep.
If I could just add one thing, Councilmember Koo's question really gives me an opportunity to say how much the planning staff is enjoying working with Sandy Lee. Sandy replaced Cara Silver and, in a sense, has offered a peer review of this process because she came in after this process was, you know, 80% complete and has helped us get over the finish line. She was skeptical, you know, and we had, we sat down and worked with her through the final EIR and I think convinced Sandy, and I think Sandy can testify that what we have is a document that meets all the requirements of the law. We've described a project in a meaningful way. We have analyzed alternatives at equal level of detail. We've linked our plan and our EIR mitigation in an effective and, I don't know, I lost my, I lost my sentence there. But we have, I think, gotten the kind of peer review that Councilmember Koo you were asking about. And thanks to Sandy.
Okay, Councilmember Fine?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, for letting me speak again. I didn't think I would have to speak again on this, and I thought this wouldn't be terribly contentious. We speak a lot in this council about process and about consensus. And I think this decision is quite important for the city, one, in recognizing the process that multiple councils, multiple planning commissions, the CAC, and our community have gone through to reach this point. On consensus, all of us work a hell of a hard on this stuff. We all take a lot of time to read these documents, go through, come up with questions and ideas. And so we have also followed that process. It's still an incredibly complicated document and a difficult task to go through with. Staff and others have worked tirelessly, tirelessly on this. And as I'm convinced through my reading, my work, and questions to staff, we've met the procedural and substantive needs here, the requirements from CEQA. Additionally, the alternatives of not passing this tonight are worse. We're talking about a plan that was started in 1990. I was four years old in 1990. I don't think that plan is relevant to us going forward. So I would really encourage my colleagues to support this motion. It is simply to certify the final EIR, and in the next round, the next numbers, three and four, we can certainly hash it out on what we all think probably is an insufficient plan. Not everyone's getting everything they want, but everybody's getting something, and I think it's important for us to move the community forward.
Councilmember Felsath.
Yeah, just briefly, I thought this would be non-controversial, too. I thought this, I'm going to vote for it. I think it's, there's some legitimate discussion in the next item, which has to do with the intersection of values and trade-offs, but this one seems very procedural to me.
Councilmember Holman.
Yeah, so just briefly, as I've, it sort of goes to what Councilmember DuBois was mentioning earlier, it's like, I've been pretty vocal and several times talked about the process for this, that the, you know, the final scenario wasn't identified until March 20 of this year. And I understand the explanation that City Attorney Sandra Lee gives, and in a way, it makes sense, but it's still an uncomfortable thing for me. That and the GUP, lack of inclusion, both, I wish it wasn't controversial. I wish I could just, in my gut, 100% say, yeah. But I do have those two reservations.
Okay. If we could vote on the board? And that passes on a six-three vote. Okay? We're going to take a five-minute break, and then we'll come back.
The only ones I keep are like the big ones. Yeah. After a while, I know, maybe it's. This is.
Where are you? I'm over at the library where you hid downstairs. Was he just sleeping as they were out there? Hi, Arthur. How are you? Good things. I thought I was gonna be able to speak. But if we were just saying it was the first two meetings, it's not there. Oh, that's funny. I was guessing it was last year. I was guessing it was last year. I was guessing it was last year. Very difficult. Looks like it's in great shape. It can happen. It can happen. You know, you guys. I'm questioning. I'm questioning. I'm questioning. You know, you guys. I'm over at the library where you hid downstairs. Was he just sleeping as they were out there? Great. Why, Arthur? How are you? Good things. I thought I was gonna be able to speak. But if we were just saying it was the first two meetings, it's not there. Oh, that's funny. I was guessing it was last year. 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 I was guessing it was last year.
Councilmember Koo? Councilmember Fine? Councilmembers? DuBois, two are missing. All right. All right.
Sorry, doing at that, Mr. Mayor.
All right. So now we're back, now we're on items number three, four, and five. I'm gonna take them all together. Yes, take them all together, and I will move items three, four, and five.
Second.
All right.
That was a second.
Good. So briefly, I, I'm just gonna basically say that I think that we've done a, we've had a really long process here. We went through the CAC. This process started, I don't remember, when did this process start? Like 2008? 2006?
Yeah. 2006. It was a little slow getting going, but...
Right. The PTC has had extensive comments on this. The, we've all weighed in. We've had, you know, extensive meetings on all of this. We've all made compromises. I don't think this plan has anything everybody wants. I think it's a huge improvement, frankly, over our 1998 comp plan. I think it's relevant for today. And I, I think there was something that, that Director Gittleman said that caught my attention, which was, at some point, your comp plan needs to be updated because otherwise, it's no longer relevant. And people could actually challenge decisions based on having a comp plan that's not relevant if items have changed in the community. I think everyone here would agree that this is not 1998. And I think when they started that comp plan and looking at their EIR, when did they start doing that?
Ninety-two.
In ninety-two, right? And, you know, when did they go through their EIR process? Do we know? Is it, you know, ninety-six, ninety-seven? It's so lost to the mists of antiquity that no one can tell us the answers to these questions. So I am gonna support the, the motion the way it is. I think that we should be, when we think about the required SEQA findings, I, I think one of the most important things to keep in mind here is, given where the Bay Area is, what would any plan look like with this? And I, I think what I heard from, from staff was, any plan we were likely to come up with on any of the scenarios would show that we would need to have some overriding considerations. And, you know, that a lot of these plans are really around the edges. You know, I, I think that's, that's something that is really important to keep in mind when we, when we think about this. What are we trying to achieve here? What's the purpose of this? This has been a really long process, and, and I hope you will all be supportive of, of the plan that we've actually worked as a group over many times to put together. Vice Mayor Niss, you seconded.
Are we making comments now to, to all, all three?
Yes, to three, four, and five.
Okay. Really, five is, if we get through three and four, then that's to direct staff to prepare something that's final.
Yes, I'm very concerned about five. It could be the most controversial issue here.
Oh, heaven, let's hope not. Yes, I, I seconded this, and I, I would hope that people do vote for it. I, I've certainly been hearing comments that would indicate that this is probably not going to be a nine-o vote. But a, a couple of things that I want to address, and one of them, and, and I think I'm probably feeling a little defensive about it because I do chair the airboard. And the airboard represents nine counties. We are the third-largest airboard in the state. There are thirty-five airboards. And other than South Coast and one other in the middle part of the state, we are, we are one of the largest. We have worked on the air quality, and I have been on this board for quite some time. We have worked on the air quality throughout our region. But our air, our air quality and much of what happens is controlled by CARB, which is the California Airboard. And many of you are familiar with CARB. You've heard what they've been, you know, you've heard what their, what their goals are. Part of my concern is that there is no question that across the state, they have worked with diligence to improve the air quality. They've also worked at controlling traffic, given that diesel in particular is one of the, one of our, our most, most dangerous engines and certainly does contribute to air quality problems and also to the kinds of health issues that go along with problems with the air quality. So as I look at this, and I, I think, what were the mitigations? The mitigations aren't just going on with something that we do here in the city. The mitigations are going on with places like the airboard. MTC looks at, at this same issue. We have pushed using electric cars, and tonight, there was an electric refuse vehicles. We are making some progress. And it may not be as fast as people would hope, but there is a continuum on this process. And I think a, a great many of those things have been addressed here tonight. But I, I can assure this group with certainty that if there's one thing that's being looked at with, with serious concern, it's definitely the air quality in the state of California. Very hard when you've got this many vehicles on the road. You still have diesel trucks. You have diesel engines of many kinds. That does contribute to bad air. There's no question. But this group is working with great intensity to improve the air quality, to improve the health. And our, at the end of, of any meeting, we always say, we are, we are absolutely committed to public health. That's just one of the issues. I think there are many others that someone may want to address. While I have the floor, I also want to say that it's very interesting to have both Adrian and Greg Tanaka here. Greg Tanaka went through, through this for eight years. Adrian went through it for two. I know they have a very, a, a very clear idea of where this was headed, even though, as Greg said, it's kind of like, it's sort of like, I, I'll put words in your mouth, Greg. It's a little like Groundhog Day. I, I think it's time for us to move forward on this. I, I realize we haven't mitigated every possible problem that exists in here, but I think in particular in the air quality and transportation, we've made great strides.
Councilmember Walback?
It's been a long, winding road.
Do you have some music to go with that?
Well, since the city manager alluded to the Beatles earlier. It's been a very interesting process, and getting this comprehensive plan to this point. It's been a lot of compromise. It's been a struggle to find consensus, and it's really been a collective learning exercise. We've all learned together. We've, and I'm really referring to the process as it was essentially rebooted in 2014 and further developed in, was it 2015, when we created the Citizens Advisory Committee? After the AORPAAL Alto meetings, you know, in 2014 about, oh, sorry, 2013, about, about the comprehensive plan, that was a big, you know, impetus for me getting more directly involved in city events and city government, which ultimately landed me here. The creation of the Citizens Advisory Committee was something that was not, I think, initially supported by everybody on council. I was one of the early supporters of that. I think Councilmember DuBois, if I don't, if I'm remembering correctly, was also. It was an important step, building off of the AORPAAL Alto meetings to create a body that would work with real focus over time to develop themselves a level of expertise as citizens who came from, you know, broad variety of the community, to study these issues, to hash them out, to hash them out together, and find compromise and find consensus. They brought stuff to council with the support of staff and consultants piecemeal over time. You know, I've been involved as much as anyone in sometimes looking critically at their work, but ultimately, accepting the vast majority of what the CAC recommended. We learned through this process how important the programs are to support the policies. We also learned that there are opportunities in the future, and I'm not recommending it right now, but there are opportunities in the future to make tweaks to our comprehensive plan if we find sometime between now and 2030 that, oops, we missed something, or things have radically changed in some way that was unanticipated. There are opportunities to make those amendments periodically, and that's okay under state law. And I emphasize that now because the perfect is the enemy of the good. This plan is probably not perfect, but it's pretty darn good. There are a lot of things that I would have liked to have seen different, and I'm personally willing to accept some pretty significant compromises to move this forward. I do think it's important to remember that the default, the no-project option, if we do not adopt the comprehensive plan, the results when it comes to traffic and impacts on the community like that, that we are all so concerned about, the impacts will be worse than if we adopt this plan. So this is better than the status quo. It is an improvement. There are a couple of things I'd like to suggest as minor amendments. I, I don't think that either of them will be controversial, and I'm hoping that my colleagues, if they're considering adding other amendments, you know, this is kind of our last chance to do that for this plan. I, I hope that others will follow that lead of not proposing things at this point which they anticipate will be controversial. I've sent to the city clerk a, a couple of amendments. The first one is to add a new program, L-2.11.1, that would go under policy L-2.11, which was mentioned in the staff, on the staff slides today. That has to do with working with Palo Alto Unified School District. So this would say, collaborate, as a new program, would say, collaborate with Palo Alto Unified School District to plan for space to accommodate future school expansions or new school sites.
Second.
And I have another one, but I think maybe we should take them one at a time, if that's all right.
Okay, that was seconded by Councilmember Niss. And I, I think I'll just clarify, even if I support your amendment, and I actually do support this one, I have no intention of incorporating any of them without a vote, frankly, because I think, I think that would be a bad process.
I, I accept and respect that, that choice by the maker of the main motion, Mayor. So I'll, I'll just speak to this briefly. I think that this has been an area of, of some controversy. I've stepped into it a bit sometimes, perhaps inadvertently or too much myself. There are limits under state law to what we can do in SEQA planning, et cetera, as a city when it comes to schools. But the importance of schools in Palo Alto is something none of us denies. The importance of working collaboratively with Palo Alto Unified School District is something none of us denies, and that's why I hope this will be, you know, non-controversial. The truth is, as Palo Alto grows and changes in a pretty, you know, again, I think compromised, modest way, as this comprehensive plan envisions and allows, it is possible that we will need another school site or, or more, or we may need to, or the Palo Alto Unified may decide to expand some of their school sites. And I think it's important that we sit down with them early on, figure out how to do that, and, you know, really come to the table with them to say, you know, if we're expecting more population growth in North Ventura or in downtown or wherever, or Stanford Research Park, let's figure out what would the school needs for that be, and work together to find the space to do that. And I think that the program that I'm suggesting here really supports the policy under which it would be nested.
Vice Mayor Niss?
I don't think I could say it any better than Corey did. It's very important, and I'm glad you mentioned the Ventura area. That's going to be critical.
Does anyone wish to speak to the amendment? I have, I had lights from Holman and DuBois before this. I just, you want to speak to the amendment? Okay, go ahead.
Did you want to speak to the amendment?
Or do you want to, you wanted to speak to the main motion, I thought. But if you want to speak to the amendment, let me know. Councilmember Holman.
It was something different, not to the amendment.
Okay, so Councilmember DuBois, if you want to speak to the amendment.
Yeah, I was trying to get a substitute motion sent. So I, I appreciate this motion. I think it hits on some important aspects, but I do want to propose a substitute motion that would...
So we're on the amendment?
Yeah.
Do you want to amend the amendment? Is that what you're looking to do?
Can I do a substitute amendment, I guess?
You can amend an amendment. You can amend an amendment.
Okay.
Why don't you just call it amending an amendment? Then I'll be fine.
I thought I could do a substitute amendment. So I would, I would keep this first part, which is collaborate on space. I think we should evaluate zoning for space to accommodate new schools. So it would be a comma kind of at the end of the sentence continuing. And three, we would focus transportation planning on school-related impacts.
Let me see the language. I think that the second portion would probably be best served as a separate amendment and actually my second amendment, you know, I'm still going on with my comments, that I'll be bringing up in a minute, might reflect what you're, you're hoping to see there. So after my two amendments, this is on, on the, the transportation stuff.
Yep, this is specifically tied to schools.
I understand. My other one is also tied to schools and transportation. So I would suggest keeping them separately just so that the programs can be clean.
So to continue with the same sentence from the previous one? Comma, evaluate zoning for space to accommodate new schools?
Yeah, I would accept that.
And then the last one is, and focus transportation planning on school, school-related impacts.
I would not accept that part because again, I, I think that is best served in a separate, I, I don't, I don't think it goes to the point of this amendment, but I would be interested in entertaining it in my second, so a proposed amendment may address your concern.
You know, I think we just basically have to understand something. You can't, well, evaluate zoning space to accommodate new schools. We don't zone for schools in, I mean, that would be a taking to donate, to evaluate, I think, to do it.
We can. It could accommodate public facilities or those sorts of things.
Well, I mean, it'd just be a PF zone somewhere, right?
I believe it's a taking to designate someone's zone as a PF zone on their property, but that would be my sense, but I'm gonna just, if not, I could be wrong, I just...
I think people might be open to it if it was part of a coordinated area plan or something. It just says evaluate. I'm comfortable with that.
If the city attorney's office and staff's comfortable, I'm comfortable.
And again, I, I would, I would accept it up to the last comma.
Okay, so you could strike the, the transportation.
Right, and, and again, I'm saying, hold on to that because I think that's interesting, but I just don't think it belongs in this amendment.
Okay. So would you be okay with that, Liz?
Fine.
Okay. Are you, are you fine with that, Councilmember DuBois? All right, so that's been accepted as the amendment to the amendment. It's been accepted. So I see no, no other lights on that. Shall we vote on the board? On the amendment?
With the amendment, right?
Right, the amended amendment.
Yeah, and that passes.
Okay, so I have one more that I've also sent to the city clerk and this goes maybe not entirely to Councilmember DuBois's suggestion, but is related and perhaps it will find support. This would be to modify goal T dash four, to just add five words to it. So goal T dash four reads, protect local streets that contribute to neighborhood character and provide a range of transportation options. This would add five words to read, protect local streets and adopted school commute corridors that contribute to neighborhood character and provide a range of transportation options. And so it would just be adding and adopted school commute corridors along with local streets.
I'll second that.
You seconded that?
Sure.
Okay.
Again, I hope it's not controversial. I don't, I think it speaks for itself. I won't speak to it anymore. Hope you'll support it.
Just real quickly, I appreciate both these amendments. I didn't, I, you probably heard me earlier, I don't think we went far enough with impacts to schools. You know, we kind of stopped at the state limit. This is a family-oriented community and, you know, even the DIR says that the school district is going to be completely full and the school district says they can't operate with completely full buildings. So I think this, this is really important, the previous amendment as well as this amendment.
Okay, seeing no further lights, let's vote on the amendment. Oh, wait, wait, before we vote?
I'm so sorry. In one of the items on, in attachment A, we took out the word local, so it no longer says protect local streets and adopted school commu, it just says protect streets. I think there was a concern by Ms. Ellison that we may have inadvertently excluded some materials or, you know, she didn't want local streets.
I did not mean to add the word local to the, to...
So are you willing to take out the word local?
I'm willing to take out the word local because that wasn't the point of the amendment.
Willing to take out local?
Yeah, you said yes.
Yep, okay. Let's vote on it without the word local. I guess we have to push it again. And we're almost there. So we have eight with Councilmember Phil Seth choosing not to vote. Ah, there he is.
All right, all right. So those are it for, for my amendments. And I actually just wanted to ask a quick question of staff. Level of service is talked about in this, in this comprehensive plan, but because of changes at the state level, it's moving, we're moving towards LOS really being a informational item more than a, a real metric for measuring projects. Is that correct?
Thank you, Councilmember Phil Seth. This is also addressed...
Actually, it's Wahlback, but, sorry.
I'm sorry.
It's a late, we've been here a long time already, sorry.
This is also addressed in the attachment A, the list of changes. It's item number 33. We, we've clarified this because there was a number, there was a bit of confusion about this at the Planning Commission. It says now, when adopting new sequo significance criteria for VMT for compliance with SB 743, adopt standards for vehicular LOS analysis for use in evaluating the consistency of a proposed project with the comprehensive plan. And goes on from there. So that's the context in which LOS will still be used.
It will be in the context of multimodal level of service?
In, in the context of reviewing plans for conformance with the comprehensive plan, we'll be looking at LOS, but for environmental review and, and mitigation sequel purposes under the state law, we have to use BMT.
Okay.
And I, I think this reflects the council's last direction on this. We just tried to clarify it because we got, there was a lot of confusion at the commission level.
Can you, can you cite the page again? Packet page?
It's item number 33 in attachment A.
Okay, thanks. I'm, I'm really glad that multimodal level of service is in there because, well, frankly, you know, people are, if, if a change to in there a section helps it be better for bicyclists or pedestrians, I think that's an important thing to keep track of. So I definitely think we want to keep supporting multi, the development of multimodal level of service as a, as a important metric for our community. Thank you.
All right, Councilmember Holman.
Since we're in the mode of making amendments here, just, excuse me, just would like to add one along the lines of what Councilmember Wahlback has done. I'm not sure either in email, personal comment or comments brought to the council that we've heard anything more important to, to the community and to neighborhoods than a policy that was taken out. And it said, encourage commercial enterprise, but not at the expense of the city's residential neighborhoods. And I would move that that be restored to the comprehensive plan. It's really important to the community, to the residents, to the neighborhoods, and I would ask that that be restored to the comprehensive plan.
There is language that deals with this issue in the comprehensive plan. Could you point us?
But it, but it's not the same.
Well, we need to look at it. Do you know where it is?
I don't offhand. I've lost, I've lost track of, I've lost track of it.
Okay, Elaine Costello, I just want to kind of clarify this issue. That language that says, but not at the expense of residential neighborhoods, was actually in the introduction to the previous plan. And in this plan, at both the CAC and the Planning Commission, there was language added to the policies to make the protection of neighborhoods a priority. So if we look here at policy number, you're gonna have to bear with me a little bit because I gotta run around the plan a little. It's in both the business element in policy B 2.3. It says, I'm not going to read the whole thing, but it says, and preserving Palo Alto's livability and need to work together with a priority on neighborhood quality of life. And then the Planning Commission, which the council looked at it at a previous meeting, added language, so that was policy B point, 2.3. And then there's language added to the land use element, which is now policy one, L 1.1. Maintain and prioritize Palo Alto's various, varied residential neighborhoods while sustaining the vitality of its commercial areas and public facilities. So the previous had been in the text, which is not used to evaluate projects. By putting it into the policy and putting a priority, priority on the neighborhoods, it actually, by both the CAC and the Planning Commission, there was an effort to clarify the importance of neighborhood protections. I just wanted to clarify that.
All right, thank you.
Yeah, I, I do hear those and I appreciate the efforts. Thank you very much. I'm impressed that you can find things so quickly. And I do appreciate those. I do hear, especially the one in the business chapter, I don't hear that one as incorporating this kind of priority. The one in the land use comes closer, but I still hear from, you know, as we have in this, in these chambers on a number of occasions, too, people who still miss that language. And I'm just wondering if we can find a place to supplement what exists in the current plan to incorporate this language, not at the expense of the city's residential neighborhoods.
Councilmember Holman, you need to make a motion, if you're gonna make a motion.
Okay, so I, I moved that we reinstate the language, encourage commercial enterprise, but not at the expense of the city's residential neighborhoods.
And that would be reinstated where it was before, which would...
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
In the introduction?
Yes.
I'll second, I'll second that.
That was in the introduction to the plan as a whole? You would add that sentence back in?
Yes.
Okay.
And it's for the city clerk, it's encourage commercial enterprise, but not at the expense of the city's residential neighborhoods.
All right, Councilmember, oh, do you want to speak to your motion?
Just, you know, there are, there's a lot of coverage of things in the, in the comprehensive plan and just while I have the floor for a second, it's like, just to say, I think there are some really good things in here. I don't agree with all of it. We're not going to all agree to all of it, but I think there are some really good things in here. This is something that I've heard just so many times that's so important to people and I think there is no harm in putting this back in where it was previously. I think it's really important to people and I'd like for the people to have it that have been so concerned about its removal.
Councilmember DuBois?
Yeah, this is, this is in the narrative. You know, it's not a policy or program. I think, again, we, we've heard from a lot of people that they care about this language. I think, I think it's, I think it's appropriate and I would urge, urge my councils, fellow councilmembers to support it. I, and I think the sentiment, it's hard to find objection with it, actually. And again, it's, it's in the narrative, it's not a policy or program.
Councilmember Wahlback?
I'm going to be supporting this amendment. I think it's reasonable. I think placing it in the introduction is a reasonable place to put it as well. I think this is not very controversial, especially in that way. I think it's reflected already by policies that are elsewhere in the plan. This merely, you know, makes sure that if somebody's starting their reading of the comprehensive plan, they see this earlier on. Just a quick question for the maker. With this amendment, is it your intention to then support the main motion?
Well, I think there's a lot of good things in this.
Well, I'll be darned. I didn't, I didn't anticipate that question. We'll see. I do have some concerns about mitigations and so we'll see.
Councilmember Koo?
So I wanted to ask the maker and the secondor if, if I could make an amendment. And I just sent it to Jessica and Beth's attachment, but essentially it would use the new language in the narrative for the meeting residential and commercial needs. And it would continue to say, it encourages a thriving business community that provides services to local residents and revenue to a city, but not at the expense of the city's residential neighborhoods by vigorously working to protect neighborhoods and the environment.
I don't know.
Where is, where does that go?
I need to have some clarity about, there, there's a lot of strikeout and color and...
Oh, I'm sorry.
I'm not sure what's going on here.
So it would be the red, it would be basically just the red, bold one. I'm sorry, that, that's from my notes, so...
So this is a paragraph in the narrative introduction on page I, four.
So all the rest of it is the current language except for the red?
It's mostly the current language and then the last sentence after the comma, and attracting quality businesses versus the current language says innovative, small and independent.
I think I'd, I prefer to stick with the original language, I think.
Would you say, Tom?
I, I think I'd prefer to stick with the original language.
Okay, so that fails. Well, that fails to be incorporated, so if you need a second at that point. Going once, going twice, going three times, that fails for lack of a second. Okay. Councilmember Phil Seth?
Yeah, thank you. I think this, I think this is a good ad. I think it'll make a lot of people happy, right? I've been walking around, I've been walking around all week asking people that sort of know about it, right? So which do you like better, the, the new one or the old one? And to the extent that, to the extent that I hear criticisms of the new one, one of the, one of a very small number of, of main ones is, you know, it seems to weaken neighborhood protections, right? And I think, I think this will make a lot of people happy.
Councilmember Fine, thank you. So just a question for staff on this one. When we say not at the expense of the city's residential neighborhood, so two questions, what weight does the narrative carry?
You know, when people are reviewing projects, they generally don't look at, the narrative is background information. It's really the policies that are really going to be used day to day to evaluate new projects.
Okay.
But there's no big harm in putting something like this into the narrative either.
And I, I would just add to that, I mean, I think if policies are unclear, you can look to the narrative for some guidance on how to interpret those policies.
Okay, that's helpful. And the second question, just, and this is maybe more for the city attorney, when we say not at the expense of, I mean, could this be interpreted, you know, don't do this business because, you know, people are going to walk by a neighborhood or because there's going to be a little bit more parking or because people might have lunch on the sidewalk in front? I, I'm just trying to get a, a read on what not at the expense of means. Does that preclude any of these?
You know, I, I think it could be interpreted multiple ways and I think as Elaine just indicated, most people are going to turn to the policies and say, does an action we're considering conform to the policies? They may read the narrative to help them with that inquiry, but I don't think you should be concerned that this has unintended consequences.
Thank you, okay. So I guess I'll support this, but I guess, also at the same time, you know... But also, at the same time, you know, this is kind of the final stretch of our comprehensive plan. And I would encourage us all to consider the work that the PTC and the CAC did on this in terms of implementing some of the policies. And let's, it's an enormous plan already. So adding new language, especially like, you know, I mean, who's gonna vote against this, right? The headlines are going, "Councilmember Fine hates neighborhoods," right? But does it add anything? From staff, it's not clear it does. So let's be judicious with our time and our amendments to this plan. I would just encourage that. Thank you.
Okay, Vice Mayor Ness?
Well, I'm gonna reluctantly vote against it. And not because I don't agree with it. But I think we are already wordsmithing again. This is really the message within this, and I'm very aware of how the comp plan gets used. And it's getting used primarily by the policies and by the Ls and the Ts and Is and so forth. But as, you know, as important as this is, I think this is, glancing again at this intro, I think this includes it again and again. And I'm concerned that we are, if we're going to look at everything this carefully, especially the intro, we're really going back again to ground zero.
So I'm gonna vote for it based on two things. I think what councilmember Philseth said was good, is that it gives people comfort out there, and I think that's really helpful and important. And I too have heard people come and complain about that. And the second reason is, on my part, hope springs eternal, and councilmember Holman has now said she will consider voting for the comp plan.
She said, "We'll see."
I, "Hope springs eternal." Sure, go ahead.
Just a quick question for staff. Do you need us to identify exactly where this goes in the introduction, or...
It goes on the cover.
Good, okay, great. We will leave it to your expert hands. We will leave it, yes, we're gonna leave it to your expert hands.
Fourteen words into the intro, we're gonna insert it.
All right, you know, thanks again to Holman and DuBois for this one.
Okay. Councilmember Holman, you still have the floor. Are you done? Okay.
I'll have to vote on this, but then I still have the floor.
Yes, okay, that's correct. So let's vote on this. And that passes on an eight to one vote with councilmember Ness voting no.
I'll get the terrible headline. Don't worry, Adrian, I'll take the blow.
All right. Councilmember Holman?
So a procedural point here. So I have some comments about mitigation. Do you want us to do these kind of, you know, round robin? Or do you want me to attack all of them now? Or how do you want to do this?
I want you to attack all of them now, councilmember Holman.
Okay.
I'm hoping that it's not, you know, at some point, I might have to ask for a cloture vote if it's, you know, too extreme.
Ask for a what vote?
Before we cut off debate. It's too extreme.
So, well, I would say none of them are unimportant. So going back to air quality. Before I ask about some mitigations, I want to point out what the World Health Organization says. It says that five to 10% of death in the United States are attributed to air pollution. Five to 10% of deaths in the United States are attributed to air pollution. So they contribute to factors that lead to stroke, heart attack, and lung disease. So when I talk about mitigations, and I know that we are part of the larger whole, but I think if we do anything to add to that whole, we're not doing one of our primary responsibilities, not carrying out that responsibility. And health and life safety are two of government's primary responsibilities. So there are some things that it seems to me we don't consider. And some of them are, of course, linked with transportation mitigations because the vehicle is where we get a lot of air impacts. And I don't think I need to point out to anybody that we have had more spare the air days this year. sans the fires that brought their impacts down here, we've had more spare the air days this year than any other day. We're getting progressively more and more spare the air days. So the things that I find missing or lacking, and maybe I should also say, this is with absolutely no disrespect for staff, and it may be hard to understand it that way, because I know you've worked very hard on that, and you have great expertise, and so it's certainly not in that vein. These are, you know, my focus points that I think for me to feel comfortable, they need to be addressed. And some of these are for examples. So I mentioned one earlier that staff had commented on about, you know, projects of a certain size. And that language is used in a number of occasions in the FEIR, excuse me. It wasn't even a bad air day, but for some reason, whether I'm hoarse, I'm sorry. That language occurs on a number of occasions, and I don't expect it to say, you know, 50,000 square feet project, or 100,000 square foot project. But I would expect it to have some kind of quantification to it, because otherwise, this is so open-ended to me that it is meaningless. So I would expect that any place that it does say, you know, projects of a certain size, it would say, "Projects that generate X number of trips during the construction cycle," or that sort of thing. So that there's a way to understand what a mitigation could be to help protect our air quality. There are other occasions, a couple of other occasions where, you know, 100 diesel trips, diesel vehicle trips are used as the threshold for a mitigation to take hold. 100 diesel trips a day, that is an enormous project. That's a very, very high threshold. And my understanding is that that was based on the Stanford Medical Center project, an enormous, as we all know, project, well over a million square feet. How many of those are we gonna have? And so how often would the mitigations related to 100 diesel vehicle trips a day kick in? There are other air quality things, so those relate to both transportation and air quality. Other air quality things that we do not include, even though we touch on them in our code and other ordinances, we actually, and one that we actually removed. We removed a program or policy, I've forgotten which, that talks about promoting adaptive reuse of existing buildings. There is no project that is more environmental than retaining an existing building. And we all know, or should know, that existing buildings can be made very environmentally sound, and seismically sound. We do not require salvage. Salvage is a much more air quality sensitive procedure than is demolition. And yet salvage is not even mentioned in the comprehensive plan or in mitigations. I don't find it in the comprehensive plan. I certainly don't find it in the mitigations. Deconstruction and salvage do not create the dust, do not create the vehicle trips that it takes to manufacture new materials, nor does it take the energy to create those new materials that then get transported up to seven times before they reach their destination point. And we've talked about that at some points in time on this dais. We don't, it seems to me that we don't consider that the level of demolition and construction in Palo Alto is higher than most other communities. I don't go to any other community and see the streetscape so much defined by construction fences as I do in this community. And I think we are, I'll just say, I think we are irresponsible if we don't address some of the vehicle trips, demolition, salvage, construction impacts that we're foisting upon our residents and our employees. I'll go to noise for just a moment. In the plan, and in the FEIR that identifies the impacts, we go from a 60 dB to a 65 dB. Let me explain what that means. A change from 60 to 70, for instance, is a tenfold increase, a tenfold increase in noise. We don't perceive it as tenfold. We perceive it as two or three times an increase in noise. And yet, there was a, it's anticipated that our noise thresholds will go from 60 to 65 dB. And yet, a mitigation was struck out of the FEIR that said we would update our, I don't have the exact language written right here, but I can find it if need be. And yet, we take out the language that says we will update for clarity and enforcement our noise ordinance. That is struck out of the mitigations. Noise is insidious. And when we have a project that exceeds the noise ordinance, or, yes, exceeds the noise ordinance, and adds to the ambient noise level, we are raising the threshold for other projects because they are graded against the ambient noise level. It's an insidious, insidious impact we're foisting on our community. And again, noise is a health factor. And we have a healthy city. I don't need to remind any of us, we have a healthy city, healthy community priority. But yet, we're anticipating and not mitigating, to my satisfaction, noise. For, I'm sorry, I left one out when it came to air quality, is that we don't, as a mitigation, we don't talk about increasing our urban forests. And we all know that our urban forests and trees clear the air, but that's not mentioned as looking for ways to increase our urban forest. When it comes to the aesthetics impacts, we do something similar to what we did in the noise, is we took out the specific criteria that would be used to determine whether something was compatible or not in kind of gutting what the review process would be. When it comes to cultural resources, we do something that's actually an improvement in that we identify when something's going to happen to a potential California Register property. But all we do is identify that an impact is going to happen. What I read as being taken out is adopting mitigations that would see that bad things don't happen. We're just identifying what the impact is. When it comes to aesthetics also, it wasn't clear to me, because it happened fairly late in the process, maybe staff can respond to this, that the impact of 3.0 hotels downtown and 2.5 hotel impacts elsewhere were studied in terms of, or evaluated in terms of their aesthetic impacts. And I pointed that one in particular because we, right now, allow 2.0 hotels in the CS zone. And every project that I'm aware of, every hotel project that I'm aware of, has been a point of consternation with neighbors and in the community, and a struggle at the Architectural Review Board. And yet, we're looking to increase that, you know, to 3.0 in the downtown, where, by the way, we have an assemblage of historic resources, and 2.5 in other areas. So I don't know that that was considered in terms of aesthetic impacts. Maybe staff could respond to that.
Councilmember Holman, I'd like an opportunity to respond, if we could, to all of your comments. Have you gotten to the end of your list?
Those are, those get you to the, oh, yeah, another one. And actually, I think this one is, I think this one is worth reading because I was distressed, actually, at reading it. So there was a question asked, and this has to do with traffic and transportation, and I do have a couple more about that. The one that I was especially distressed at reading was in response to Sean Carpenter, Assistant City Manager of the City of East Palo Alto, Community Economic Development Department, in the Planning Division. And the comment is about table 4.13-15. That's used for four of the scenarios. It seems like it has optimistic, highly optimistic assumptions about traffic impacts. And the response is that, "As traffic congestion and travel delays increase throughout the Bay Area, modes other than driving will become relatively more attractive." And I was, like I say, a little distressed at reading that because how I read that is that it's gonna get so bad that we will look to ways to make it better by reverting to or changing to alternative forms of transportation. So that was a concern, but the other part of that is, what other forms of alternative transportation? And it seemed to me that some of the transportation mitigations that reduce some of the impacts from potentially significant to less than significant rely on potential and future means of transportation that are unproven and some not even in place. And so along those lines seemed to me that a missing, and I won't catch them all here, but this'll give you a random sampling, that a missing mitigation, given that our employment numbers will increase even if we didn't add any square footage for office, is because of our existing offices would become more densely occupied. So as a mitigation, why didn't we consider or evaluate an employee transportation tax for employee densities over four per thousand, which is how we determine traffic impacts, it's how we determine what the parking ratios are? And use those funds to create expanded shuttle systems and, you know, business shuttles? So those are several things to put out there, but I've given you a laundry list to respond to. And I appreciate your forbearance.
Well, thank you, Councilmember Holman. It sounds like we're perhaps not gonna be able to convince you on all of these points, but I do appreciate the opportunity to respond on the record, and I hope that my colleagues will chime in. First, with regard to your questions about the air quality mitigation. The numbers you see and the mitigation measures you see here are drawn from the Air District's SEQA guidelines. And the reference to 100 diesel trips is in a measure that applies, that identifies projects that are subject to preparation of health risk assessments for toxic air contaminants. So this is not your run-of-the-mill development project where you're trying to mitigate for emissions of carbon monoxide or particulate emissions during construction. This is when you have a large project with the potential for toxic air contaminants, and the requirement under the Air District guidelines is to prepare a health risk assessment. So we feel that these measures, all of them combined, effectively implement what the Air District has put forward as best practices, requirements for SEQA documents, and that's what you see reflected in these measures. We don't have a specific air quality measure about increasing the footprint of the urban forest, but we do have policies about the urban forest. Please.
Sorry, this is, actually, this was a big emphasis of the CAC, and they put in, was recognizing, if you look at policy goal endpoint two, starting with policy endpoint two one, that they recognize the importance of the urban forest as a vital part of the city's natural and green infrastructure network.
Could you give us a page number two, please?
I'm sorry. This is on the plan, in the plan. It's page N-16. I'm sorry. We jump around a lot, and I know it's -- thank you for asking so that everyone can find it. It's policy N-2.1, and it's the role of the urban forest. And it starts off with recognizing, and it's a new policy that was added by the CAC, "To recognize the importance of the urban forest as a vital part of the city's natural and green infrastructure network that contributes to public health, resiliency, habitat value, appreciation of natural systems, and an attractive visual character which must be protected and enhanced." And it goes on to include, let me see, many, a lot of policies to deal with not just trees as an aesthetic. That was one of the big changes in this plan, was much more of a focus on public health and that the trees play a public health role, but the trees play an aesthetic role. But in this plan, they play a public health role. And that was recognized in the plan with a number of policies to keep, you know, plants enhance the ecological resistance by diversifying native species, protecting soils. There was quite -- the CAC spent a lot of time on this section with just that objective in mind of bringing into this plan the value of trees for public health as well as aesthetics. They didn't ignore aesthetics, but they did want to really recognize the public health role of that and including the air quality role of that. So we're happy to answer any others, but I did -- I'm going to turn it over to salvage to someone else. I'm more familiar with trees than salvage. Sorry.
Okay. Let me continue on with noise. I need to do a little more digging in the current plan, but I don't believe we changed any of the policy framework with regard to decibel limits or land use compatibility thresholds. All of that is the same. The mitigation measures had some changes between the draft and the final, in part because there was a change in how the state law looks at impacts of the environment on new development. So if you think about what an EIR does, it's looking at the impacts of a project on the environment. And over the years, SEQA practitioners like the city had started to consider the impacts of the environment on the project. So you have a quiet neighborhood, or you have a noisy neighborhood, and what would the impacts on the project be? There was a recent court decision that said we can't do that. So we had to make some changes in the final EIR to reflect that change in how the law is being interpreted. So I don't know if that specifically gets to the issue that you were raising, Councilmember Holman. It would take me a while to dig into the exact language that you cited. But we are confident that the noise policies in this plan have not changed from the current plan and that the mitigation measures are effective at addressing any new noise or vibration sources that would be, that could occur as a result of this plan's implementation.
Before you go, let me point, it's in the FEIR. In the FEIR, it's on page 3-16. And it is the, under mitigation noise 1-A, 1-B, 1-C, it is the seventh mitigation down. And what is struck out is update, updating for clarity the noise ordinance to make enforcement easier. And we had a chat about this one. And it's something that, even if it isn't a change, what we're doing here isn't a change from what the current comp plan is. I have had, I don't know how many neighbors contact me over the years and say they call code enforcement about a noise issue, you know, ongoing and 24-hour-a-day and especially nighttime noise. And what struck me about this language about to make enforcement easier is because the response that these people get, these neighbors get, is that the city staff respondents to these noise complaints say, "We have no way to measure the impact. We have no way to measure the noise." So I was really distressed at this language going out as a mitigation.
Well, Councilmember Holman--
And our noise ordinance has been recognized for a long time as being out of date, too.
A couple of things on that. First of all, the noise ordinance is enforced by the police department, not by our code enforcement staff. They do have a way to measure noise impacts. But they also have a lot of other things on their plate, including the safety and security of this community. So it could be that they just aren't able to prioritize every exceedance or complaint that they receive. Now, with regard to this mitigation measure, I think the changes you're seeing in this mitigation measure reflect the fact that we're trying to make this plan implement measures over time to ensure that the impacts will not occur. So the lead-in to that measure, noise 1A, talks about how we're going to include policies to achieve the following. And I think in eliminating that need to clarify the noise ordinance, that was kind of a to-do item. We didn't feel was necessary to update the policies in the plan. It's really this policy commitment that the city would be making in adoption of the plan. And we do have a program in the comp plan itself that says, "Update the noise ordinance as needed to provide for clear interpretation of the regulations, et cetera, et cetera." That's program number 6.3.3. So we didn't feel it rose to the level of a EIR mitigation, but it is a program in the plan. This is similar to the community concerns we showed in our presentation on airplane noise and de-watering, where it didn't rise to the level of mitigation, but it is a concern and it is included in the plan.
So just one clarification. Yes, I do know that police enforce noise violations. And as has been reported to me on a number of occasions by different people, police go out and say, "We have no way to measure."
Just moving on to some of your other concerns. Oh, salvage.
So the EIR mentions salvage and reuse in impact and mitigation measure util 15, which has to do with impacts to solid waste.
Page number, please.
Well, it's in several different places. You can see it in the summary table might be one place to look at it. It's on page 1-27 of the final EIR. And this is an impact and mitigation measure that's been, you know, in the draft EIR, in the supplemental EIR, and in the final EIR. So it's, of course, got different page numbers. And it shows up in the summary table, but it also shows up in the chapter itself. But that's one place that you can look at it. And so this is about reducing solid waste generation and encouraging salvage and reuse. So you can see the mitigation measure here. And these util 15, again, on page, for example, 1-27 and 1-28 of the final EIR. And those correspond to policies in the comp plan, including policy S-3.8 in the safety element, which talks about 95% landfill diversion, including through enhancing policies and programs for reuse. And policy S-3.9, which is to reduce solid waste generation through requiring salvage and reuse of building materials, including architecturally and historically significant materials.
And then, of course, as you've observed before, we have a related and consistent policy in the land use element to promote adaptive reuse of old buildings. That's a policy that's carried forward from your existing comp plan, and it's now policy L-7.8 on page L-42 of the comp plan.
My apologies on that one. I thought that had been taken out. That was my last reading of that. It's curious that under utilities, that the -- well, I'll just make this a brief comment. So I'm glad the word salvage is included somewhere. That has escaped my attention. The thing, the mitigation under util-15 on page I-27 talks about landfill diversion, those sorts of things that, from my experience and many years being on the couch and my frustration, has it just really never addresses adaptive reuse, salvage, or deconstruction. It's landfill diversion is if you can recycle it, it's diverted. And recycling is very, very different than salvage.
Thank you, Councilmember Holman. This might be an appropriate time for me to, again, reiterate what I think we brought forward in our original presentation on October 23rd to the council, which is really a thank you to all of the sitting council members. Because what you have in the draft plan is really a reflection of all of the input we've received from all of you over these many months. I know that we've received your comments on the salvage issue, and I know that they're reflected in the plan. So thank you for that, bringing forward that issue, and to your colleagues for the issues that are important to them. I think it's a little hard right now to track all of these things through the document. But again, with regard to your comments on the mitigation, we may have taken out some wording in a mediation measure related to compatibility. But the plan is shock a block with compatibility policies. When you look at the land use element under goal six, it's all about compatibility. And we can point out specific policies, if you like. In cultural resources, we've done what I think, and I think you recognize and contributed to, a very responsible job in taking this plan farther than the existing plan in terms of identifying potential historic resources so they can be fully evaluated before any decision is made about their demolition or substantial alteration. And I think that's quite a strong mitigation measure in the current document. With regard to your comments on transportation, that traffic comment and response you referred to, perhaps our response to the commenter was a little inartful. But we were trying to convey the complexity of a travel forecast model that looks at origins and destinations throughout the region and makes assumptions about what's happening in future conditions, about mode shares and where people are going, by which modes, to go, you know, to open up the hood in a model like that and cherry pick out one particular assumption or another is very, very difficult to do. We have spent a lot of time, energy, and money on the travel forecasting and traffic analysis that you see presented in these environmental documents. This council has had an opportunity to review those results multiple times. And so we're very confident in them. And I think through your review cycles, you've offered comments and seen them improve over time. Maybe we'll stop there. If there are any additional specific changes that the council is looking for in the mitigation measures or the policies that implement them, we'd be happy to contribute our thoughts to those suggestions.
So just one more comment on these things is, I guess, in the FEIR on 3-12. This is something I didn't mention, but it's mentioned in regard to something else, and I wish I could remember what. But it says in the first paragraph about midway on that page, it says, "The proposed plan would not directly result in the demolition of any structure, and it would be speculative to try to predict which listed historic structures may be proposed for demolition or substantial alteration as future developments occur," you know, under the proposed plan. So that same approach is used regarding to another impact that escapes me at the moment. So what it gets to for me is because we don't know what, you know, let's just say, we don't know that the University Art Building is going to be demolished, so we can't identify that as an impact. Yes, but it's also true that we don't know which trees are going to be, which specific trees are going to be removed. We don't know what specific development projects are going to be coming forward. And yet, we manage to analyze in a comprehensive way, in a holistic way, what the impacts are and put mitigations in place that for stall or eliminate that impact. So it's just an example of language that I don't find comforting. It's on packet page three, excuse me, it's on page 312, first paragraph on the FEIR.
Thank you, Councilmember Holman. Just a couple of things. I mean, first of all, the nature of a program EIR on a plan like this is that we can't possibly tell the future that someone might come in with a proposal to demolish any specific building. And so our obligation is to develop mitigation measures and policies that would protect the city from a real loss of significant resources. And we have that in the mitigation regime and in policy L-7.2 on page L-41 of the plan. This is the policy implements a mitigation measure that talks about if any project would substantially affect the exterior of a potential historic resource, that it needs to be evaluated for significance. And that would automatically trigger an EIR if a significant resource was proposed for demolition. And we'd be sitting right back here having this conversation with a lot more site-specific, resource-specific information. So, I mean, we feel like this program EIR has done exactly what it needs to do in terms of setting up a mitigation regime that will be protective of cultural resources in the future.
And I do understand that this is a program EIR, not a project EIR. I mean, project has project-specific. I do understand that. But it just seemed like there should be better mitigations for addressing those kind of broader impacts as opposed to saying, you know, we don't know which ones. So do you want to speak to any of the transportation mitigations?
Again, we did identify some transportation measures along the lines that you talked about that would encourage trip reductions and that would address traffic congestion and delays through trip reduction measures. We didn't identify the specific measure that you suggested, but we have TDM plans with, the mitigation requires TDM plans with quantitative thresholds. We talk about performance measures, monitoring, and enforcement. And it's about new development. We don't really have the ability to impose or -- it would be very difficult to impose mitigation on existing uses because there's not a discretionary decision upon which to base the application of conditions of approval or mitigation. We do have a program in the transportation section that says, "As part of the effort to reduce traffic congestion, regularly evaluate the city's current impact fee and modify as needed." You know, it goes on from there. And this is on page T-32 of the document. So we've looked at funding improvements of various different types as well as trip production measures of various types.
And I do understand that we can't mitigate existing buildings. My approach was to, through policy, to evaluate ways to evaluate, excuse me, to mitigate existing building impacts. So I look to see what my other colleagues have to say.
I see no other lights. So, there we go. Councilmember Tanaka.
Okay. I think these are quick. So overall, I think the comp plan looks pretty good. One comment on T-29, on bicycling and walking. So as the vice mayor mentioned, I started working on this comp plan back when I first started on the Planning Transportation Commission. So I'm kind of surprised to still see it now. But given that it might take a while for this, for the updated version of the comp plan next time to come around, I thought one thing we should think about is, you know, right now, I think bicycling is definitely a preferred mode in this policy. But there's been a lot of innovation recently in the area of personal transportation vehicles. So what I mean by that is not just bicycles, but skateboards, scooters. There's even one-wheels. There's a bunch of new type of lightweight transportation vehicles that are out there. And, you know, bicycles were invented in 1817, a long time ago. And, you know, recently, especially with the advent of lithium-ion batteries and brushless motors, there's been a lot more innovation in this area. So I'd like to make an amendment that, because I think what I intend here is not just promote bicycles, right? Because maybe in five years, bicycles will be, you know, there'll be other things besides bicycles that people will be using. So I'd like to say, basically, say, promote personal transportation vehicles, example, bicycles, skateboards, et cetera, use as an alternative way to get to school, to work, school, shopping, et cetera. So that's my proposal.
I'll second that.
And where would that go?
On T-29 on policy T-116. T-29 on this book.
Right, so.
You mean page T-29?
Yeah, T-29. Because I think really what this is trying to say is not-- Because I, I think that really what this is trying to say is not just bicycles. It's also saying rollerblades, or skateboards, or electric skateboards.
Councilmember Tanaka, would you mind repeating that motion, that amendment for me?
Sure.
Jessica, thank you.
Yeah. So, so on the policy T one sixteen, so, it says promote bicycle use. So, basically, what I like to say is promote personal transportation vehicles, example, EG bicycle, or skateboard, or rollerblades.
Got it.
Yeah.
But, well, she needs to.
What's your exact question?
Yeah, get, get the exact.
Yeah, okay. So, say, so you could do, okay, so promote personal transportation vehicles, open print, EG bicycle, skateboard, rollerblades. Yeah.
Why don't you say et cetera?
You can keep on going on. Yeah. EG does it, right? But, yeah.
Oh, you're right, EG does too. Okay, and you seconded that, Councilmember DuBois. Do you want to speak further to your motion?
Nope, Councilmember DuBois.
Yeah, if you could change Walback to DuBois there on the second. So, so I do think we need to be careful about amendments tonight. I hope this one's not controversial. I think, I think we would defer to staff about appropriate place for these things. But echoing Councilmember Tanaka, I think, I think there has been a lot of innovation, and these kinds, I think you're primarily talking about electric types of devices could, could help people travel much further without using the vehicular road.
Right, Burr, just curious.
Well, it says promote right now. So, it's just trying to say it's not just bicycles, it's other types of personal transportation vehicles.
Do you want to add, do you want to clarify as well, electric personal vehicles, or?
We could, sure. Yeah, it could be electric or non-electric, either way. But I think the main thing is that, I mean, just coming here, you see a whole bunch of ways people trans, you know, move in a eco-friendly way, so.
Okay.
So, sorry.
All right.
Okay. So, on T thirty-seven?
Oh, wait, we gotta deal with this first.
Oh, sorry.
We gotta finish this amendment. So, I, is anyone, I have lights for everything else now. So, anyone who wants to speak to this, just quickly. Nope, let's vote on, vote on the amendment. Oh, you want to speak to it? It's Mr. Walback.
Sorry to slow this one down. I, I guess I was just wondering if we want to say something like, you know, reduced traffic impact personal transportation vehicles, because isn't a car a personal transportation vehicle?
I'm fine, yeah.
Or, I mean, I, I'm not sure if.
You could say under fifty pounds. But, I mean, I, I wasn't trying to be over specific here, but basically.
Right, I'm not looking to be specific. What I'm doing, trying to do is, is have some clarity for people who are reading this in twenty thirty and saying, wait, what exactly qualifies when something new is invented and saying, oh, does this qualify or not? So, I'm, I'm looking to staff if they would be okay with something that said, like, promote personal transportation vehicles which reduce traffic and parking impact.
As an alternative to cars?
Why'd you say as an alternative to cars?
Right, just to show that you don't mean cars.
I'm, I'm, I'm fine with that. I, I mean, my main point is, I think it's more than just bicycles these days.
I agree. That, that's why I'm, I'm trying to provide some general clarity rather than specificity. Thanks.
Let's vote on the board.
Oh, forget it.
And that passes nine oh.
Okay, great. I have one, one other, which is on T thirty-seven. So, section, policy T dash three fifteen. And, you know, I've been hearing from a lot of different neighborhoods along the rail corridor about how to do the grade crossings. And, you know, one of the fears, I think, I've heard from a lot of, a lot of residents, and I think it's something which we should just try to address here, is eminent domain. So, if it turns out we're moving the roads and we have to take people's houses to take the roads, I think that's not, that's not necessarily a good thing. So, what I'd like to propose is that we pursue grade separation of rail crossings. So, basically, as it says now, and try to minimize eminent domain. That's it. So, it's basically minimize eminent domain at the end of the sentence.
Eminence, what's the word?
Eminent. Taking people's property to build ramps so that they could, if you have to move the road.
Minimize the number of houses.
Yeah, yeah, exactly. Because I, I've seen some, some figures from like forty to eighty houses. And, you know, I think in general, we want to try to be conscientious about the impacts this would have on folks. And I think, I hope this is not very controversial, because I don't think anyone here wants to take people's.
I think it will be controversial.
Okay. Well, I like to propose it anyways. But I, I just think that we should not be taking people's houses to provide the grade separation.
I'll second that.
All right, you want to speak to your motion?
Yeah, well, I think that, you know, grade separations are critically important, so I, I do support that. But I think how we do it is also important. I think that there's a pretty big fear among a lot of folks, especially as, you know, we're doing more outreach to the community about, well, what happens if this becomes a road project instead of a train project? That means we're moving the roads instead of the trains. If you move the roads, the, one implication of that is that you need ramps to get on, onto the roads and off to the roads, kind of like what happens at Page Mill or at the other grade crossings. And that has implications of potentially taking residential, residential property near these intersections. So, I think, I think the city should try to minimize that kind of impact on our residents. So, that's why I suggested this language.
Could I ask a question?
Go ahead.
I'm a little concerned about the word eminent domain, because I would be more comfortable if you spell out what you mean.
Okay.
You mean that you may try to minimize takings, the taking of houses?
Yeah.
Because it might be other property that they need to use.
Okay, okay, that's, I think Vice Mayor has a good, good suggestion. What language would you suggest?
I would simply say to minimize, I mean, the, the word usually is a taking, but it would minimize taking houses. That's just, or destroying, or.
Okay, so minimize.
Whatever, whatever other word it happens to.
Okay, well, say.
We could say minimize housing loss. That's a good, that's even better. All we mean to talk about is we don't want them to take houses. They may take some vacant land here and there, but houses is what, I think housing is what you're talking about.
Well, let's make it simple. Let's say property loss. I was just listening to fellow councilmember Fine. And then, I, I know, I'm trying to keep it simple.
That's all right. I, I'm not sure it's as clear as housing, but that's all right.
Councilmember Koo, you want to speak to your second?
Yes.
Let Councilmember Koo speak to her second. Let Councilmember Koo speak to her second.
I was thinking, in, in terms of changing the language, you know, it is what it is. It's eminent domain, so why not just say that? But I am okay with the change. I think property can apply to land too, if that's what you're trying to avoid. So, I would actually suggest residential property loss, if the maker will accept that.
I mean, mainly that's what I'm concerned about. So, I'm fine with that.
We don't want to take your house, right?
Yeah, well, so, just, just to clarify, so, I mean, these are cases where the words really do matter. So, technically, residential property loss could mean the project needed one foot of somebody's land and not touch their house, take their house. So, I mean, there is a difference between losing your home and some residential property loss. There's that, that one issue. There's this second issue of just, there's a whole bunch of criteria that the rail committee is working through on evaluating. And, and I, I just sort of say, I understand the intent of this, but this would be pulling out one of the criteria that are being looked at as how sort of funnels or sieves that we would process some choices. And this would be a departure from that sort of conversation that we're having right now to, to inject this here. I understand the intent of it, but it, it does have some bearing on the other processes that you do have. So, the two points. One, one I think you do, would want to clarify that it's, you know, it's a home or something more than just property.
So, have you spoken to your, your, have you spoken yet, Councilmember?
Not yet, but I was just.
Let Councilmember Koo speak.
Thank you. I was just going to say, I hope the word minimize, the loss might help out, but I can also see your point. The whole thing is, you know, property, housing, housing here in Palo Alto is already quite not affordable. And, you know, no matter how you compensate somebody for taking of their home, it's not going to be replaceable. So, I do have great concerns about, you know, long-term, the loss of, of somebody's home. But also, I think that moving forward on the cow train situation is that we want to look at very long-term strategic planning for and implementation for generations to come. So, I hope that we can certainly minimize this and the losses for people.
So, I actually wanted to speak to this briefly and then go to staff. So, we have a process at the rail committee, and this undermines that process. I don't think there's anyone on this council that thinks it's a good thing to take homes. I think we all oppose that. I don't think any of us support that. However, if we're going to do grade separations, that is something that may need to happen depending on which grade separation it is, depending on where we go. We're in early stages here, and we've been talking as a council about having a process where we go out to the community, we discuss these issues, we come up with a preferred scenario. We are looking at the trench scenario at the moment. In fact, we're doing a trenching study. And, you know, all of those things may or may not be feasible. And as we go through this process to put this in the comprehensive plan, it either means nothing, at which case, we can feel good about it and just vote for it. But if it actually means anything, then we have a problem. And so, therefore, I don't think we should put this in here. I think it is, you know, going against what we have now of a council have been saying for the last couple of years about the right process on these grade separations. And, you know, at, without much thought and discussion by the rail committee, I think we just go ahead and throw this in. I think that undermines the entire process in terms of getting grade separations. I know staff wanted to make some comments on this as well. I've watched them jump out of their seat.
You have some language if your council's interested in this.
Oh, okay. Councilmember DuBois.
Yeah, a slightly different take, but similar comments, I guess, about from the rail committee perspective. I think, again, we've defined criteria to evaluate. One of the criteria is minimizing eminent domain. It's one that I weigh quite highly. And I, I think Councilmember Mayor Scharf said is, nobody wants to do it. My main consideration is, you know, is this something that really belongs in the comp plan itself? And you could argue that it does. I feel like it's at the rail committee in our criteria for judging projects. That seems to be the right place.
Councilmember Phil Seth.
Well, I was pretty much going where the last two speakers went.
Councilmember Fine.
Thank you, Mayor. So, yeah, as Councilmember DuBois mentioned, one of our priorities is to minimize the use of eminent domain. I'm not sure this belongs in the comprehensive plan. I'd also add, we have a responsibility to our businesses as well, and some businesses may be impacted by eminent domain of this use. So, I think it's important to consider both of those. So, I won't be supporting this.
Councilmember Walback.
Given that I think I've heard every member of the rail committee say that they are not supportive of this, because they feel it undermines the process that's happening at the rail committee, but that they're all sympathetic to the language and they think it's an important priority, and it is already one of their considerations there, I will be joining them in not supporting this amendment. And I just wanted to ask if the maker might want to withdraw it, just because it's not going to pass.
We want to get Councilmember Koo to address.
Okay, let's vote on the board. And that fails on a six to three vote with Koo, Tanaka, and Miss voting yes. All right. Councilmember Tanaka, are you?
I'm done.
You're done. So, Councilmember DuBois, you haven't spoken to the main.
So, it's been a long night. Yeah, this is a compromised document. It's great that we're near completion. I thought we started off strong. Appreciate Councilmember Walback's comments about going for kind of non-controversial tweaks. And I don't think we're going for perfect, but I do think we made some improvements tonight. I actually wanted to split my comments into two sections. Last meeting, we said we have an opportunity to talk about the community indicators, and nobody's really spoken to those yet. So, I'd like to do that first and make a motion on that.
Go for it.
And then come back and talk about mitigations. So, again, not to take too long, but, you know, I think the reason community indicators were such a big discussion at CAC is, you know, we're seeing, we're seeing impacts, we're showing up in the National Citizen Survey. Palo Alto is a place to raise children, dropped eight percent. Quality of life dropped eight percent. And even, you know, we've talked about the office caps. We used to average about thirty-eight thousand square feet of commercial office a year. And starting in two thousand eight, that jumped up to over a hundred thousand per year on average. And we've weakened those restrictions. You know, I think the caps we have left are going to have minimal effect. We had it a rollover. I think we turned hard caps into speed bumps. And so, to kind of compensate for that, I think having some key performance indicators, some community metrics makes sense. Appreciate that you guys supported adding those back in in the last meeting. I think when it came to us, there was broad consensus on the CAC. All three staff options had community indicators in them. And so, if you look at packet page two twenty-four, where they list the full list, I think there are a few specific ones that would make sense to add. Specifically, the percentage of commute trips to employment centers by single occupancy vehicles.
Is the multiple to page two twenty-four?
Yeah, I believe so. Commercial parking overflow into neighborhoods.
What's the second one?
Yep. Yeah, I guess I'll pull it up. On two twenty-six, unoccupied homes.
At the top.
Park acreage per capita and the urban tree canopy. And, and the reason I picked those five is that none of those are reported on currently. I think they're, they're key metrics to give us a measure of how we're doing and how the impacts of the comp plan. You know, percent trips to unemployment centers, the TMA is reporting on some of that. You know, there are some issues, I think, with their baseline and the way they're reporting for the small part of the city they're tracking. There is something in here about measuring the distance to parks, but that doesn't really tell us how many people those parks are servicing. So, that's my pitch for those five. And I'll make a motion that just summarizes that, that we, that we add those community indicators to the existing change.
Could you just say which ones they got? Park average per capita, commercial district parking overflow.
Yeah, they're on the, on the board there.
Oh, they're on the board already, okay. Okay, you want to speak to your motion?
I think I just did.
Okay, Councilmember Holman?
Yeah, I think these are really important ones and important ones to the community based on the kind of feedback we get on, we get on the community, including as Councilmember DuBois mentioned, in our citizen survey. There was one that I wondered if you would be interested in adding, which is, it could be one of two different things. It could either be affordability of housing stock or economic diversity, either one of those. Would you be interested in adding one of, one of the two of those? And they're on page two twenty-five.
Yes, what I tried to do was look at, those are, are being reported on, just as part of the housing element. So, I, I was preferring to add ones that we're not getting reports on.
Yeah. Would you want to step up how often they're reported on? Or maybe it's a question for Hillary, because they're only reported on every eight years.
I, I guess what I'd add is, you know, we had understood the council's direction at the last meeting was to find indicators that we did have data and we could report on without a lot of extra effort. And some of these really would take a significant effort. The SOV trips, you know, we have the TMA downtown and Stanford Research Park does a survey, but we would have to pay for a statistically valid survey of other employment centers on a regular basis to generate that. The parking overflow is another one where we, we would have significant costs to employ. The parking overflow is another one where we, we would have significant costs to employ, um, that data collection effort. Unoccupied homes, I don't even know how we would, would do that. Uh, in park acreage per capita, we've suggested in lieu of that, uh, the percent of residents who live within one-half mile of a city park. So it gets to, um, accessibility to the parks. And, um, this is really a measure, we had a long conversation with our colleagues in community services about this issue. They really think that that is a blunt instrument, and this kind of percent accessible to neighborhood parks is far more, um, appropriate in terms of assessing, uh, really how, how people, how many people can access easily our neighborhood park system. It's something they're gonna, they're gonna want to measure on an ongoing basis.
So just to clarify, so, um, commercial district overflow into neighborhoods, um, you took that as beyond RPP districts?
Uh, well, I mean, we currently collect data on downtown, now Evergreen, Southgate, Mayfield, but there are, um, commercial districts along other sections of El Camino and in other parts of the city that we would have to survey with similar effort and cost.
I mean, I think that one's important. I could see removing unoccupied homes if there's no easy way to do that. I do think park acreage per capita is really getting to intensity of use of a park, how many people, not just if everybody's close to the same park, that, that measure doesn't really tell you anything.
Uh, I'm, I'm regretting that I didn't bring the map that they've prepared that is really evocative. Uh, it shows, um, concentric circles around neighborhood parks, uh, with people who are within a quarter mile, walking distance and a half mile.
The point is, those density increases, you're adding more and more people to that park.
Yeah, and then there are spaces where they're not within a half mile, and that's, those are areas where you wouldn't want to increase population. Uh, you can't see it, but it's a beautiful map.
I think, I think I've seen it before. Again, I, it seems like a very different measure to me, right? This question is really, do you have enough parks for how many people you have versus...
You have, have access to neighborhood parks.
Yeah. And what about the last urban tree canopy coverage?
You know, um, our colleagues in Public Works have indicated that they can do this. Every time there's a new GIS layer, they can, you know, have it calculate the urban tree, they can estimate the canopy. So I think we could do that. I don't know whether that would be, maybe it's every four years. I, I, we didn't ask them.
I think it would be every four years, because it is extra work. I mean, it's not just a straight-up number.
Yeah, so we could, we could do that every four years.
Okay. Uh, Councilmember Holman, are you okay deleting the unoccupied homes?
Yes, actually, that was something I was going to ask for, because while I do want to have something happen to, uh, monitor those or limit them, I don't think it belongs in this, um, in the, um, in the metrics. The urban tree canopy, yes, Public Works does do that, and also, I know the organization Canopy also, uh, also does that and monitors it. So I'm supportive of the others.
Okay, I'll make a substitute motion that we go with a staff recommendation, which was to add the three that staff came up with, which is traffic volumes on city streets, availability of parks, and PAUSD school enrollments. I know staff put a lot of time into thinking about this, and I believe our direction from council was, you know, we want to have a limited number. We decided on eight, um, and that we wanted staff to use ones that weren't going to burden staff with too much extra work. And I think staff did a good job coming up with this stuff.
All seconded, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Yeah, so this is the places memo, um, where staff came up with a three. I actually think staff's right about the availability of parks. I think it's a much better metric. Um, I think that's what you want to look at. Um, who live within half a city mark, we want to make sure everyone lives within a half mile of a city park, I think. Um, yeah, so I, I think that's, um, I think that's what we should do. Councilmember Fine.
Thank you. Um, so, right, when we last dealt with this, we did ask staff to come back and kind of bubble up what they thought were the three major ones that we were missing. Um, I thought these kind of hit the nail on the head. Um, you know, one problem with metrics is when you begin measuring everything, you essentially diffuse your effort over everything. So I think it is important for us to stay focused. Uh, what I did like about these metrics is they're high level, they're quick indicators, uh, but they're not so specific that they will be able to push a policy or a building decision or something else one way or another. Um, and I actually think that's really important if we're looking at community indicators, because if we are going to use them as essentially policy tools, I want to include stuff such as air pollution levels, such as economic diversity. And so we can get into that discussion if we really want, um, but I think staff has done a good job of generalizing some measures, which will allow us to see how some of the policies in the comp plan are or are not working.
Okay. Councilmember Phil Seth.
Yeah, well, I think, uh, I think you've, uh, I was going to ask about, uh, actually traffic, traffic volumes and congestion, which, you know, because I think people really care about that stuff. And we had a discussion about VNT and so forth, which is good from a regional environmental perspective, but I think what people care about is traffic. And so I'm glad to see that here. School enrollments is already calculated by the school district every, every September, right? So is, is, are we adding a lot of value doing it by the city here? Or could we add something else, uh, that, that made sense?
Uh, I guess you're right. Someone is collecting this data on an annual basis. I, I guess I thought the council's direction was to report on things that had some bearing to the land use policies, uh, in the plan, and whether we think, um, they're working in the way we anticipated or not. We, we could certainly substitute something else there, but...
Well, just added, do you think that adds a lot more? I was asking for advice. Do you think it adds value to do this like this?
Yeah, I, I think we thought it, it, it did add some value here.
All right. Councilmember Walback. Councilmember Koo.
I was actually going to speak to something else.
Okay, that's fine. I'm just trying to make sure. Councilmember DuBois, did you want to speak to?
Yeah, just to speak to the substitute motion. So, so again, having metrics that don't let us make decisions doesn't seem very useful. And the traffic volume measure here is at 10 intersections for the city. And, you know, modern technology, um, we should be able, in the life of this comp plan, to be able to measure traffic throughout the city. I mean, companies are doing it today, um, with smartphone data. So I just felt like, um, we could do a lot better. Like these, these indicators, we're going to get a report every two years on 10 intersections. We, a huge part of our mitigations are based on TDM, and we don't want to report on the percentage of commute trips with single occupancy vehicles. Just doesn't seem to make sense. So, um, I really would urge you guys, I, I was hoping this wouldn't be that controversial, open to amendments to the original motion, but I think we should be looking at, um, data that we can use to really track some of the key parts of the comp plan and the mitigations in the comp plan. And I, I would agree again, I'm not sure what value we add in re-reporting the PAUSD school enrollments and the school district reports already.
So I guess I wanted to just go back to the percentage of commute trips to employment centers by single occupancy vehicle. We do downtown currently, right? Um, I, you know, Tom, my concern with this really, and I'll give it to you, is that right now, and I think this is one of the weaknesses of the comp plan in some ways, I just thought it would be too controversial to reopen it, is that downtown is not an employment center. So, you know, I guess we currently do downtown. So where are we, right now, our employment centers are...
Research, Percolator Research, our hospital area, East Bay Shore.
So how much work would it be for staff to do this? I mean, this seemed like a lot of work to me, but I, I, I'm open to revisiting that one if...
Uh, yep, we would have to hire a, a survey firm like the TMA does, uh, when they do their downtown firm, to do a statistically valid...
Any sense what it would cost to do, I mean, it, what it costs to do downtown? Do we know?
You know, that, that number was in my budget for several years, and I, for the life of me, I can't remember.
Um, you know, I think, I think this is my concern about putting this stuff in the comp plan, is it adds, it embeds these costs forever, and I mean, it, and it's really hard to take stuff out once it's in the comp plan like that. That's really my concern. I, and you know, we might, there might be years when we need this data, we want staff to get it. Um, we're getting downtown, we may want to do the research park, um, in a separate, you know, to staff. I, I might support that for a while, but the TMA, so I'm just saying, that's really my concern with that. I actually disagree with you on the park acreage per capita, um, and the commercial district parking overflow. I heard that it would be difficult for staff to, to get that data outside of what we're doing in the, um, in the neighborhoods, which we already get. And that, that is really why I, I felt it was important to, and staff suggested these, I, I think the PAUSD school enrollments. I think it's helpful to continue to point that out, given the community sensitivity, and that, you know, half the time someone comes up here and is talking about how we're going to impact the schools negatively. I think having that data handy and quickly available is useful, and that's why I went with it.
I guess one thing we could ask is, again, I don't think Stanford necessarily, they do a count, uh, a couple of times a year. That's another way to do it. I mean, when the TMA presented their data, they, they actually, again, if you looked at their data, they actually had fewer SOVs this year than last year, when you account for growth. So, yeah, I think we need good data to be able to make decisions on these TDMs. I think it's worth it. But I'm not, I'm not sure if we could have more creative ways to get that data. I mean, do you know what, like, Stanford's...
Stanford does the exact same thing. They take a survey of the commuters in their research park around, uh, April or May. There's some, like, sort of standard industry practice where there's a spring month where everybody does their surveys. So everyone does it the exact same way.
Mr. Mayor.
If I just might have, uh, a comment that could help in this regard, because I do appreciate the relationship of this last measure as it relates to, say, growth management and that sort of thing. But, you know, separate from the comp plan itself, which I prefer to call the general plan for reasons I'll get into later, um, we have a, another whole initiative that we've been talking about at finance and elsewhere, about how we review all of our performance indicators, what we do as it relates to National Citizen Survey, what we have in our budget. And we really have the need for, in our view, a comprehensive review of all of the factors that both deal with livability and how we perform as a city. And I would think that revisiting a lot of these in the context of that will be something that we need to do, and it would be an important kind of conversation for us to be able to look at what things we could add, without it necessarily having to be part of the comp plan itself, but they would be meaningful, uh, indicators or measures for us as a city. So I'm, I'm not, not, not committing to, what, yes, we would do this one or that one, but I think we've made it very clear that we have a kind of hodgepodge ad hoc collection of performance and quality of life indicators that we use, that we have committed to as a staff, I have, to working with our staff team across departments. Because even when planning says, well, what can we do? It actually impacts more functions than just one staff department for us to know how effectively we could collect data on a routine basis. So I would just offer that out, that there is a, there's, there are other bites at this apple that we're going to pursue in other initiatives.
Thanks. Councilmember Holman.
Yes, um, I did, I did second this motion, and I have absolutely, or amend, amendment. And I do agree with Councilmember DuBois about measuring ten representative local intersections is not, is not very helpful. So there's something we don't hear very much about, and that's our business registry. And if our business registry was a little robust, uh, it seems like, um, that we could use the business registry to, and yes, it would have to be analyzed, but it seems like we could use that as the data collection point for, um, you know, determining how many trips are by single occupancy vehicles. We, the, one of the questions is, I do believe, uh, where do you live? How do you get to work? You know, so, I say, we don't talk about our business registry much, but I think we are missing something by not utilizing it and making best use of it. So I would still support the, um, original amendment and suggest that we could use the business registry, um, to, um, help identify the percent of commute trips to employment centers. I'm a little confused, too, because I thought just a couple or three weeks ago that, that, um, that our mayor said that downtown was an employment center in regard to something else. So I'm a little, I'm a little confused.
Are you looking at me?
I thought, I, I just, coming, like, you said that in downtown's not an employment center, but I thought just a few weeks ago you said it was, so...
Oh, you just said it is an employment. I thought, I thought in our comprehensive plan, it's not an employment center, and that's why we had all the confusion over the software stuff, and that's why it's software ended up in Town and Country and all that. I was going to try and fix that in the comp plan, but it just seemed too difficult at this stage.
No, I was just saying that I thought you had, had said, I thought you had said that downtown was an employment center.
Well, it clearly is an employment center, it's just not called out as one in our comp plan, and it should be.
Not designated as one, is, yeah, that's what you're saying.
Right, but it should be. I mean, maybe I should say that. I, I just hadn't thought through, no, anyway, we'll get there. Maybe I'll make that motion to designate it as an employment center. Um, all right. Councilmember DuBois, are you spoken, everyone, has everyone spoken to the, to the, Councilmember Walback?
As Councilmember DuBois pointed out, we started this evening, uh, in this round, in this section of this evening, really trying to focus on things that were consensus items, something I emphasized in my comments, you know, at the start of this conversation a couple hours ago. Obviously, that we've had a couple of things that have not been consensus votes. Uh, I was really hoping that this is one where we could get there. You know, it was, it was pretty controversial when we, uh, reduced the number of community indicators several months ago. I, I think there is broad recognition that we wanted to return some of those. Uh, we saw that a couple of weeks ago, uh, broad recognition on the council that we really do want some of those community indicators in this comprehensive plan, that they're important, it's, it's important to have those, uh, those metrics. Uh, and so we, I think, pretty enthusiastically, uh, re-added those that we did add two weeks ago. Uh, and we were interested in taking a look at which other ones had, you know, had been considered previously, uh, even if they hadn't been as broadly supported, uh, and also interested which ones of those staff was most interested in. These two amendments, I, I'm actually not really excited about either of them. I think that some of the stuff in the original amendment here, but DuBois and Holman, is redundant of stuff that we're already collecting, or is not focused where I would put the focus. Uh, and the substitute amendment, I mean, Palate Unified School District, uh, school enrollments. On one hand, that is supportive of the amendment that I added earlier, um, about working with Palate Unified, you know, that we all supported, uh, to identify school sites, and, you know, knowing what the enrollment is might help inform that. But I really think that's the job of the school district to say, you know, here's what's happening with our enrollment, for them to come to us and say, here's what's happening with our enrollment, and where are you guys planning on doing growth? Okay, like, if you're planning on growth here, here's what's expected to be a, a need for school sites. I don't know why we need to do school district enrollment surveys for Palate Unified School District, which includes Stanford, which is outside of our control, which includes Las Altas, chunk of Las Altas Hills, which is outside of our control. I just have a...
I don't think we're doing, I don't think we're doing the service. I thought we'd just get the information from them.
Oh, we would just get it from them?
I thought they'd just give it to us.
Oh, okay, well, that's, I'm sorry, thank you for clarifying. Maybe we're getting late. I, I think it's...
Eric and I can tell you what it is right now.
I, I think it's, right, and I, I think it's fine to, again, in the interest of collaboration, I'll, I'm okay with leaving with that one then. Um, no, that was, that was in the staff recommendation, so I, now, thank you for clarifying that. What I'm, again, trying to avoid is creating unnecessary staff work, and I think us doing the work of Palate Unified would be unnecessary staff work. So if they're doing it and they're sharing it with us and we're making sure to get it from them, great. Uh, on availability of parks, I actually think that Councilmember DuBois was right, that these are two different metrics that are being talked about. I think they each have some value, uh, but I do lean towards the importance of people being able to walk to one. I mean, I'd frankly, I think most people would agree, I'd rather share a park with a neighbor than not be able to get to a park. Right? And so if, you know, in, in picking between those two different metrics, uh, being able to get to a park, I think is more important than how many people I might have to share it with. Uh, I'm not saying that they're not both important, just saying that being able to get to one is more important. Uh, and that's what the substitute motion does here. Traffic volumes on city streets, uh, some people are worried that 10 isn't enough. I think it's just more emphasis on level of service, and I, I thought we were trying to move away from that. Uh, so I'm, I'm not enthusiastic about it. I, I think I'm reluctantly going to support the substitute motion, but I'm not excited about it. I, I don't, I don't think it's, I don't think it makes that big a difference.
All right.
So, I wanted to continue. That was meant to be a quick motion.
Yeah, any more quick motions, we'll be at midnight.
Yes, yes, that's right. Twenty-six parter coming up, no, just kidding. So I wanted to speak to the mitigations, and so, yeah, I'm not happy that we're planning for severe impacts that are not mitigatable. I do think Stanford GUP, three and a half million square feet in total, surrounded by Palo Alto, should be called out. It's an extremely large project, it's not just any project. You know, the final EIR forecasts 1,000 housing units and 460 jobs at Stanford by 2030. The GUP far exceeds both of those, plus I think we previously had a housing request for about 1,000 units, if I remember right, from Stanford. So that's a big concern. And the other ones are really the transportation impacts. The mitigations really rely on kind of future SOV trip reduction. Not something we've seen work yet. And I just think we could do more in terms of mitigations. You know, I agree with Councilmember Holman's comments that one mitigation that I really think we should consider has to tie density of commercial buildings to traffic impacts. And I think that should be included. And, you know, so overall, I think we're being asked, do the benefits outweigh the It's not clear that they do, and we have some very large unavoidable impacts. Most of them are covered by Councilmember Holman. My other, the other areas that weren't really mentioned yet, the response to sea level rise didn't seem sufficient. I don't think we analyzed upping the hotel FAR to 3.0 and 2.5. You know, and so, you know, I'm struggling with the unavoidable impacts, and they really like to see us do more. And as I stated before, I'd really think the public found the multi-scenario process confusing. I think it was difficult for council and the CAC, but I think it was really difficult for the general public.
All right, I have Northern Light speaking to the main motion. Oh, Councilmember Koo? And I think Councilmember Fine.
So I just had a couple of small changes I wanted to request. So let me see here. One of them is, I'd like to make a motion for comp plan page T40, policy T5 dot 1, that it reads, "All new development projects should meet parking demand generated by the project," instead of the word manage. At CAC, when we were going through the transportation, it was recommended to go with meet. And my understanding was at CAC that that, that it was a mistake when you put in manage instead of meet, and it would be changed. So I see that it's still going forth in the comp plan on this draft as manage, and I would really like to see that it's meet.
Okay, is there a second to that? Do we know if it's T40? T40? Okay, Councilmember Koo, would you like to speak to your motion?
I just spoke. I mean, if we're going to meet parking demands and TDMs and all that, we should really meet it.
Councilmember Koo, or not Koo, Councilmember Holman, speak to your second.
I was seating the Councilmember Phyllisith Given, I seconded a couple others.
Go ahead.
Just briefly, so, yeah, I think that sort of got, I'm not sure exactly how it got changed. I think manage is kind of vague, as Ben pointed out. There's been a bunch of discussion about, you know, where should parking be? Does it need to be onsite, or can it be, you know, around the corner in the garage, if you've made a deal like that, and so forth? I don't think the word meet specifically necessitates it be onsite, okay, which I know is a sticking point for folks. I think it's, I think it leaves latitude for, you know, other kinds of strategies as well.
Councilmember Fine?
So I actually remember when we changed this, because I made the motion to change it from manage to meet, and we did make that change. The reason why is.
So you already voted on this once.
We've already voted on this, yes.
All right.
Look, I'll just explain myself again. You know, going forward, all of us are interested in reducing traffic impacts. Building parking garages and, you know, building parking is not the way to manage those traffic impacts. We need to still build some parking for new buildings and new housing projects, but we also need to look at ways where we can encourage, you know, folks to take other methods, whether it's biking, walking, electric skateboards, the train. And meeting parking demand time after time just means we're going to build a lot of parking. Furthermore, with really the shift that is happening right here in Silicon Valley around things like self-driving cars and self-driving trucking, I really believe, and a lot of the leading indicating research shows, that parking garages are going to be a white elephant in 10 or 15 years. So I think it's important to manage parking demand. That may mean a combination of building some of it, of doing trip reduction strategies, of providing incentives for workers to take transit. But I don't believe going forward, our best strategy in terms of addressing parking and traffic impacts is just to build more parking. It's just concrete.
Councilmember Walbuck, you wanted to speak to this?
Yeah, so I guess I wasn't clear about the last speaker's sense about this motion. Oh, I'm voting against this.
He made the original motion.
Motion to change it. Months ago. From meet to manage or from manage to meet? I made the change from meet to manage. Oh, I think you misspoke earlier, and, sorry. Or I might have misheard you, so you. I'm not going to be supporting the amendment. I think that the, I think that the only way I would support this amendment is if it was amended to say office development, all new office development projects should meet parking demand. Would the maker and seconder be comfortable with that amendment?
So Councilmember Walbuck, I mean, I've already voted on this once before, are you thinking of changing and opening these things up? You've been talking all night about not doing that.
I'm.
Now you're going the other way?
Also looking for consensus and.
You're not going to get consensus.
It does all look like it's supported, anyway.
All right, let's vote on the motion. And that fails on a five to four vote. You misvoted, Councilmember. Oh, you got caught, okay. Okay, Councilmember who, let's see, Councilmember Koo, you're still at the floor.
Then there's also comp plan page L40, policy 6.7. At this point, it reads, "Where possible, avoid abrupt changes." I'd like to take out, eliminate where possible and just go with avoid abrupt changes in scale and density between residential and non-residential areas.
Okay, where are you?
Comp plan, page L40, policy 6.7. I'll second that.
Policy what? Sorry.
6.7.
6.7, okay. And what did you want to change?
To eliminate where possible.
We already voted on this, too, I believe, didn't we? Does anyone remember? We already voted on this once before.
Haven't we voted on almost everything?
I would ask that you, I mean, I'm going to let you do it if you want, but I mean, we already took one vote on this before. I don't really want us to take votes on stuff we already voted on.
Well, I'd like to take a vote, record.
Okay.
Thank you for the opportunity.
So the next time, I'm not going to allow it. But, okay, go ahead. You made it, you need a second.
I seconded.
Okay, you want to speak to it?
If we're going to really protect neighborhoods and not let commerce at the expense of protecting neighborhoods, then I think that this would be one way of doing so and not impact them.
Councilmember Holman?
Yeah, I think the, there are occasions where I think adding wording like where possible really dilutes good land use planning principles, and I think this is one of those occasions. It is good land use practice. It is good land use practice and good principle to avoid abrupt changes in scale and density between residential and non-residential uses. It's also why we don't do this very much anymore, but, because I think it's a little bit lost, lost on us, but we used to do transition zoning, too, which hasn't come up in quite some time, but we used to respect it so much that we did that as well. So I support this and think it, again, it just supports good policy.
Vice Mayor Niss?
I think leaving the where possible in is just the discussion we had before, precisely, because we frequently have this discussion about where possible, avoid abrupt changes in scale and density. But if we drive down University Avenue, which I have to do today, the, if we had avoided all abrupt changes, you would have a totally different look on University Avenue. It goes from one to two to five to six, and I think there are simply times when abrupt changes are going to happen, and where possible, yes, but it doesn't seem to me as though you could actually put that in the comp plan and have it stick.
Well, I'm really glad Councilmember Koo raised this, because now that I've looked at this, we never voted on the mid-block. I'll make an amendment to this that we just delete to promote, that we keep the original language and we delete to promote compatibility and gradual transitions between land use, place zoning, district boundaries at mid-block locations rather than along wherever feasible. I want to keep the whereas, the original language, and get rid of that.
Can we see the whole thing?
Sure.
Because I think mid-block transitions are stupid.
Is it in this?
Yeah, we discussed this before.
We did.
It doesn't say anything about mid-block.
In either land one or land two.
Mayor Sharpe, this is Jessica, would you remind her of repeating that one more time for me? Please.
It would just read, "Where possible, avoid abrupt changes in scale and density between residential and non-residential areas and between residential areas of different densities." And, Mr. Mayor, I believe you're just striking the second sentence.
That's correct.
Yep. If you'd like to speak, and then.
Yeah, I would speak to it, that I think the whereas part is really good. I think mid-block transitions are silly, that I think that, is, that's it, would that change any mitigations in the IR?
We just confirm that's not in the mitigations.
Okay, I want to make sure, because obviously I don't want to do anything that changes that. Yeah, I think that when you do these transitions, I don't think there's any necessity to do a mid-block transition. I think that screws up developments and makes them less aesthetic, and it's not a good approach.
Can I speak?
Yes.
So, thank you, Mr. Mayor, for making this. You know, earlier I'd actually spoken to the planning director about striking this entire policy, because I don't think it's based on good land use policy and principles. You know, there are some places in Palo Alto and other cities where abrupt changes in scale and density are actually quite delightful.
In downtown.
In downtown. I walked through Ramona Plaza today, and there's actually quite a big difference between, as you come in and you come out on different sides, and I think that's kind of fun in our city. Additionally, placing land use transitions in mid-block does not necessarily get us the outcomes we want. As the mayor mentioned, that may impact individual development projects in a way that is not predictable. And furthermore, sometimes, as the vice mayor mentioned, it is actually quite interesting to have a change downtown from one stories to three, or from three to one, or two to two, whatever it may be. There's nothing special about the mid-block, sometimes you get some fun when you have one side of the street with one story and across the road with four stories. I don't think it's promoting good land use policy in our city, nor does it contribute to any specific aesthetic benefit.
Okay. So, Councilmember Niss, did you want to speak to this? No, you have your lights on for the previous thing. I'm just going to clear the lights, just because, so, Councilmember Walbuck, you want to speak? Go ahead.
So much for finding consensus on everything. A couple of things here. I know some people think that the mid-block transition is the better land use policy. And, look, I'm not an urban planning expert, I didn't study it. I think one person on this council did, as a major in college, actually has a degree in it, rather than grad school. But I'm not convinced that it's always the best thing. I mean, if I was, you know, just, I'd ask people to envision, you know, if you were going to have a transition, would you rather be next door to you or across the street from you? Frankly, I'd rather be across the street rather than right next door. And having it be mid-block suggests it would be next door. Different people will have differences of opinion. I'd be okay with the removal of that second sentence. I am concerned, and if staff could just help clarify here, it does say right there in the comp plan that this does relate to an EIR mitigation measure. Was that relating to the first sentence of this program, not the second?
Yes, that's correct, although we have found a location in the resolution in Attachment C where we'd have to take out the same language about mid-block locations, because it's not in the mitigation, but it's in the finding about the mitigation. So if this passes, we would just ask that you take out the conforming language in the...
So what language do I need to say, and we conform to the, in the mitigations, is what language, like?
It would just take out that same phrase on packet page 266, the rationale for the finding related to mitigation measure land one. So land one doesn't include that phrase about mid-block, but it's carried forward in the finding.
So what language would you like in the amendment to accomplish that?
And make conforming changes to the findings regarding mitigation measure land one.
Okay, and make conforming. I'll let you work with Hillary to get it right.
Anyway, to finish my comments, I'm not going to support the original amendment, and I'm open to persuasion on the amendment to the amendment, but I'm a little, same thing, I am a little uncomfortable with the amendment to the amendment, and I'm very uncomfortable with the original amendment. So I'm inclined to vote against both, but I'm open to persuasion from the, from Mayor Sharpe for Councilmember Fine.
Councilmember Holman?
Yeah, I think there's a little confusion, maybe a misunderstanding about what the language that's been proposed to be struck means for some. It doesn't mean a transition next door. We're talking about, we're doing it mid-block, meaning at the back property lines and not at the street. So what zoning does, in a perfect world, is, and ideally, and it is based on principles, what zoning does is it creates environments. And what you strive for is to have, you know, buildings that are developed... buildings that are, can develop, buildings that are somewhat at least compatible with each other, across the street from each other. And in order to accomplish that, a basic planning principle is you change the zoning mid-block, meaning at the back of the parcels and not at the street. And so eliminating this changes that, which is a basic planning principle. We talked about this, or at least I referenced it not long ago, in reference to something else. It's, I don't think the community is wanting to see one-story buildings or two-story buildings across from, you know, four or five-story buildings. That's not where you make the change. It's not a comfortable environment that's being created. So, I just, I disagree that this is, well, I'll just say it this way. Keeping this in promotes good land use planning and supports zoning principles that are pretty basic. And by the way, it's exactly what we did in the SOFA Plan, which is so highly tatted, it's exactly what we did there.
Councilmember Phil Seth?
Well, I think I'm actually with Councilmember Wolback on this one. And it's, I'd probably vote against both of them. I think it's too late, too late at night and the wrong, wrong venue to sort of argue about whether boundaries should be in mid-block or on streets or not. And the language in the, and on the original, and the, the language in the, the comp plan is identical to the language in the original comp plan, and that's good, good enough for me. So, I'd probably vote against both of them.
Okay. Listening to Councilmember Phil Seth, I'm gonna withdraw my amendment. Okay? Hopefully we don't have any more votes on, on things that we've already voted on. I would ask Councilmember Koo to withdraw her amendment as well.
I'll withdraw it.
Okay, great. All right. Do you have anything else, Councilmember Koo?
No, that was all.
All right, thank you. All right, you know, I'm trying to figure out who hasn't spoken yet, so if you haven't spoken to this, put on your light. Councilmember Niss? Vice Mayor Niss?
I've spoken to it. It was a very long time ago. And, and I have very little to say now, except one, one amendment that may seem somewhat frivolous in asking for it, but I have found that every time I go through this, unless I have an acronym made up, I don't know what page I'm looking at. So, I've gotta flip through this until I find S or I or L or something. Can we page this? Was there some reason we didn't? Just to make us really learn what was the following?
Yeah, I'm sorry, it was just too many moving parts, but when we produce the final document, we can pageinate it.
Okay, so, I don't really think I need to make that an amendment. I, I have a feeling most of the council would, would support the pages being, being numbered. It's just hard to find it otherwise. And I realize, you know, you go through this and you're putting an attachment number and a page number and so forth, and it's a pain, but it's really hard for us to find it otherwise, especially when someone starts referencing it and we can't locate it quickly. So, that would be not an amendment, not even a motion, but a suggestion that, that, that the pages be... I think there's actually a word like "pageinate." Thanks. It's the end.
Okay, I believe the only people that haven't spoken to this are Phil Seth and Fine. So, Phil Seth? Okay, Fine? To the main motion?
All right, thank you very much. One or two questions for staff and then a quick, two motions, I think. So, one, on policy S 2.9, and sorry, Liz, to give you a page reference, but it's page S 21. So, policy S 2.9 is prohibit new habitable basements in the development of single-family residential properties within the 100-year flood zones. Do we currently have any prohibitions on the books about habitable basements within the flood zone? What are those restrictions?
I, I believe this policy is consistent with our existing restrictions.
So, they're currently prohibited and we've got a policy to prohibit them?
I believe that's true, and, you know, I think there's a way that people can elevate their parcel out of the 100-year flood zone, but this is an accurate reflection of our current...
Of our current policy. Okay, fine, that's good. Then a quick question about one of the changes in... Sorry, let me find it. It's T 2.3.1. This is about CEQA, VMT, and LOS. So, I'm just reading, and this is packet page 243, line item 33. As I read this, I, I'm just trying to figure out, with this program as it stands, what, what role will LOS play in our city going forward? What is, what does this mean, actually? It's quite complicated. "When adopting new CEQA significance thresholds for VMT for compliance with SB 743", the law which moves us towards VMT. "Also adopt standards for vehicular LOS analysis for use in evaluating the consistency of a proposed project with the comp plan." What, what does that mean in effect, actually? Is that saying we're gonna do VMT and LOS, or we're gonna do VMT for the Senate bill, and we're gonna do LOS for a proposed project in the comp plan?
There's actually a related policy, policy T 2.3, that says use motor vehicle LOS at signalized intersections to evaluate potential impact of proposed projects. I think the intention here is to say that while we're required under state law to use VMT for, for CEQA purposes, we're gonna continue to use and report LOS for projects so we understand how they, what relationship they bear to our adopted standards. Currently, we have those adopted standards of LOS D or E, depending on which intersections, and if you're above that standard, or if you meet that standard, you need mitigation. And, and this, what this is saying is, adopt standards. When, when we adopt VMT, adopt the standards for LOS and use them for plan consistency reviews.
And so, what point did this "adopt standards for vehicular LOS" get put into this here?
I think what we were trying to do is clarify the wording of this program, T 2.3.1. You, you see the changes we made here, but there was a lot of confusion at the Planning Commission about whether we were trying to subvert the state law somehow. And we tried to make it clear that what, what I think, we think the council's intent was is that we would do both things, VMT for CEQA purposes and LOS for plan consistency analysis.
So, then I'm just gonna make one amendment here. Adopt advisory or, how could I put this? Essentially, what I'm intending to do here is, I wanna clarify that LOS should only be used for informational purposes. And so, I'm wondering if the Planning Director has any suggestions there.
You know, I think you could do that a variety of ways. This, you know, this really grew out, again, of a prior council discussion, and I can't remember exactly...
Been through a few discussions.
Yeah.
So, how about, if we could say, "Adopt informational standards for vehicular LOS"? And so, informational is one word that would get inserted into this program, T 2.3.1.
Yeah, I, I mean, that would be fine with us. I don't, I don't know that it accomplishes much in terms of a substantive change.
Okay, so what would you advise here? I mean, obviously, as our audience members shown, this is quite a...
We did, we did vote on this before.
We voted on, on multiple of the things that have been brought up before tonight.
Okay, well, wait, so do we vote on this before?
We have. We voted on it in the errata. We voted on striking the last line. We voted on adding another line.
We had a big discussion two years ago and agreed that we would use both, and council voted, and that's why it is, the way it is.
Oh, so you mean, we, we didn't do it as part of this? We voted two years ago on this?
Yeah, and, and just two weeks ago, you voted to include this in your list of changes. It was on, it was on the, the, the list that you received from the...
Staff or the Planning Commission?
From the staff. The errata.
So, I, I would just say, what, what I'm trying to do here is, I mean, LOS is falling by the wayside, and that's reinforced by Senate Bill 743, because it essentially incentivizes you to build bigger roads when a project has an impact. That's not necessarily something we can do in Palo Alto. It furthermore, doesn't get to the heart of what we're trying to do in some of these measurements with VMT, which is to reduce overall trip mileage from origins to destinations. VMT, I think, is a better network effect, and what I don't want us to put in the comprehensive plan here essentially is a bygone standard, vehicular LOS, which really is saying, if you build a building and there impacts, you're supposed to build bigger roads. That comes at the detriment of cyclists and bicyclists. So, maybe we could add to program T 2.3.1, clarify that LOS shall be used for informational purposes only. Sorry to be doing this up on the dais, guys. And so, I think, quotes, "clarify that LOS shall be used for informational purposes only."
Okay, and that's the motion?
That's the motion.
Do we have a second? Second by Vice Mayor Niss?
Thank you, Vice Mayor. So, as I've just mentioned, Senate Bill 743 exists for a reason. It really is linking our future planning activities to more of a regional and climate change approach. LOS has proven to be a metric that really pushes cities to build more roads at the expense of pedestrians and bicyclists. And, you know, when you build a big road, you're going to get more traffic on that site. I don't think that's a good policy for us going forward. I think LOS can be informative, but I want us to use it in an advisory capacity, not in a decision-making capacity.
Mr. Mayor, if I can interject, you know, I think we should take a look at policy T-2.3, because it's the policy that really says, "Use vehicle LOS to evaluate potential impacts of proposed projects."
Thank you. So then, actually, let's move it to policy T 2.3. Thank you, Hillary. I, I think this is probably best to look at packet page 243, item 33. That's the most recent language.
Rather than looking at the, rather than looking at the actual comp plan.
Yeah, rather than looking at the actual comp plan, I think, I think what Councilmember Fine is pointing to is on page 243 of our packet for tonight, item 33.
Yeah, it is.
So, which number is this?
Number 33. See it here?
Yes. Yes. Sure.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to note that this is, this motion would essentially reverse the existing policy, T-2.3. It's essentially, "Do not use LOS to evaluate the impacts of the project." We may collect information about congestion impacts, but do not use it to evaluate its, the project's impacts.
That's true. I think it shall, can be used for informational aspects at intersection level stuff, but we are actually still collecting traffic impacts through VMT.
Are there any CEQA concerns?
No, because the LOS will no longer be a CEQA impact. I think this was an, an attempt to capture LOS to evaluate the project still outside of CEQA.
All right. You know, I'm gonna clear the board and...
Yeah.
Oh, Councilmember Niss, yeah. So, I'm gonna clear the board and then put your lights on and, and, all right.
Well, we've discussed this a number of times before, but this is, as you move toward VMT, I think that's the most important part of this. LOS doesn't get totally left in the dust, but, but we need to be moving toward VMT on a, on a, on a, a really long-term basis. And I think that's exactly where you're heading with this, isn't it, Councilmember Fine?
Yes. Is that, are you, is that your...
That's, I'm supporting it, yes.
Okay. Yes.
So, the city will be moving towards VMT as required by state law to evaluate CEQA impacts. However, so regardless of what happens with this policy, we will be moving towards evaluating VMT and using it as the CEQA threshold of significance. So, I just want to note that I think it probably makes more sense, you know, if we are amending this policy, it's "do not use motor vehicle LOS at signalized intersections to evaluate the potential impact of proposed projects, including contributions to cumulative congestion." However, or "collect that information for informational purposes only."
Yeah, I like the language about "collect it for informational purposes only." I don't want to prohibit us from using LOS. That's not the purpose here. What I don't want it to happen is LOS to be used on the same level as VMT, because increasingly, for air quality concerns and for regional transportation concerns, VMT really is the measure the state's moving towards, and all the research points to as well.
It's, it's also what we do at the Air Quality Board. We're, we're pretty much moved in the direction of VMT. It's, it's a completely different kind of measurement than LOS.
Okay. All right, Councilmember Phil Seth?
Wow. So, I really don't think this is a good idea. I think if we do this, you know, we're gonna read about in the papers tomorrow and, you know, we're gonna be back in here in a couple of weeks going, "Oh, we shouldn't have done that," and so forth. Notwithstanding that we've discussed it a number of times before, and actually, PTC has discussed it. PTC tried to get rid of it, and that was voted down too, in the last, in the, in the last session on this. Essentially, the argument that I, we just heard tonight is that, you know, we don't wanna use LOS because we're afraid that people will use it as an excuse to build wider roads. Okay? And so, I mean, that means it's sort of a "don't ask, don't tell" thing, right? It's basically what we're seeing is, we don't wanna measure congestion because people don't like congestion, and we're afraid if they knew what the congestion was, they might try to do something about it, and some of those things we don't like. I would argue that that kind of thinking, you know, is not public service to our constituents. It may be public service to Sacramento. It may be public service to the region. But if there's anything we've learned, people in Palo Alto care about traffic congestion. Okay? So, so, obviously, we should conform to state law, but people care about this, right? You know? They didn't send us here to say, "We don't want you to know what the congestion is." Okay? "We don't want you to use the congestion..." And, and yeah, you say, "Well, we'll just measure it, but we won't use it to evaluate projects." Come on, okay? People, of course they wanna use it. I mean, everybody, every time we put up a big project here, the neighbors all come out and say, "Is this gonna make traffic worse?" Right? Okay? And LOS is the most, is the closest measure we, we have to that. So, now going back and saying, "Oh, we're not gonna, we're not gonna use LOS, you know, it, it doesn't count," right? And so forth. I mean, we're going straight back into this business of, you know, we're tired of seeing no impact on traffic studies. I mean, here what we're saying is, we don't wanna do a traffic study because we're afraid of what the answer would be. So, I think this is... To use VMT to satisfy state regulations and so forth, that's state law, makes sense, right? Okay? But LOS is, I mean, and congestion is foundational to what people... I have a tough time going back and telling them, "No, no, 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 no. I know you want it, but you're wrong." Okay?
Okay. Councilmember Holman.
I think Councilmember Philseth said a lot of good things that I 100% concur with. This is a big deal, and we've discussed it many times. Not only did the Planning Commission discuss it and not go this direction, but the CAC also did this. And hey, at the council direction, because we said, yes, we want to go with VMT, it's a state requirement, but we also want to have LOS as a consideration. We're not going to widen streets here. We're not going to widen roadways. We don't have, and we talked earlier about not impacting residential property. The only way we could widen streets here is basically impacting residential property. Our comprehensive plan also talks about not widening streets to accommodate traffic. So that's not someplace I'm worried that we're going to go, and it's never been how we've used LOS. There is a saying that we all know, it's "Think globally, act locally." So one is not at the expense of the others. So what we're doing with VMT is we are thinking regionally, and what we're doing by acting locally is also, in combination with that, considering LOS. One of the primary polluters from cars is not only just the miles traveled, but sitting in traffic and idling. And if we don't measure VMT, excuse me, if we don't measure LOS, we don't have a way to understand, "How long are people going to be in queue at an intersection? How long are they going to be, are cars going to be polluting the air next to our multifamily housing?" I think this is a really big deal. I think it would be really bad, really bad to be making this change at almost 10:30 at night. To say that this won't play well in Peoria, I think, would be an understatement. I think this would be a really, really big deal with the public and the community. So I cannot support this and encourage my colleagues to also not support this one.
Councilmember Koo.
I agree with both Councilmember Holman and Councilmember Philseth in what they said about this. This is a big thing to do, and it's going to be at the detriment of this, of, for the city, not knowing locally what is happening on our streets and the impacts that's coming forward. And I really have to say, you know, when it comes down to saying that the purpose of this is to widen streets and put more streets on, in Palo Alto, where? I mean, where? As a matter of fact, right now, our policies in transportation has been completely to narrow streets and to put in safety features. So, you know, it's kind of contrary to so many things, in particular with reducing greenhouse gas emissions. So what you're saying is that we don't want to know what is happening at our intersections and our local streets. Furthermore, you know, I would have to go back to our 3 million number for the non-residential growth. Yes, I can accept that 1.3 million has already been built over at the Stanford Hospital. However, we have no measurement over there of what's going to happen in terms of the impacts from vehicles that are going to be going over there. And this is a huge, huge assumption, again. Then going back to significant unavoidable impacts, that traffic caused an intersection to operate below its motor vehicle level of service standard, that is a significant unavoidable impact. And yet, you want to take out LOS in order for less transparency to the people who are using those streets? And in a way, you know, I hate using the word, but it's fooling all the people by not actually placing it as a condition. And we're here to do public service? This is not public service.
Councilmember DuBois.
I think a lot of it's been said. I do think it's a big deal. We have talked about this extensively. Some of it may have been before you got on council. There was some work done on the comp plan before I got on council. You know, I accepted that work, and it's, again, it's 10 o'clock. Hopefully, on the last day, it's not time to be opening an issue this large. I'm kind of surprised at the Vice Mayor, actually, that she would support this because I do think it's controversial, it's a major change at the last second. As people said, what we talked about, what we agreed was, VMT makes sense for regional issues, for CEQA. LOS is for us for in-city measurement and understanding what's going, and we said we were going to use both, and we were going to consider both, and it's not just for information purposes. So, yeah, I get it, LOS, you know, VMT makes total sense for air quality and regional planning, but I think it's important. LOS is important for us to understand what's happening. And I would just say again, there were a lot of decisions made along the way, and I think we started off tonight in kind of a spirit of compromise. This really feels like cherry picking a big one at the last minute. I appreciate the removal of the previous two motions, and I'd ask you to consider doing that with this one.
All right. Councilmember Walbach.
Let's see if we can find some compromise here. I'm going to ask people to actually be open-minded about this, both those who are really appalled by this motion and those who proposed it.
So I was going to vote no anyway.
Okay.
Just so you know, so no one actually has to compromise.
Well, let's go for consensus. I think that the point, and this is something, actually, I alluded to earlier in my questions, so I was also bothered by this, and listening to this conversation, I think I've narrowed down where the problem is. It's the pitting of car users, on the one hand, against bicyclists and pedestrians, on the other. And that competition, I find really uncomfortable. And if you look carefully at Policy T, actually, Program T 2.3.1, this is something I was mentioning earlier, talks about multimodal level of service, which includes cars, includes people stuck in traffic, idling their car, stuck at an intersection, but it also includes, you know, it accounts for bike usage, pedestrian usage at intersections, and it tries to balance those. But we haven't created MMLOS yet, right? It's this idea that in the future, rather than just moving from LOS to VMT, because they don't really measure the same thing, the idea is that we'd go from LOS to a split, from LOS in the past to in the future, doing VMT and MMLOS, multimodal level of service. And that's what Program T 2.3.1 is getting at. So where do we go from here? How do we, how do we support that transition without throwing out LOS and without doing a change tonight that is really controversial? And so my recommendation, I guess I can make it as an amendment to the amendment, and I really hope that Councilmembers Fine and Vice Mayor Niss will be open to it, is to, rather than say LOS shall be used for informational purposes only, or actually say, sorry, actually, let me gather my thoughts. It would say, "Following the development and acceptance of MMLOS, then LOS shall be retained for informational purposes." So that's actually saying, "We're going to keep using LOS for now. Once we have and we accept MMLOS, then we'll use MMLOS, and we'll also keep looking at LOS for informational purposes."
I would accept that. I think that's fair.
It's okay. We're kind of wrapping a porcupine at this point.
Wrap me a porcupine. I like that.
That was pretty good.
So, so what that would do is say, again, would not get rid of LOS, and we would even keep it for informational purposes once we have MMLOS, and we've accepted it, but we don't have it yet, we have to accept it, so that's, it's basically a hypothetical. But it still helps encourage us to move towards using MMLOS without just swapping LOS for VMT. Because again, I agree, VMT and LOS do measure different things, right? I think Councilmember Philseth's points were well-taken. So I hope that with that amendment, more of us can get behind this.
You've got it. What are you doing?
Okay.
Because that is now really, really different from the original amendment.
So I feel like this is now really different than the original amendment. So if councilmembers want to speak to this, please keep it brief. But does anyone want to speak to the, has anyone, does this, has anyone who would be now in favor of this, who voted, who spoke against it? You should speak up. Well, I just asked if anyone wants to speak to this. Councilmember Fine?
So I think this is moving us towards compromise still. Mr. Mayor, as you mentioned, you'll probably vote against it. I'm just going to reiterate, folks, that, you know, LOS essentially disincentivizes infill growth. We have policies in this plan to promote infill because it is the most environmentally sustainable way for the city to grow. You know, LOS is going to push stuff out to greenfields. That's what the research shows. It also punishes bike and pedestrian improvements because they might have an impact on you sitting at an intersection in your car. So if we really do care about building a city that supports, you know, multimodal service, I think this is an important change. If we really do care about focusing new development near transit, LOS is not going to get us there. So I really hope we'll have our support on this. I understand it's controversial.
So I see no other lights here, so I'll speak to it. You know, I do think that it is 10:30 at night. I do think it, I do think this is a pretty controversial issue of the LOS. And so I guess the question really is, is, I sort of feel we've made a commitment to not really do controversial things, and that's why I was asking, I actually, and I do think Councilmember Walbach has moved us in a direction of more, but I haven't seen a single person stand up and say, "Yeah, that's more acceptable to me." So I don't, I don't see any of that. And I guess what I'm going to say is, I hope at the end of the evening, I hope at the end of the evening, that you guys vote for the comp plan, those of you who are opposed to this. I mean, I think it would be sort of unfortunate, and maybe that's what I should use the word, is as we go through this and we try to keep it, you know, consensus, we try to keep it, you know, "Let's be in agreement," and at the end of the day, you turn around and vote no on the comp plan. I guess I'll just be disappointed. And as I started off, you know, "Hope springs eternal," on that basis, I'm going to vote against the amendment to the amendment. So let's vote.
The amendments, the amendments?
Well, we're voting on the amendment because you incorporated into the, you incorporated into the thing, so it's really one vote.
It's your amendment.
I'm voting for it.
It's going down 63. Just saying no. It's down 54.
Okay.
Does that mean we didn't have to finish wrapping the 45?
The 45 has gone free.
What does that mean, anyway? Wrapping the pork, it's a great statement. I gotta use it sometimes. Councilmember Fine, continue on.
One last one, thank you. So Program L 2.4.6, on page L 31, this is about transfer of development rights, TDRs. Right now, it reads, "Explore changing the TDR ordinance for both buildings of historic significance and for seismic retrofits so that the transferred development rights may only be used for residential capacity." I'd just like to strike the word "only" from Program L 2.4.6. The reason being, I actually think it's reasonable that TDRs can be used for other purposes, whether it's commercial, retail, whatever it may be transferring for. So I don't want to see them be only used for residential.
All right, I'll second that.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I believe I've spoken to it, and I promise you all, I'm done.
So what I understand this does is, it actually just makes the comp plan a little less prescriptive and allows council to be able to look at things over the next 15 years as conditions change. And I do think one of the things we've been doing in this comp plan is giving it some flexibility. So I don't view this in any way imposes anything on anybody. It just provides flexibility for future councils.
Just to be clear, it should remove the word "only" from this program.
Right, it's one word. It's "only." It allows, so I support flexibility for future councils and things depending on.
Can we vote on it?
All right. Let's see. Councilmember Fine made it. Holman, Councilmember Holman.
Yeah, this is something we've also talked about, not as ad nauseam as the LOS matter, but this is a way to promote residential development. And when you look at how much TDR square footage there could be, it's an amount of square footage that could be significant in providing more housing. So I'm really surprised that we wouldn't want to use TDRs just for residential development. And taking out the word "only" makes this a meaningless, a meaningless program because it can be used for residential now. So it's really meaningless if you take the word "only" out. And again, I'm surprised that, as we're looking to create more housing, that we would eliminate the creation of housing as part of an incentive to restore historic buildings.
Councilmember DuBois.
Well, but that means it could be used for anything, not just housing. So I thought we were, I thought we were here to support housing.
Yeah, so I just wanted to clarify with the mayor and Councilmember Fine, again, currently, this is what exists in the comp plan, so you're basically...
No, it's not currently exists in the comp plan, right?
You can use TDRs for residential.
Right now, before, you could only use TDRs for commercial.
Okay.
And the idea was to allow TDRs for residential, and somehow, we went from only allowing it to commercial to now only allowing it for residential.
And it doesn't say "only," it says "explore," it says "explore changing it to encourage residential," which, again, was a big discussion about how do we encourage additional residential.
Oh, does it say "explore"? I thought it...
Yeah. So it's just...
Oh, wait, if it said "explore," maybe I could be out.
So it does say "explore," but to the mayor's point, right now, it's for commercial. This is saying, "explore using it only for residential."
Right.
I am happy to use it for residential, and I think that may be good purpose.
I think when staff explores it, they'll consider options.
The word "only."
Actually, "explore" or "only" doesn't conclude as saying, "Well, should we get..."
Yeah. So again, it feels like we're getting way down in the weeds, and it's late at night, and these changes are...
They're not controversial because it's late at night. I spoke later in the meeting.
I think, again, the whole intent was, how do we encourage more residential development? And we said we should explore it, but...
I have no question we should.
Just clarification, if I could. TDRs now don't have to be used for only commercial. They can be used for residential, commercial, office, retail, they can be used for anything.
So that's not my understanding of them.
What this, well, look at staff. TDRs can be used for other uses, including residential. They aren't generally because office gives a better return, but what this was trying to do was focus the TDR square footage on residential.
I believe they can only be used currently for commercial square footage.
Yeah, I think that's the rule, Councilmember Holman.
I can be wrong, but I really don't think so, because I think they've been used for both before.
Karen, I don't ever remember one being used for a residential.
That's right, because commercial has a higher payback.
It doesn't always. I really do, I think that's our rule, but it's not sure there's a point in arguing about it. I think if we say, so we're looking at the following, to strike, so how does the language read now? Councilmember Fine, maybe you could just read it without the word "only."
So right now, so without the word "only," it says, "Explore changing the transfer of development rights ordinance for both buildings of historic significance and for seismic retrofits so that transferred development rights may be used for residential capacity." So this is an additive thing. The program, as we have with this amendment, will allow TDRs for residential. I think that is a good purpose. I think that is a good purpose. I don't think it should only be for that purpose, though.
So let me clarify. I strongly think we should go down the route of allowing it for, for residential.
Right.
And in certain places, we should in fact maybe only allow it for residential. That's possible in certain areas, I don't know. But I don't want to put that in the comp plan. I think this comes back with an ordinance when we explore it, and I don't want to prejudge it. And you see, the way I would vote on ordinance is often very different than the way I'd vote on a comp plan, because the comp plan is more significant and locks people in over the long term, and I think we should have flexibility. And that's why I support the whole idea of residential. I don't think we're doing that. I think what we're doing here is just providing flexibility in a comprehensive plan that may last us, given that half the people here didn't vote to certify the EIR virtually, may last us another 100 years at this rate.
Mr. Mayor, have we just, should probably just be quiet. I think the operative word here is explore and not only. I mean, you can say explore and leave only in there, or to explore and take it out, it still leaves us with, for the flexibility to come back and present different options to you. So, you know, the easiest path is just to keep what we've got and move on.
All right, Councilmember Ness. Did you have your line? No. All right, Councilmember DuBois, you spoke to this already. All right, let's vote.
The lights have finally broken.
Oh, I voted yes.
Guess what you are?
I did try and vote yes. All right, that passes on a five to four vote. Are you done, Councilmember Fine? Okay. I believe that everybody has now spoken to this. Am I correct?
No.
To the main motion?
No.
You haven't spoken to the main motion. All right, Councilmember Phil Seth?
So I actually have some remarks on the FEIR. So if I understand what we're supposed to do on the FEIR, we're supposed, the SEQA findings, and for the things that can't be, we have, we're gonna, we're gonna, we're gonna accept a couple of things. One is that we've evaluated every relevant scenario, right? And the second is that for the things that can't be mitigated, there are enough offsetting benefits that it's a good trade-off. So the, the things that bugged me about the minimum impact scenario, or sorry, about the, the EIR were mitigated, the unmitigable, the, the still significant things were traffic, air quality. And then the other one, which is, you know, I have a hard time with, and, you know, is, is the whole school thing, right, because of SB 50, right? So on the scenarios, one of the things that we didn't do is, we didn't do a minimum impact scenario, right? And that's probably our fault, and it's probably my fault as much as anybody, right? That is, we did a zero-growth one, but we didn't include mitigations on that, which of course, we're already doing some of that kind of stuff. And in retrospect, you know, given the importance of, of some of these impacts, you know, I wish we'd done that, because I would have liked to know what it would take, right? On the other hand, I don't think we want to send the staff back and everybody to do another scenario on the EIR. So what follows here is a hand wave on what a minimum impact scenario would have looked like, okay? The first one I'll do, the first one I'll comment on is the air quality one, right? Karen's gonna hate me for this, okay? Per the EIR, you know, the whole range across all scenarios, and just looking at CO2 is, you know, goes from 200,000 megatons to 220,000 megatons, okay? Which, so let's say that a, a true minimum impact scenario knocked 20,000 megatons off of that, okay? Well, the entire Bay Area annual CO2 emissions are about 100 mega, 100 million megatons. So the difference between where we are and the absolute minimum we could have done is about .02 percent, okay? And since we're talking about regional impacts as opposed to progress towards Palo Alto's SCAP plan, right, you know, I think you need to consider regional air quality, right? So it looks to me like staff's assertion that no matter what we do, okay, air quality is a push, right? So I accept that one. The one I have a little more trouble with is traffic, okay? I am not persuaded that, you know, our traffic's going to be the same, right, because of what happens in Mountain View and Menlo Park. I think it has a lot to do with what happens in Palo Alto. So to go from the existing condition to scenario five, okay, I just picked an intersection, right? Page Mill and, Page Mill and El Camino. To go from, from the, from where we are in 2014 to scenario five, okay, about 9,000 jobs, and it's about, about 12 seconds increase from 52 to 64, which is about 20, 25 percent, okay? So our job growth is 9,000, which half is in the Med Center, which we're locked into, okay? So that means, you know, in principle, if you wave your hands ballpark, if we shut down all development in the city, in the, in the city and the Stanford Research Park, you know, we might get 11 or 12 percent reduction in, in, in delay at that intersection. So I think a full moratorium on the whole city, including Stanford Research Park, would be extremely hard to implement, as, as you guys have said, too. Maybe we could get half of that. So we're talking about a 6 percent improvement. Meh, between five, less than 10, right? So the question is, is that a good trade-off? Okay? So I actually think there are a fair number of people in town who would look at that and say, yeah, shut down half the development, half the office development and the research park and the, and the city in exchange for a 6 percent reduction in, in congestion and, and delays at intersections? I bet there's, I bet there's a lot of people who would take that trade-off, right? And it's some of the same ones that would be really upset if we went away from LOS as a measure. So on the other hand, and then, and so we have a whole list of stuff in the staff report about, about sort of, here are all the, here are all the, here are all the things that are going to offset that, right? And I thought, most of it was pretty flimsy, actually. You know, the proposed plan strengthens strategies to preserve retail. Well, that's a benefit. Well, okay, yeah, sort of. Includes a cumulative cap on the new office research and development space. Well, it's the same one as the old one, so that's not right, okay? Allows the city to maintain, remain a competitive and innovative business destination. Well, I don't think we're not going to be a competitive, innovative business destination, okay? But the one in here that actually is a benefit, I shudder to say it, right, is to allow us to put all this behind us, okay, right? And not drag us and the staff and everybody in the city, okay, through another couple iterations of that. So is that an acceptable trade-off for a 6 percent congestion improvement? I don't know that it is, but in fact, the policies that would lead to the 6 percent congestion improvement aren't in the comp plan. You know, it's the office cap and stuff like that. So after a lot of thought, I'm going to agree with staff on that, having considered, having done a hand wave on what a true minimum impact scenario would look like, right? That staff's assertion that it's negligible is, is, is probably within vol, within the bounds of reason, okay? The one that really bothers the heck out of me, right, and if I don't vote for this thing, it'll be because of this. You know, the comp plan says we're going to overcrowd the schools, okay? And it also says they're fully mitigated, okay, because by the fees, by SB 50, right? So, and we're going to explore stuff with the, the school district and so forth, that's good, right? Not a mitigation, right? We don't know it's mitigated, it's another, you know, maybe it'll work, maybe not, right? So if I accept the FEIR, I'm accepting that there's no impact on schools, it's fully mitigated. That's not true, okay? If I reject the FEIR, okay, theoretically, I'm breaking the law, okay, because Sacramento requires me to accept the mitigation, right? So that's my big heartburn on the FEIR. My big remaining heartburn on the FEIR. But, but the rest of it doesn't bother me.
Okay, so I had lights for a second round from councilmembers Holman, Ness, and DuBois. So what I'm planning on doing is I'm going to have Council, Vice Mayor Ness time everyone, and everyone here can get two minutes to give their final comments on the comp plan before we vote. Hopefully, whatever you wanted to say, you can say it in two minutes. You've all had an opportunity to make motions, do all of that, so I think we're good. I actually was just going to go down the line. I was going to start with Councilmember Holman, if that's all right with Councilmember Holman.
Yes, and thank...
I'm timing you, Karen. I'm not kidding, I am.
It's okay. Yes, and thank you for doing that. I said earlier, it's like there are a lot of things in this plan that I really, really like. My problem is with the, the FEIR and some of the mitigations. I agree with, with Eric about, about the school impacts, that is a heartburn. What I would like to see, and that would allow me, I think, to vote for this, or I know, to vote for this, is if we didn't, if we didn't make the assumptions about traffic mitigations that are in here. Again, the ones that I stated earlier that rely on potential future and unproven transportation mitigations. That one's really bad. It's, it's a hard one. And if you look at any photos, and we get them weekly at least, photos of residential streets that are backed up, backed up, backed up, bumper to bumper, and people talking about how it takes them to get from Crescent Park to 101, it takes them a half an hour or longer. It's just unbelievable. It's really unbelievable. The air quality impacts, I think we could do better there. I understand it's, it's regional, transportation's regional. But I think we could do better there. From my, from my, from my thinking and from my vote, if we would just come back in, you know, whatever, two or three weeks with stepped-up mitigations in the areas of transportation, air quality, and I'd have to throw noise in there, too, because I don't find that acceptable, and I don't think the community finds it acceptable where we are now. I'd be able to support this. It doesn't make me happy not to, not to support this the way it is. It's been a lot of, a lot of work. I haven't surprised anybody with my concerns, and there they are laid out.
Councilmember Fine?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As Councilmember Walbach mentioned earlier, the, the perfect is the enemy of the good, and I agree with that. In this plan, I wanted to see more housing. I wanted to see funding commitments to transportation and mobility improvements. I wanted to see real initiatives which would foster retail businesses here in our city that serve our residents and visitors. As we just saw, there are clearly some splits in this council, as the fight on LOS just happened. But I also want to point out that there are eight chapters in this document, right? We spent all our time talking about land use and transportation, and there's a lot in this plan that I think will do great things for public safety, for our community services, for our parks, for our environment, and we need to honor those things as well. Only other comment, I guess I have, is we started this plan in 2008, it's almost 10 years later, and, you know, we all here as city councilors are getting into little details about including this word or that word. And so as a city, I think we really need to find a way to iterate faster and cheaper. You know, what's, what's the in-between from a comp plan to an actual effect on the ground? And I think that's one of our challenges, is how do we incorporate and ingest data quickly so that we can make decisions that are lightweight and cheap and actually can be measured, and we can see, are we having a positive impact for our residents? I would say that's the challenge of this next comp plan, so that we don't find ourselves in a similar situation in the next 15 or 20 years. But I will be supporting this. I especially want to thank staff. Thank you, guys. Hillary, I saw you brought in that huge stack, and hopefully after tonight, you won't have to lug it around as much.
Councilmember Tanaka?
Yeah, I just also want to thank staff, the CAC, the Planning Commission, all of you guys. You know, this is certainly not a perfect comp plan, but it's certainly better than what we have now, mainly because it's updated. And I actually agree with Councilmember Fine that we should try to get this updated more frequently. So rather than trying to get an ultra-perfect one, which is really hard and takes a long time, maybe we make updates more frequently, which ironically, when I was on Tanaka Chanel's goals, do a short, low update and get it out, but never happened. So hopefully, we can make it happen tonight. Thank you.
Councilmember Phil Seth?
I think the issue before us on the, I've already spoke to the FEIR, the issue for us on the comp plan is, which one is better, the new one or the old one? And I think that's what we got to base this on.
Earlier this year, when I proposed moving a portion of the comp plan to another portion of the comp plan, I was accused by one of my colleagues of being a wolf in sheep's clothing. I was told that we were spitting in the face of the work of the CAC. A lot of other words were thrown around in op-eds by councilmembers on the dais and the public, and comments I heard from others. At this point, we've restored those things that were proposed to be moved back to their original location. We've had, I think, much better compromise, consensus, and collective learning. If any of my colleagues are still thinking about voting against this, you are spitting in the face of all the work that we have done. Think on your actions.
Councilmember Koo?
At the end of the day, you know, today, basically what had happened, I think action speaks, speaks a lot louder than words. And, you know, when it comes to really being a trustee of the city and being elected by the residents and the folks over here in Palo Alto, the significant, unavoidable significant impacts has to have some bearing on decisions, and the mitigations are just not sufficient.
Councilmember DuBois? Vice Mayor Ness, would you like to speak?
Well, actually, I'm going to be voting for this, I'm, I think that's obvious. But there are a couple of other things I wanted to say. Once again, I don't know who's left in the audience. And we are about to pass something we've been working on since 2000, since 2006, and not a damn person is here. That always says something to me. No one is here. It's good to see Sylvia is still out there. This is, I, Stephanie, it, it's, it's really shocking to me that we could be voting on something that's this significant and there's not a person here. But the last thing I want to say is, I think staff has done a fabulous job on this. Whether you vote up or down, you have found the answers quickly tonight, you've done it every other night. Molly and her team have been equally ready. And Jim, you always jump in at the last minute with a great clarifying comment. This has been tough stuff, and we've gone over and over and over it. And it's been, I don't know how many, I, I think it's days, if not weeks, that we have spent on this. So thank you, staff. It really, it really does make a big difference. That's it.
All right. Yeah, so I'll just basically say, very brief link, timer on.
Did you do it yourself?
I just did. That I actually really appreciate all the effort that staff's put into this. And it has been a, I would say, heroic, and as Councilmember Walbach said, a long and winding road and, and all of that. And I'm glad we are finally, finally here. And, you know, I hope everyone will support the comp plan. And one of the things I'm thinking of doing is, could I see the, the top part of the, the thing? Just took it out of my way, there. So, oh, I can do it here.
Top part of what?
So I'm thinking, one of the things mayors get to do is, we could have us vote twice, or we could have us vote three times. I think I'm going to break out number three for a separate vote, the number four. So that allows you to vote on the SEQA findings, and then it, it allows you to vote on the comp plan. And I don't know if that's helpful to people, but I think...
No.
No? Is that not helpful to people? You want to do one vote?
Yeah, one more. You're clear about the process, which is...
Well, okay. Does anyone want to have a separate vote? I, what I want to allow people to do is if they don't want to vote on the... I, what I want to allow people to do is if they don't want to vote on the SEQA findings, they want to vote differently than the comp plan, I want to give people that opportunity.
Can we do that and have it still be legit? Is there any...
Oh, yeah.
Can we break it up any way we want?
So, so what I'm going to do first is we're going to vote on the number three portion, which was...
Findings.
Findings, which was A, and then we're going to vote on B. Actually, we're going to vote on B and, anyone object to voting on B and C together? I, I don't think they would. So we'll vote on number A, and then we'll vote on B and C. All right, so, let me turn off the timer. Are we all? Let's vote on A. And that passes on a five to four vote. And now let's vote on the comp plan itself, which is...
Can I, can I clarify something? Which is, and it's laid out in the staff report too. If we're not able to vote for the FEIR or certify the FEIR, actually have to be able to do that in order to vote for the comp plan. So voting against the comp plan isn't, that I don't like a lot of the stuff in it. It's just that if you can't do one, you can't do the other.
No, I don't believe that to be true. Councilmember Holman?
That's, that's how I read it on a number of...
I know you've said many times that, that SEQA training might be really helpful for council. So who knows? But no, we can actually go ahead and we voted as a council to certify the EIR. So the EIR is certified. You now have the full ability... So, okay, we now have the full ability to vote for the comp plan as a body. And I would encourage you to do so. So let's now vote on the, on B and C. And that passes on a seven to two vote with councilmembers Holman and Koo voting no. Now, you know, I am going to pop the champagne because vice mayor Ness brought it. She got the glasses.
Do you only get the glass if you vote for it?
Do you need to join the meeting first?
No, I'm not going to join the meeting because we have one other thing we need to do. Right? So now we have the last item, which we're not going to take up, which is six. Do I, do I adjourn, move that to a date uncertain, or? Date uncertain. Unless people just want to vote yes without discussion, which I doubt. I know councilmember Wolbach does.
Two people have texted me. They're watching from home.
There we go. All right.
No, 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 no.
Oh, hang on, we have to take a picture.
We need to at least have proof that...
Proof that we did this.
We have to pass this thing.
All right.
Okay, let's go. One, two, three.
Did you get it?
Well, now you've got to pop it.
Now I got to pop it? Oh, my goodness. Now this is embarrassing. I can't even open this. Very embarrassing, right? This is not going to end well, right? I know. All right, you can come do it. Come here, councilmember Fine, you can help the mayor out. I can't do it, so...
He's the one married most recently.
All right.
There we go.
There we go.
Shin Shin.
Okay.
Someone else texted. They're listening on the radio.
All right, pass that down if anyone wants it. Do you want any champagne? All right. So do I need a motion to, to a date uncertain? No, it's just done, okay? And then the next thing we do is councilmember comments and questions. I see no, no, no lights? Anyone lights? With that, we can adjourn... You can. With that, we will adjourn the meeting.